To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Welcome to a joint meeting with the Successor Agency, Housing Authority, and Parking Authority of the Burbank City Council, Tuesday, May 16, 2023. First, please join me for a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support of our beloved community, and the City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us, and let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you. Please rise and join me for the flag salute.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Here. Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Present.
And Mayor Anthony?
Present.
Thank you.
We have a quorum. We'd like to advise the community there will be four periods of public comment tonight. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and the public comment period for the hearing. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Additional in-person-only public comment period will be available after each report to council later in the evening. If you'd like to call in now, the number here is 818-238-3335. The later public comment period will also have the same number. We have five announcements this evening, and there's a short video.
For May 16, 2023. Did you know Burbank has a free mobile app that makes it easier than ever to request city services? Available for download on the Apple and Google Play stores, the Our Burbank 311 app streamlines how you can obtain city information and report issues such as wastewater, street repairs, and fallen trees. You can also request services with ease such as bulky item pickup, graffiti removal, and so much more. Download it for free today or visit 311.burbank.ca.gov for more information. Join us on Wednesday, May 17, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for Burbank's Bike, Walk, Breathe event. This free event will feature bike repairs, prizes, live music, outdoor spin classes, giveaways, and more. Whether you're a new rider or an experienced cyclist, this event is for you. One of the main pit stops will be at the downtown Burbank MetroLink station. For more information, please visit www.btm.org/bikewalkbreathe2023. See you there. The Parks and Recreation Department is looking forward to another exciting summer of entertainment at the Starlight Bowl. The summer season will kick off on 4th of July with a spectacular fireworks show and performances by The Rising and Hollywood U2. The 2023 schedule will feature artists such as Yatli Crew, Bruno and the Hooligans, The Fab Four, and more. Purchase your tickets for a great time under the stars starting on Wednesday, May 17, at 10:00 a.m. at www-starlightbowl.com or in person at the Betsy Luke Creative Arts Center located at 1100 West Clark Avenue. For more information, please visit www-starlightbowl.com or call 818-238-5397. Council unanimously adopted a resolution to initiate a transition from our current at-large elections to elections by district. And now, City Council wants to hear from you to determine where neighborhoods and communities are grouped together for the purpose of electing future members of the council. We are hosting public hearings, community forums, and providing two interactive mapping tools to gather people's vision for how district boundaries should be drawn. Paper maps are available at the City Clerk's office in your local library. You may also draw your neighborhood using the digital mapping tool on the project website. Join us for the third public hearing on Wednesday, June 14, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chamber. For more information, please visit www.burbankcouncildistricting.com. The City Clerk's office is accepting applications for 23 upcoming vacancies on the following board, commission, and committees. Burbank Culture Arts Commission, Infrastructure Oversight Board, Park Recreation and Community Services Board, Planning Commission, Police Commission, Sustainable Burbank Commission, and Transportation Commission. The deadline to apply is Tuesday, May 30 at 5:00 p.m. Applications are also being accepted for one vacancy on the Community Development Goals Committee for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2024. The deadline to submit an application is Monday, June 5 at 5:00 p.m. If interested in applying for any of these vacancies, please visit www.burbank.ca.gov/BCCapplication or contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or cityclerks@burbankca.gov. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
We have three council presentations on the agenda this evening. First is the proclamation declaring May 22, 2023 Harvey Milk Day in the city of Burbank, and I want to welcome up Mr. Mike Chapman, 40-year resident of Burbank, and a member of the Burbank Police Commission and the Burbank Human Relations Council, and Mr. Chris Weber, nine-year resident of Burbank and an active member of the YMCA Social Impact Program, to accept this proclamation. Hello, gentlemen. How are you? Good to see you.
Great.
Let me read this off to you real quick. Harvey Milk Day. Whereas Harvey Bernard Milk—I didn't know his middle name was Bernard. There you go. Harvey Bernard Milk was born on May 22, 1930 in Woodmere, New York, graduated from the University at Albany in New York in 1951, and therefore served a short time in the United States Navy. And whereas in 1972 Harvey Milk moved to San Francisco and opened a camera shop called Castro Camera, and soon emerged as a community leader founding the Castro Valley Association of Merchants and eventually becoming known as the mayor of Castro Street. And whereas he was elected to the Board of Supervisors of the city and county of San Francisco in 1977, being the first time in history of the United States that an openly gay man was elected to a prominent political office. And whereas Harvey Milk was successful in forging coalitions with San Francisco's other minority leaders, and his message was one of unity against oppression in all its forms. And whereas on November 10, 1978 Harvey Milk was shot and killed in a daytime political assassination that also included San Francisco Mayor George Moscone. And whereas in accordance with the Code of the State of California, Section 6721, May 22 shall be proclaimed Harvey Milk Day for the state of California. Now therefore I, Constantine Anthony, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do proclaim May 22, 2023, as Harvey Milk Day in recognition of Harvey Milk's life as an example of triumph of nonviolent social change, the fight for equal rights for minorities, and the personal price of political courage. Signed this day, 16th of May, 2023.
Excellent.
There you go.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the Burbank Human Relations Council and the gay and lesbian members of the Burbank community, we thank you for this proclamation. I think what I'd like to do is give a real brief biohistory of Harvey Milk. He grew up in the Bay Shore area of New York, graduated from New York State College for Teachers with a mathematics degree, and taught mathematics in Long Island, New York. During the Korean War, he served as a chief petty officer in the Navy. Afterwards, Milk was in the New York financial—a New York financial analyst for a brief period. A few years after that, Milk worked with the Barry Goldwater Campaign in 1964. He protested the Vietnam War. He was an assistant on the production of Jesus Christ Superstar and Lenny, and he moved to the San Francisco and opened the camera shop that you mentioned before there, and co-founded the Castro Village Association of Gay Business Owners, where he fought to reduce taxes on small businesses. He also launched the Castro Street Fair in 1974. He had forged an alliance with the Teamsters, supporting a boycott of Coors Beer over their hiring practices at the time. He ran for several public offices, including the California State Assembly, but he lost that. He also ran several times for a seat on the Board of Supervisors in San Francisco, and finally in 1977 Milk won the seat on the Board of Supervisors. In 1978, he was a leading voice against Prop 6, which would have banned gay teachers from teaching in public schools. He also spearheaded a bill to ban discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations. In November of 1978, Harvey Milk was assassinated in a city hall office. The assassin, Dan White, served less than five years in prison for killing both Harvey Milk and San Francisco Mayor Moscone. White's trial was dubbed as the Twinkie Defense, as was suggested that White had a sugar imbalance in his diet that affected his ability to restrain himself from pulling a trigger. In 2009, the state of California designated May 22, which is Harvey Milk's birthday, to be Harvey Milk Day. Milk will primarily be remembered for his activism in gay issues and equal rights. Harvey Milk was a minority member who, rather than standing on the sidelines, became actively engaged in his local government. He showed that it was possible for minority members to make a positive impact on the entire community. This proclamation here speaks highly of our Burbank community and of our Burbank leadership. It represents the weaving together of different threads in our community into a strong social fabric. We truly appreciate this. Thank you. And if I may, I'd like to introduce Chris, and Chris comes to us—he's a—you're going to have to hang on to that—is a seven-year resident of Burbank and is currently Assistant Dean of Business Transformation at UCLA Anderson Business School of Management. He's also active with the YMCA Social Impact Program, which is great for Burbank.
Thanks, Mike. And thank you again, Mayor Anthony, members of the council for honoring Harvey Milk's legacy with this proclamation from the city. As Mike highlighted, Harvey Milk used his platform to champion equality and improve the quality of life for the community he served. He's quoted as saying that "the American dream starts with the neighborhoods. If we wish to rebuild our cities, we must first rebuild our neighborhoods, and to do that, we must understand that the quality of life is more important than the standard of living." That last part of the quote resonates with me strongly. How a person lives matters. The dignity and individual feels is often manifested from what a community fosters. And for Harvey, and for those of us who see him as a role model, who and how you love is fundamental to the quality of one person's life. As Harvey said, "If you are not personally free to be yourself in that most important of all human activities, the expression of love, then life itself loses its meaning." As Mike said, this proclamation speaks very highly of our Burbank community and our city leadership. It symbolizes the importance of creating a community that values diversity—the, excuse me, values the diversity that LGBTQ people bring to Burbank, and establishes norms where LGBTQ people feel included and can thrive. For when these conditions exist, people can do something that is still, despite the considerable progress since his passing, one of the most bravest and revolutionary acts possible: come out and be who they truly are in a world that regularly tells them not to. And our youth need those community conditions most. Harvey said that "all young people, regardless of sexual orientation or identity, deserve a safe and supportive environment to which to achieve their full potential." However, the Trevor Project's 2022 National Survey on LGBTQ Mental Health Youth found that nearly half of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide in 2021. It's why a place like the YMCA of Burbank's Social Impact Center is essential for youth and community development. The space provides participating youth a safe and supportive physical place to be, programs that allow individuals to become the best versions of themselves, and activities that foster healthy individuals and communities. Thank you again for this proclamation and for the opportunity to speak about the importance of Harvey Milk. Harvey once said that "freedom is too enormous to be slipped under a closet door." We must create the conditions where people can come out and live their truths, and communities can start dialoguing. For once we have started dialogue, you know that you can break down prejudice. Thank you.
Can we get the folks from the Burbank Human Relations Council come up and take a photo? Is that all right? You guys want to come up? Is that okay? Yes, please. I know we have a member up here. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, where do you get up?
Yeah.
BHRC has a special bus trip coming up on June 10, and we are going to be going to the Caesar Chavez National Monument and Museum, and it's going to be a bus trip from here in Burbank. We take you up, bring you back home by 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
Where is this?
It's called Keene.
Okay.
Near Tehachapi.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, yeah. Check the website.
And we invite the community to join us.
All right, so it's open to the public, yeah?
It's open to the public, absolutely, and it's free to our members, and it's only $20 for those who aren't members, but it would actually behoove you to join because it's $20 to join.
There you go. Clever.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. And for those people who like to argue that all of this is in the past and we've moved forward, and we're not in those same places anymore, I remind them that our senior senator from the state of California was in the room—in the building—when Harvey Milk was shot. This is not the distant past. This is still modern history, and we have to remember that there are people alive today that remember this, that happened. And there's stuff that's happening today. We have to keep pushing forward. So thank you all for being here. Next is the proclamation declaring May 15 through the 21st National Police Week in the city of Burbank, and I want to welcome Burbank Police Chief Michael Albanese, Captain Adam Cornels, and Captain Dennis Kremmons to join me up here.
Whereas in 1962 President John Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week, and whereas National Police Week is dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community and giving recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others, and whereas law enforcement officers strive to maintain a safe environment for all, often while facing significant challenges and dangers, and our community recognizes the important work and sacrifices officers make each day to protect the city of Burbank, and whereas all members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the community by safeguarding life and property, by protecting community members against violence or disorder, and whereas the personnel of the city of Burbank Police Department perform their duties with compassion, professionalism, and dedication, providing a vital public service to our community, safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the members of our community. Now therefore I, Constantine Anthony, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim the week of May 14 through the 20th, 2023, as National Police Week in the city of Burbank. The council of the city of Burbank recognizes and honors the law enforcement personnel whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Signed, 16th of May, 2023.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This week is a solemn week for law enforcement and the law enforcement families. We had nine of our officers, three of whom were retired, that did the memorial ride and that traveled over five states to DC to the National Memorial. It was three days, 250 miles, and there was over 2,500 riders. This is to memorialize the 20th anniversary of Matthew Pavelka's death, and that'll be November 15 of this year. We'll make it 20 years. So sobering, solemn, but also a time to celebrate. So I'm going to introduce our staff. This is Captain Adam Cornels and our police administrator Courtney Paget, and this is Officer George Cuyard, who just graduated from the academy on Thursday. So I also would have introduced Captain J.J. Plegleasy, who is the most senior member of the Burbank Police Department, who will celebrate his 30th anniversary in September, but I wanted to bring the newest and the oldest, but he is traveling out of state, picking up his son from college and returning back. So for those who've been in law enforcement for many, many years, this is always a tough week, so thank you for the support. And City Council, thank you. City staff, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Lastly, our final presentation, National Water Safety Month. I want to bring our Parks and Rec Aquatics Coordinator, Michael Segane, Senior Recreation Leader Samantha Villanueva, and Senior Lifeguards Jonathan Elliott, Henry Margarian, and Cameron Suave to accept this proclamation. Hello. All right, this is good for me because I sink like a rock, so I'm going to read—I'm going to read this carefully and learn something. National Water Safety Month. Whereas swimming and aquatic-related activities are an integral part of healthy communities throughout Los Angeles County, including the city of Burbank, and whereas the city of Burbank is committed to ensuring the safety of all residents and guests who visit the Verdugo Aquatic Facility and the Macambridge Pool, and whereas education, athletic, and recreation programs throughout the city of Burbank encompass a multitude of activities that can result in personal accomplishment, self-fulfillment, and family unity, regardless of background, athletic ability, skill level, or age, and whereas swimming and other aquatic activities contribute to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all residents and visitors of the city of Burbank, and whereas water safety education is essential to prevent drowning and recreational water-related injuries, and whereas the city of Burbank remains committed to public safety and educational efforts in order to prevent water-related injuries and deaths, and whereas the city of Burbank is extremely proud of the Parks, Recreation, and Community Service Departments' aquatic facilities, programs, and the valuable contribution each provides towards a safe, healthy place to recreate, a place to learn, grow, swim, build self-esteem, confidence, and a sense of self-worth, all of which contribute to the quality of life in the city of Burbank. Now therefore I, Constantine Anthony, Mayor of the city of Burbank, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Water Safety Month in the city of Burbank, and encourage everyone to extend their appreciation and support to all those working at our swimming pools to keep everyone safe. Signed, 16th of May, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for presenting us this proclamation. I'll go ahead and reintroduce my staff here. So we have Samantha Villanueva, our Senior Recreation Leader, and Senior Lifeguards Jonathan Elliott, Cameron Sauve, and Henry Margarian. We're also missing one of our other senior lifeguards tonight, Tara America, who's actually at the facility. But even though this proclamation's specifically for May, our busiest season's coming up, Verdugo Aquatic Facility and Macambridge Pool collectively see close to 30,000 recreational swimmers in a three-month period, and about 70,000 lap swimmers, and close to 2,000 to 3,000 learn-to-swim participants. So hopefully we can continue to keep people safe and enjoy this summertime. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. City Manager Justin Hess, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have anything for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Now is the time for general public comment. For those members of the public who are here in person and wish to speak, please turn in a yellow general public comment card to our city clerk. Any person speaking during the general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business, except for the public hearing, and if you speak to the public hearing item, your comments will not be included in the public hearing record, so you can do that later when the public hearing comes up. You may use this first-period public comment to address an agendized report, but will not be able to speak on that item when that report comes up later in the evening. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please try to stay within your three minutes, and I repeat, previously I've said, you don't have to use the whole three minutes. That's up to you. If you want to, you know, get out of here at a decent time, that's up to you. Please state your name for the record if you can, and anyone who wants to call in can call in now, 818-238-3335. You'll be placed in a queue until we get through the yellow cards first. All right. Our first speaker is Ron Backs, followed by John Fisher. Hello again, Mr. Backs.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and staff. I've decided to take a break in my presentation of an analysis of a survey taken April 19 to 28, 2022 because of the issues discussed in the last two meetings. AB 1482 has created this situation, renovation evictions. Be careful what you do to help this situation because you may make it worse. This is where I'm going to go off script because there's too much detail to stay within three minutes, and being an engineer, I'm going to have to try and talk in generalities, which is hard. As expenses go up, profit margin goes down. The first thing to go is profit margin, then is the margin that handles repairs, maintenance, capital improvements, et cetera. It could get as bad as where you can't avoid the unavoidable, such as property tax, insurance, et cetera, and sometime before that I would hope an owner would decide to sell, but— et cetera, and sometime before that I would hope an owner would decide to sell. But with AB 1482, any buyer is going to be stuck with the same structure in that they can't come in and raise rents as it would have been done 10 years ago. So they're not going to get involved because they're going to come in and they're also going to have, they step up in property taxes, which is going to reduce their margin further. They're going to have a mortgage more unquestionably, which is going to reduce it. Even those people that inherit, like I did for my properties, is that with Prop 19, it makes it just the same as coming in as a new buyer because you don't have that transfer from parent to child anymore. And you're going to have a mortgage like I have because I have five siblings. They get their one-sixth of the state, so I had to take a mortgage out. Okay? And COVID, I've skipped that part. COVID started to make it bad after 1482 because even though rents were frozen, they continued to creep up in the background. And then in fall of last year and the spring of this year, they really started to go up. I could tell. So you're going to have, you're going to have the people that are real estate investment trusts, corporations, and LLCs that more than one member is an LLC, I'm sorry, a corporation, which 1482 tries to describe as those people not being mom and pop organizations. So I'm going to run out of time, so I'm going to skip down to my summary that I kind of just made up, is that I caution you, rent control, that was the thrust of the January 31st meeting, may help short-term in that the tenants will have to pay a little less rent. But if it looks like the writing on the wall is long-term, they may not have a place to live because owners won't be able to maintain, as expenses go up, their properties. Thank you. I give you seven seconds.
Thank you. I appreciate the seven. John Fisher, followed by Jody Renaud.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I had some prepared statements, but I need to say first what I just heard is a farce. We're talking, he's, this person who spoke just before me was speaking long-term. In 60 days, some of us don't have homes. This isn't long-term. This is immediate for some of us. We're not talking about mom and pops. We're talking about LLCs. We're talking about organizations with no ties to the community. We've heard from landlords. I'm not here to say they shouldn't have control over their properties. These are our homes. During COVID, I had money coming in still. I was fortunate to have an income, partially through unemployment, partially through other means. I paid my landlord. As often, as much as I had money in my account, as long as I had money to pay the rent check, I paid it in full. And now I feel like I'm being told that I made the wrong move, that I should have sat on that money and invested it because I am now getting nothing back from that. I'm doing everything I was told, the things we tell our children to do. I got a good job. I made it my career. I pay my bills and my taxes. I didn't lug myself up with debt. To have someone tell you that because they can make more money on the place where you are living, be enough reason to throw you out on the streets, it's absurd. That is not enough reason to turn someone's life upside down. I'm here from the 328 building, and we just got our notices that we can expect a 60-day notice within the next two weeks. On day two, day two after escrow closed, is when we got our notices from an LLC. This is not a mom and pop landlord. And you can't tell me that this, this LLC, the people who bought this property, didn't know what they were getting into a week ago, a month ago, when they looked at the property. Nothing's changed. Notices have been served. I went and checked the day after we got our notices. No permits have been pulled. So why do we have to leave in 60 days if no permits have even been pulled? This is ridiculous. Even if I find an amicable place in the city that I call home, who's to say this won't happen to me again within a year? This city has, must file, must create protections for its renters. And it's absurd because if not, every single person on this council is telling me that I don't belong in Burbank. That's the fact, that's the fact of the matter, is do I have a home here? I keep hearing about the sense of community, about how Burbank prides itself on community, about how this town was created by the working class. That's me. That's us. And we need you right now. Please help us.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I have Jody Renaud, followed by Jim Lane.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time here tonight. I was here several weeks ago, again, speaking on behalf of my neighbors. And since I've been here, yes, we did, our building was sold, and on May 8th, we received the notice from our new owners of where to pay the rent. And then two days later, we received the notice that on June 30th, our month-to-month agreements will be terminated and we'll receive the eviction notices. Today, we received another notice that they'll be entering our apartments tomorrow to look at them for construction purposes, all while we are in distress and trying to pack along with them coming over on the weekends and, you know, looking around our apartments. And I understand that I don't own my apartment, but to me, it's more than just 900 square feet. It's where I live with my family, and it's my home. It's my home where I've lived and raised my son along with my neighbors. Burbank is my community, where I proudly worked at the YMCA for 19 years. I served on the Mayor's Youth Task Force. I served on the Board of Directors for Home Again LA. I'm a graduate of Leadership Burbank. This is my home, and this is my sense of belonging. As a young adult, attending college and working two jobs, I experienced homelessness for a short period of time. And let me tell you, my sense of belonging and connectedness was nonexistent. Fast forward many, many, many years, as a mother and a wife, I'm faced once again of the reality of losing my home. Again, I understand this is not my property, but it is my home. And the thought of losing my neighbors and this place where we've been connected for so long is beyond devastating. And I know it's easy to sit here and hear all these stories and feel sorry for these people, but this city needs to step up and protect your citizens because we are all going to have to move out of this community to afford, to find affordable housing. We have to do something. I'm begging you and pleading with you to please enact measures that will help with housing stability, rent control. We have to do something. I don't want to leave this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renaud. Jim Lane, followed by JP.
Thank you, Jim Lane, 23 years Burbank resident. I'm going to talk about something differently, different right now, but the last two speakers have moved me to extent that to say that the city must address this. The laissez-faire attitude towards renters in Burbank is utterly ridiculous. I'm from the city of Boston originally, one of the most expensive places to live in the United States. They just instituted crime control. You can do it. Okay, housekeeping matters. Sorry. Is it up? Okay, here we go. So this slide is the number one and number two on either side there are the entrances to Lakeside Golf Club. Number one is Clyborne. Number two is Lakeside Drive. Those are the two public entrances, staff and members get on the course that way. There's a history of staff and members not respecting the rules of the road in our community, and those who live on Clyborne and in my neighborhood, we know it all too well. Lakeside holds events that can bring large crowds to the neighborhood, and unlike Universal Studios, they don't bother to lurk the community. When Chief Albany first came to Burbank, he had to deal with a particularly ugly incident that involved a former Burbank police sergeant who was working one such event unbeknownst to the city. He was doing a detail and no one knew it. It was not a great night for the city and its citizens. The other circled area there, number three, is an R1 lot owned by Lakeside in Burbank that's on Hood Avenue, that the club occasionally wants to develop, putting that entire block in jeopardy. At one point, Lakeside wanted to put a public parking lot there. This is on a, you know, a dead-end street with R1 homes, lots on the street. And each time the neighborhood has come to you for help. We need city leadership to be on our side on these matters and other matters pertaining to Lakeside's hostile attitude toward the neighborhood. Could I have the next slide, please? This is in the employment agreement contract with the city manager. The city supports and understands that Lakeside Golf Club has a tradition of providing the city manager with a courtesy membership. It is understood that should a courtesy membership be offered to the city manager, any cost associated with the use of their facilities, except those all recovered under Section 3B of his agreement, shall be paid by the city manager. Well, you can see why I'm bringing this all up now. Depending on the year, initial membership fees can be near 80 grand. Each member is also required to spend thousands each month at the club. If we are to have unconflicted leadership at the city, the City Council needs to remove this from the city manager's employment agreement. If the city manager wants to become a Lakeside member, then they need to go about the same process that everyone else does. And by the way, it's an incredibly arcane process. This tradition, this grand old Burbank tradition, this has been in the employment agreement for many, many years. And some of you know, I've come to here occasionally to bring it up with the City Council. Last year, or two years ago, Sharon Springer freely admitted she didn't even realize it was in the agreement that she had voted on. So please end this. This is just, I don't even understand how the City Council, and frankly, the city manager, not just Mr. Hess, but all the ones preceding him who have had the same deal, how this is, how this goes on, how this is enabled. Bad, bad luck. And please take care of the tenants of this city.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. JP, followed by Clint Allisone.
Hello again. I'm back again just to address what happened to me before with the malicious prosecution. I still haven't heard anything back from the city attorney's office. Mr. Hess has still not contacted me. Right there, Chief Albany, he hasn't contacted me yet either. I'm still concerned about the fact of malicious prosecution in the community, especially as it comes to stuff on the agenda such as renters now being thrown off of their, out of their apartments. Like, what's going to be done with that? Are people going to be maliciously prosecuted? Are they going to be thrown out of their apartments? Are they going to use the police and city attorney office and the city manager to remove these people that have been longtime residents that have no criminal records from a lot of people I've seen up here stating their comments? I find it very disconcerting because it's happened to me, where I've been maliciously prosecuted, where items have been, as I've stated to you guys before, things have been made up, compiled upon each other, and when they can't get a conviction on me, then they come up with some other means and some other fabricated evidence to then somehow find evidence and then charge me with a crime, which that's, I mean, where's the victim in that? Aren't crimes supposed to deal with victims, causation, and factuality? If it's not, then I mean, they can just accuse anybody of anything, and people like this are going to be thrown out of their places for whatever means and whatever reasons are made up, which seems to kind of be the going theme and trend from what I've researched. I'd also like to state on the record, in 2011 to 2014, the FBI did an investigation on Burbank Police Department. It found them to be one of the most corrupt police departments in the United States, let alone California. So I just wanted to state that on the record as well. And I'd like to know, where am I supposed to send? Mr. Schultz has given me information to send him videos or him information, and I have videos and information, and I'd like to know where I'm supposed to send that. And also, when I'm not getting body camera footage or other evidence that can go to show and prove my innocence, when I request that at the police station, and I've been denied that, I've also gone through the city clerk's office and tried to request certain information and FOIA request Freedom of California Information Act, and I have yet to receive information through that process as well. And like you told me last time to go through the court process, when I'm going through the court process and it's already corrupt, obviously, then, I mean, how am I supposed to prove my innocence if I'm already guilty? Anyways, thanks for your time. I hope you guys do actually look into this and nothing happens to these people that are now on the verge of being thrown out of their places and could face police at their door or the city attorney coming after them, which seems to be, like I said, the going theme. Thanks.
Thank you, JP. Clint Allisone, followed by Kyle Hardy.
Honored City Council, my, my out date is May 31st. So thank you for working on solutions to keep good tenants safe and whole who are being evicted at no fault of their own. Let me debunk the repeated arguments I've heard from the opposition over the past few weeks by starting with a broker who asks, whose ask here was to keep business as usual. I say, fine, keep things the way they are. Don't evict us. But he didn't mean business of housing people. He meant the business of increasing equity in a newly purchased property in order to leverage a down payment on another property. I've heard the landlords talk of costs and inflation with condescending words like renters could never understand the costs we owners pay. Yet we renters are the ones who pay their leveraged loans with our rent earned through labor, and with every ache and pain, we understand the cost. As for inflation, rental inflation at 10% per year is 2% higher than 2022's, meaning renters, not property owners, continue to take the brunt of it. I've heard again and again about tenants who don't pay their rent, but what does that have to do with us? We paid our rent. I've heard of the magic words, we must protect the mom and pops, and I ask you, what are we protecting the mom and pops from? One less luxury vacation? A short delay on the purchase of their next property? What's happening is the forced displacement of the elderly, the working poor, and their children to increase the capitalization rate with or without renovations in order to increase equity, and then leverage that equity as a down payment on a similar property where the working poor, their children, and the elderly will in turn be evicted in order to repeat the cycle again and again. A clear decision is before you. Do nothing and protect investors against a cost affecting no more than their ego. Or do something and protect hundreds, if not thousands, of Burbank tenants from rape and ruin. I'm not being figurative. Anyone unhoused on the streets of Los Angeles or in temporary shelter is under 24-hour threat of rape, robbery, battery, and theft, especially women and children. It's far easier to keep people whole than to restore them. Please keep us safe. Please keep us whole. Respectfully, Clint Allisone.
Thank you, Mr. Allisone. Kyle Hardy, followed by David Donahue.
Hey, guys. Mayor, City Council is my first meeting. Thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming down.
I'm not nervous, I swear. So I've been in LA for about seven years, and I've been a Burbank resident for about two and a half. And through that seven years, I've been an Assistant Director in Film and TV, and it's been quite the grind, and I love it, and I don't intend to give it up. But there's a lot of downtime, and with the strike, you know, you got to fill your time properly. So I've become a small business owner for Burbank, in Burbank, rather. I have two LLCs, one of which is called AIR. It's an acronym for And If I Refuse. So basically, I'm a personal trainer, so I intend to offer value to the community of Burbank through that. I've also made an LLC known as Party Financial. Basically, the nice way of saying I'm a life insurance provider. So if anyone here is not protected or underprotected, give me a call. Anyways, so I am a small business owner and looking forward to growing that along with you guys. I have become a Business Chamber of Commerce member as of today. So clap it up for me. Thank you. And I applied for the Community Development Goals Committee as of today as well. I noticed that there's a vacancy available for that. So that is my first choice among two others, Planning Committee and the Parks and Rec Board. So I intend to do a little bit of research before the 30th and apply to one of those as well. And lastly, the reason why I want to do this is because I'm a big believer in growth and challenging yourself. challenging yourself, and I have a strong affinity towards Burbank. For whatever reason, I don't know, I love this place, and I want to help an already flourishing and growing community to continue to grow. So I hope that you'll consider me for those three positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. David Donahue, followed by Jared Cavanolo.
Honorable Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, council members, and talented staff. It's nice to be in front of the dais again. Vice Mayor Schultz, it's good to see you this evening. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Tagahashi for your time in meeting with me. It was very expeditious, and I'd welcome the community that, again, reiterate that the council is a group that you can reach out to and they are going to be responsive. So, thank you very much for your time. This Saturday was the first time I went to the Police and Fire Department's event and their campus, and it was phenomenal. I thought it was a great way. I think a lot of you were there, and I really applaud the effort and the work that the Fire Department and the Police Department puts into it. This evening, I want to talk about the districting mapping, and if some of you have not had a chance to get online to actually dive into that, I would welcome you to do it. It is phenomenally difficult. It is hard to be able to kind of get down the, the map and the statistics and the odds so they can get under 10%, but then to get it even more hyper-focused into the particular neighborhoods that are now going to be following the one, two, and three levels of the categories that the demographer said that you need to follow is, is difficult. One, it is neighborhoods, keeping them centric. It is different than the Burbank Unified School District, which actually, if you have not seen their MAP 104 yet, I encourage you to look at. It is not going to be, as my understanding, the city is not going to be, have to follow or should follow those necessary sort of parameters. It is, and so I've sat down with people, I've tried to walk them through it, I've tried to get them to know it. There are a couple of questions that I had with the demographer who was at the Saturday event, and I will hopefully be able to direct them neither to Mr. Hess's office or to whomever. I might be able to get some clarification on how I can send a map if I've created it along with others and we can share, which is a function of the online portal. You can share and do those things before you publish it and then share it with the city. Is if I had a map and I was modifying it, sharing it with other people, could they then look at and say, "Oh, I like David Donahue's map. I want to submit it too." There's a few little details I'd like to get additional clarification on, or at the next community hearing or session where we could actually get a little bit more hands-on and kind of understand that process with the understanding that, according to our city attorney, is going to happen. We will have five districts, and so thank you very much for your time this evening, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Jared Cavanolo, followed by Jose Pimienta.
Good evening, members of council and staff. I'd like to thank you for looking into the possibility of offering mediation services for resolving landlord-tenant disputes. I hope this is something that can be included in the budget, as I believe it could be a low-cost option to bring landlords and tenants together to try and find mutually agreeable solutions to some of the issues that we've heard about tonight. My primary question about mediation is if it entails any process for documenting instances in which one party wishes to mediate but the other does not, or those in which mediator proposes a resolution that one or both parties choose not to pursue. Since mediation is voluntary and non-binding, the process is only effective if both parties approach it in good faith. That issue of good faith ties back to the more immediate matter of rent evictions. Some residents have criticized discussions about this issue here and at the Landlord-Tenant Commission as being one-sided because landlords have not been afforded an equal voice. This is a bad faith argument, as landlords have just as many opportunities to speak at these meetings as do tenants. The fact that more landlords, and specifically those who own the properties where the rent evictions are occurring, haven't publicly presented their side concerns me, because it suggests that they'd rather hide behind legal loopholes than speak face-to-face to the people whom they're displacing. I also want to repeat the point that Mr. Pimienta made at last week's public comment, that most landlords who did speak at the May 1st LTC meeting actually supported protections tenants have been asking for, such as requiring landlords to pull permits for intended renovations and the need for increased relocation time and compensation. The only argument I've heard against such protections was from a landlord who called into that meeting to say that landlords are more concerned with seeing a return on their investment than with performing a service for the community. This refutes the euphemistic self-characterization of landlords as housing providers and undermines a statement made at last week's public comment that making landlords out to be profit-hungry or greedy is just not fair. The argument that these mom-and-pop landlords are part of the fabric of the Burbank community is also disingenuous, as one of the property owners in question is the LA-based Drake Realty Group, who describe themselves as owner-minded and results-driven. Not exactly your friendly neighborhood mom-and-pop. Just because corporate property owners won't defend their actions in public forums and because landlords who have spoken about this issue have either taken tenant's side or said the quiet part out loud about being more concerned with profits than with people, doesn't mean that landlords haven't had their fair say. And it underscores the need for council and staff to implement immediate emergency tenant protections to prevent Burbank residents from being displaced due to policies that landlords and tenants agree are unfair. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Pimienta, followed by Alessandra Valdez. And that's my last speaker card. If anyone else wants to come up, grab a yellow card, send it over to the city clerk.
I left the pen here. Good evening, everyone in council. Thank you for having us here today. I'm basically just here to echo what some of the tenants have already said stepping forward. That is, they need tenant protections and they need immediate action as soon as possible. Their clock is ticking. They were given a notice to vacate their home by 60, within 60 days on the beginning of April, and May is coming to an end, or we're halfway through May. So I just want to keep emphasizing that part, because while we continue to look for solutions, their clock is still ticking. Now, on top of that, I also just want to keep emphasizing that while this is happening, we all, you know, myself and other people from the Burbank Tenant Union continue talking to these tenants, and we keep hearing sentiments such as, "We're giving up. We're leaving. We are, we're done fighting. We don't have anything else to do here. The city has not spoken for us." And at least I can speak for the Burbank Tenant Union on this issue. We are trying to keep telling them that, no, the city will fight for them, that the city will have hope, that the tenants will be protected, because this is their home and this is where they belong, and they have every right to be here. So, I just want to reemphasize that, that they can't be here tonight because, well, they no longer live in Burbank. Just want to take a moment for you to sit with that. Other than that, well, you've been hearing from, you've been hearing from multiple sources about different, you know, different elements of the situation, so I hope you take that into consideration. I hope you make, I hope you make the right decision in protecting the residents of this city. And other than that, thank you for your evening, and for those of you who celebrated this past Sunday, Happy Mother's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Alessandra Valdez, and that's my last speaker card.
Hello, good evening. My name is Alessandra Valdez, and I am a member of the Burbank Tenant Union, and I am a renter in Burbank, and I'm here tonight with my neighbors to stand in solidarity with them again, because we need to advocate for an emergency ordinance that will sufficiently address the rent eviction crisis that has spread across this city ever since LA County protections expired. These tenants should not be forced to move unless landlords pull permits with the city. At the Landlord-Tenant Commission meeting, both mom-and-pop landlords and tenants agreed on this fact. Intent to renovate on your eviction notice is not enough, nor should it be. There should be detailed description of the work being done in the building and why tenants cannot remain safely in it while work is being done. And if there is an actual renovation that's happening, then we need to give renters more time to be able to move, and we need to give them relocation fees in order to adjust to this major life change. We have residents who are moving, who have been living in their buildings for 30 years, 20 years, they've raised their children here. We have to give them time, and we need to give them relocation fees if there is actually a renovation that is happening in the property. The number of buildings and people that have been impacted by the rent eviction crisis have only increased from the April 25th meeting where we all stood and spoke. More and more buildings are being affected by this, and the time to act is now. The clock is ticking, so I am asking council to seriously look at emergency tenant protections and permanent tenant protections immediately after. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to callers now.
We do have callers.
Do you know how many offhand, or no?
Just one so far.
The first caller is Janet Deo.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, city staff, and everyone in Burbank. Housing is a huge issue, but I will avoid that tonight and speak only about one gentleman that is really amazing and served on the Transportation Commission with me and served as a vice chair and chairman, and that is Paul Dyson. When you consider appointment for a full term, he's finishing filling a partial term. Please consider the fact that he was the only one who reached out to the Burbank Advisory Council on Disabilities for information about the terminal and accessibility, because even though we participated in all the charades, it seems that some of the information that was gathered through those venues and through those events seems to be lost. And we're very, very lucky that Paul remembered that, contacted me, has been attending the Advisory Council on Disabilities meeting, and has encouraged the Airport Commission, who are now all on board and would like to work with the Advisory Council to make sure that the new airport terminal is user-friendly and real-world accessible for all of us. The idea of, well, there are so many different things that need to be done for the new terminal, but I think that having Paul Dyson on the commission, the Airport Commission, is a vital piece to that. And I even received a call from the chairman or the president of the commission, Emily Gabel-Luddy, who also was complimenting Paul and saying, "He has been the moving force, the driving force." And if anyone is interested in attending the Burbank Advisory Council on Disabilities, we are not a Brown Act committee. We are just plain folks from town here that are trying to make the world a more user-friendly place. It's the fourth Thursday of every month. We're doing meetings on Zoom still, but if you go to B-A-C-O-D-16@gmail.com and just send them a, an email and say, "I'm interested. I have some opinions." We would love to hear from you and love to you in the Zoom call. Thank you very much, and please consider Paul Dyson. His rail knowledge, his connectivity knowledge for different types of transportation are unparalleled, and he is a tremendous asset for our Burbank community on that commission.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
The next caller is Linda Granero.
Good afternoon to the city mayor, to all of the city councilmen and women. My name is Linda Granero, and I have been at every meeting for the last couple of weeks trying to emphasize, you know, our, our need for, you know, some type of protection for tenants. You know, all of my neighbors are there. I couldn't be there today because I'm unfortunately one of those tenants whose clock is ticking, and it's either I go to the, the, the meeting, or I pack, or I go searching for another apartment, which I haven't had any luck finding, nothing that I can actually afford. You know, I'm here with my daughter, and we really need your help. And at this point, I'm one of those people that feel like, you know, the city is just kind of waiting to see what happens and see, you know, who's going to go first, and, you know, I guess I'm going to be one of those people that is going to have to go first, because I honestly don't see any way that we could stay here in Burbank. You know, we have been here for six years. We have been, this has been our community where my daughter and I feel safe, you know, but, you know, it, now it feels like the city's turning their back on us, you know, so we have, we have to go find another place that, you know, will, will feel like a community, you know, the way that Burbank once did. It doesn't feel that way now because we're getting no help. We have gone to all of the resources that we have been given, you know, we have gone to housing, we have gone, gone to stay-home-lay, everything, everything, every resource that you guys have given us that, you know, that have been provided, you know, as maybe a resource. We have tried that and nothing has worked. At this point, I'm just wondering, you know, do you have a website where I can sign up for my tent? Because it sounds like I'm going to be living out in the street, and, you know, unless I get kicked out to another city, you know, by Burbank Police Department. That's all I have to say, and I truly hope that you will consider helping us with some protections, because at this point, we really have, we're running out of time and out of options. Thank you.
All right, there being no more calls, I will close the public comment period.
Mr. Mayor?
Response, yes, please.
If I could start, hopefully it'll minimize the amount of prolonged discussion. Let me first address the tenant evictions issue. There is no action that the city council can take tonight or in the immediate near future that will terminate the eviction proceedings that have already been put in place if those proceedings are legal. The place for tenants who received eviction notices to challenge those eviction notices is in the unlawful detainer proceedings between the landlords and those tenants. There's not a matter pending before the city that will change the relationship between those landlords and tenants today or even in the next couple of weeks. If the notices have already been given, those proceedings have been set in motion, and there's nothing before the council that will change that. Hopefully, the legal aid services, such as Neighborhood Legal Services, Housing Rights Center, can be of assistance. It sounds like some people have had mixed results, but the unlawful detainer proceedings are the place for the tenants to challenge the basis for these renovation evictions and whether they meet the standard under the statute until the city can enact something. And then, as for the, the map, the district mapping, the city has the schedule up on the website. If someone wants to submit paper maps, they can submit them to the city clerk, and the city clerk will work with our office and PIO to get them to the demographer who is uploading them and compiling the paper maps so they can be submitted to the city clerk. The city's initial map submission deadline is June the 2nd. Initial maps will be posted June the 6th, but there are four more community forums to go over the mapping, and the final map submission deadline is not until July 7th. So we will have additional public hearings and community forums throughout the month of June. We've got June 14th is the third public hearing, June 15th is a community forum, June 22nd is a community forum, June 24th and June 29th. And then there will be subsequent meetings. All of this information is posted on the city's BurbankCouncilDistricting.squarespace.com, and it's on the city's homepage.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Thank you all for coming out. Obviously, yes, things are in motion. It's tough to catch up, and so just to clarify, civil cases between contract holders and lessers and lesses, if we were to enact, if any body, government body enacts a law, anything that happened prior would be judged in a court of law based on the time it was enacted or filed. So it's tough to go back and fix things. Thank you all for coming out here, and I will say it's, it's not easy to sit up here and listen to this stuff. This is very difficult. Thank you all for coming out, Council- Counsel, do you have any other comments? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While I can't disagree with the city attorney's legal interpretation to Mr. Pimiento, I agree that immediate action is important, and I think that there are some tools at the disposal of the council. I can't get into that conversation until we get to the budget agenda item. So for now, I'll just say I hear you loud and clear, immediate action. Only two other comments. To Mr. Lane, I'm not sure if he's still here. I just wanted to say, sir, take your input into consideration regarding employment contracts, but when those employment contracts are set, I certainly won't opine, but our city attorney could tell you that it's very difficult, if not impossible, to adjust an employment contract midstream, but we'll certainly take that input into consideration for the next time the contract is up. And lastly, to JP, I would just encourage you, sir, I think he also left, if you have concerns about violation of your legal rights, I would certainly encourage you to speak with an attorney. However, as a matter of public record, you can share any information with this council by emailing citycouncil, all one word, at BurbankCA.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone who came out to speak tonight and the callers who called in. I know it's hard to keep coming out. For those who've been here multiple times, it's hard to keep coming out to speak on issues that are important to you, so I appreciate your taking your time. And for those who are having difficulties right now, I know how hard that is additionally. So thank you. Let's see, I had a question to staff about the Lakeside issues. Is that what you were referring to earlier? Okay, great. That's going to be dealt with then. And then also, thank you to Mr. Hardy, who came in early to talk about your application to the CDBG Committee. It's always nice to see applicants early. Mr. Pimiento and Ms. Valdez, this is what I heard you say. The folks, some of the folks who have been run evicted no longer live in Burbank, and that makes me very sad to hear. And I think that now I'm counting six, and that makes me sad too, to think of future. So I'm just saying I'm sad to hear that. And then lastly, the last caller, also to staff, I'm kind of concerned about that last caller, so I just want to make sure that she's getting help or assistance from the city staff and that we know who she is and that we don't end up with somebody else to add to our homeless count. Thank you again for all coming out tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Again, I can't say anything more than what was already said by my co-council colleagues. It is a difficult situation, and I think it's difficult for council, it's difficult for all of you, and we hear you, we understand. And so stay tuned as I keep on repeating every week, there's really nothing we can immediately do right now, as you heard the city attorney has indicated that. I do want to address also Mr. Hardy. Thank you for coming out and congratulations on your new business. This is exciting that you opened a business in Burbank. For other speakers that addressed in regards to the item on the agenda tonight for the appointment, we will be discussing that shortly. So thank you, everyone.
Like my colleagues, I just want to thank everybody who came to speak today. I know it's not easy for a lot of you to make the public comment, in person or on the phone. So thank you for coming down and doing that. And thank you to Mr. Hardy for making that comment, too. It's hard for different reasons, but thank you for taking the time. I know, and I'm grateful to the city attorney for mentioning and not letting us give false hope for what we can and can't do, but please know that this is not easy to listen to, and it's in our brains, and it's something that we are looking at. I know at least, you know, I can say that everybody here is looking at this. I won't dive any further until we get to the budget, but I also want to echo what my colleagues have shared. Please email us, please email me. I'm happy to sit down with you for as long as you'd like to talk about this. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, yes?
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, we're not sure if the last caller has reached out or if we've been in contact with her, so we'll make sure we'll follow up and get her number and try to make sure that we help her.
Great, we got caller ID? Yeah?
Yes, I believe so.
All right, good. Okay. Okay, great. Last thing I will say is, I know sometimes it looks like there's delays or we're not moving fast enough. Trust me when I say on this issue, this is the, this is fast. We're moving fast. The wheels of government move really slow. I will tell you, this is some of the fastest I've seen, especially from this city, so everyone's pulling their weight. Now is the time and place for the hearing for a project number 230001259 concerning introduction of an ordinance to amend the streamlined ministerial review and public oversight process for development projects submitted under the streamlined ministerial approval process pursuant to state law, including Government Code Sections 65913.4, also known as SB 35, and 65912.100, also known as AB 2011. Before we begin, are there any disclosures from council relating to this hearing?
No.
I will only disclose that the Vice Mayor and myself have voted on a similar item previous years. That does not bias us on tonight's.
No. And I'll just, I guess if we're doing disclosures out of the abundance of caution, I voted initially against, and I believe you joined me, the ordinance that will be considering tonight in its current form.
Correct. Madam City Clerk, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
Yes, you do.
All right. And has the city received any written communications on this matter, and have they been provided to all city council members?
There were no email communications received.
Oh, wow. Okay. That's surprising. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Could I have the presentation? Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, and members of the council. My name is Shapra Rajesh, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. Tonight, you are being requested to consider a zone text amendment to amend current city's streamlined ministerial review and public oversight process for development projects submitted under Senate Bill 35 or SB 35, and implement a streamlined ministerial review and public oversight process for projects where the state mandates a streamlined ministerial review process, including projects submitted under Assembly Bill 2011 or AB 2011. On January 4th, 2022, the City Council adopted an ordinance, Ordinance Number 22-3964, establishing a two-step ministerial review and public oversight process for SB 35 applications. At the October 25th, 2022 council meeting, the staff was directed to bring back the existing streamlined ministerial review and public oversight process for SB 35 application for the new council's review and consideration. In addition to SB 35, the city is required to comply with the provisions of AB 2011 that was signed on September 28th, 2022, and will become effective on July 1st, 2023. AB 2011 allows streamlined ministerial review process for housing projects in commercial zones and corridors that meet certain objective standards, affordability levels, and site criteria that is similar to SB 35 streamlined ministerial review process. The proposed Zone Text Amendment and the associated ordinance amends the city's existing ministerial review and public oversight process for SB 35 applications by allowing the Community Development Director to review site eligibility of a project on receipt of a Notice of Intent application while maintaining council review for final approval of SB 35 applications. Additionally, the ordinance will implement a streamlined ministerial review process and public oversight process for AB 2011 applications submitted pursuant to Government Code Section 65912.100. Recognizing that both SB 35 and AB 2011 incorporate identical streamlined ministerial review process for multifamily housing projects, the proposed ZTA and the associated ordinance amends the code to expand the scope of the city's streamlined ministerial review process, which would apply to all projects where the state mandates streamlined ministerial review, including AB 2011 and SB 35 projects. SB 35 became effective in 2018 and applies to cities that have not made sufficient progress towards meeting their regional housing needs assessment or RENA allocation during the fifth planning cycle from 2014 to 2021. SB 35 establishes a streamlined ministerial approval process for multifamily housing projects with two or more units that meet certain specified criteria and are located on sites with general plan land use designation or zoning for residential use or mixed-use development with at least two-thirds of the square footage of the development designated for residential use. The city of Burbank issued only 26% of permits against its fifth-cycle RENA allocations and have not met its RENA obligation during the previous eight-year planning period of the city's housing element, and therefore is subject to the streamlined ministerial approval process of SB 35 for residential developments. The city is required to have at least 50% permitting progress for applicable income categories as noted in the city's RENA allocation during the first half-reporting period of the sixth planning cycle, that is by April 2025, to attain exemption from SB 35's streamlined ministerial approval process for residential developments. This slide provides an overview of SB 35 process as specified in the state law, Government Code Section 65913.4. The SB 35 project review process broadly includes two steps. The first step is for a prospective applicant to submit a Notice of Intent application to the city for a potentially eligible SB 35 project. Within 30 days of receipt of an NOI application, the city must begin the notification and consultation process with the California Native American Tribes that are traditionally and culturally affiliated with the geographic area of the project site, providing information on the proposed development. The NOI process is deemed complete once tribal consultation process is concluded pursuant to Government Code Section 65913.4B, which is included as Attachment 4 to the staff report. The second step includes submission of an SB 35 application after completion of the NOI application, which includes tribal consultation process and execution of enforceable agreements with each of the responding tribes and the city. After receiving an SB 35 application, the city is required to complete ministerial review of objective development standards applicable to the project within 60 days of receiving the application for projects proposing 150 or less housing units, and within 90 days for projects proposing more than 150 housing units. Additionally, the state law provides an option for a ministerial design review or public oversight process by Planning Commission or City Council, which is required to be completed within 90 days of receiving an SB 35 application for projects proposing 150 or less housing units, and within 180 days for projects proposing more than 150 housing units. This slide provides an overview of AB 2011. AB 2011, also known as the Affordable Housing and High Road Jobs Act of 2022, was signed by Governor Newsom on September 28th, 2022, and will become effective on July 1st, 2023. AB 2011 allows streamlined ministerial review process for qualifying multifamily housing projects with five or more units on commercially zoned lots and along commercial corridors. Housing development projects are required to meet site eligibility criteria, affordability levels, and objective standards specified in Government Code Section 65912.100 in order to qualify for processing under AB 2011. Since AB 2011 will allow development of qualifying residential and mixed-use projects in commercial zones and corridors, planning staff is working on a ZTA, updating objective development standards that would apply to all residential and mixed-use projects in non-residential zones and will be presented for the council's consideration on May 23rd, 2023. Pursuant to Government Code Section 65912.100, housing development projects submitted under AB 2011 are exempt from review under California Environmental Quality Act because the bill allows ministerial processing of such development by considering them as used by right. Unlike SB 35 projects, tribal consultation is not required for housing development submitted under AB 2011. Projects submitted under AB 2011 will be required to complete a Phase 1 environmental assessment to inspect presence of any potential environmental hazard on a property subject to applicable local and state provisions. In case of presence of a hazardous substance, an applicant will be required to undertake additional studies to determine potential impacts and implement appropriate measures to reduce or eliminate all potential adverse impacts. This slide provides an overview of AB 2011 process as specified in the state law, Government Code Section 65912.100. The city is required to complete its ministerial review of housing development projects submitted under AB 2011, which includes review of site eligibility, affordability, provision of prevailing wages, and objective development standards applicable to the project within 60 days of receiving an application for projects proposing 150 or less units, and within 90 days for projects proposing more than 150 units. Additionally, the state law allows for a ministerial design review or public oversight process by Planning Commission or City Council, which is required to be completed within 90 days of receiving an application for projects proposing 150 or less units, and within 180 days for projects proposing more than 150 units. This slide provides an overview of current city's streamlined ministerial review process for SB 35 applications as specified in Ordinance Number 22-3964, which was adopted by the City Council on January 4th, 2022. Changes are being proposed to the text highlighted in red on the slide. The first step of the two-step ministerial review process detailed in the ordinance requires City Council review of Notice of Intent to verify site eligibility within 60 days of receiving an NOI application. Concurrently, the city staff initiates notification and consultation process with the California Native American Tribes that are affiliated with the geographic area of a project site within 30 days of receipt of an NOI application. After completing the NOI to submit an application for streamlined ministerial approval process, which includes council review of site eligibility and tribal consultation, an applicant may submit an SB 35 application to the city. Step 2 includes Community Development Director's review of a project's compliance with objective development standards applicable to the project within 60 days of receiving an SB 35 application for projects proposing 150 or less units, and within 90 days for projects with more than 150 units. And finally, City Council review of the director's determination of a project's consistency with objective development standards, which must be completed in 90 days for projects with 150 or less units, and 180 days for projects with more than 150 units as measured from the date of SB 35 application submitted. This slide indicates the proposed changes to the city's streamlined ministerial review process. The first step would apply only to those projects that are submitted under SB 35. The proposed amendment includes elimination of the council review of site eligibility of a potential SB 35 project once an NOI application is submitted to the city. As required by the state law, staff will initiate tribal consultation process with the tribes affiliated with the geographic area of a project site within 30 days of receiving NOI to submit SB 35 application, and tribes will have 30 days to respond back. The step 2 of the process will be applicable to all projects where the state mandates streamlined ministerial review process, including projects submitted under AB 2011 and SB 35. The text highlighted in green indicates the proposed changes. The second step begins after an applicant submits a streamlined ministerial review application to the city, and it includes Community Development Director's review of a project's compliance with objective development standards applicable to the project, which must be completed within 60 days of receiving an application for projects proposing 150 or less units, and within 90 days for projects with more than 150 units. And finally, City Council review of the director's determination of a project's consistency with objective development standards, which must be completed in 90 days for projects with 150 or less units, and 180 days for projects with more than with 150 or less units and 180 days for projects with more than 150 units as measured from the date of application submitted. The proposed update would enable planning staff review for determination of site eligibility for SB 35 applications while maintaining City Council review for final approval of a project. Additionally, the proposed amendment includes updates to the list of documents that an applicant will be required to submit along with a streamlined ministerial review application, including SB 35 and AB 2011 applications. Per the proposed update, an applicant will be required to submit Phase 1 environmental site assessment if a site is identified by the Burbank Fire Department as having a history of hazardous material use or storage. Further, if Phase 1 assessment recommends further analysis, including preparation of a Phase 2 or any additional environmental site assessments, the developer will be required to submit the additional environmental site assessment studies as a part of the application. Moreover, the developer will be responsible for all costs related to third-party review of these additional environmental site assessment documents. The purpose of SB 35 and AB 2011 is to streamline the development review process to encourage the production of housing. The city is subject to the requirements of both SB 35 and AB 2011. AB 2011 will become effective on July 1, 2023. The proposed ordinance will enable or will establish a streamlined review process for housing development projects where state law mandates such a review process, including projects submitted under SB 35 and AB 2011. Additionally, the proposed ordinance will improve the efficiency of SB 35 streamlined ministerial review process by aligning the process with the state law and enabling city staff review of site eligibility while retaining the City Council review for the final approval of a project, which includes approval of site eligibility. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt the following ordinance: An ordinance of the Council of the City of Burbank amending Title 10, Chapter 1 zoning in order to amend the streamlined ministerial review and public oversight process for applications submitted under the streamlined ministerial approval process when required by the state law, including Government Code Sections 65913.4 SB 35 and 65912.100 AB 2011. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon-colored public hearing card to the city clerk, not the yellow, the salmon color, if you wish to speak. Please state your name for the record, and those wishing to call in for this public hearing item only, again, same number, 818-238-3335. It will be placed in a queue until after the in-person comments. Madam City Clerk, do we have any salmon comment cards?
We do not.
No? And do we have anyone on the line?
We have no callers, Mr. Mayor.
Give it just a second. I just put the number out there. Let me know if anyone pops in. They might be at home realizing there's no salmon cards.
No callers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, I will close the public comment period. Now, this is a public hearing, so I want to do this by the book. Let's just, for council-only questions, and save your comments and deliberations for after the close of the public hearing. Mr. City Attorney, did you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that you received a supplemental packet with red lines. I wanted to just briefly explain those. There are some changes from the original packet that was published two weeks ago. Those changes are essentially made to make the streamlined review apply to any project that the state puts into the streamlined review. Originally as drafted, it was specific to the two laws in which streamlined review must occur, which is SB 35 and AB 2011, but it's foreseeable that the state may add additional categories of projects. And so we made some slight modifications, which are in red line in your packet, both to the ordinance, just to make sure that we're not put in another rush situation where we have to amend the code to create the space. We've worded it so that we're not necessarily agreeing that other projects should be subject to streamlined review, but if required by the state in the way that it preempts our code, we wanted to make space for that. And so that's the nature of the changes you received lately.
Okay, and that's just in anticipation of any state law that would require streamlined ministerial review?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I have, I have one question, if I could start off. Can we pull up Slide Number 9 one more time real quick? This was great, I like this slide. Yeah, that one there. So, Ms. Rajesh, on the left-hand side, so this is, so currently, this is our process for SB 35, is that correct? All right. Under this current SB 35 process, on the left-hand side in the red box, during Step 1, there's a council review of the notice of intent for verifying site eligibility. But then also during Step 2, at the end, there's another council's ministerial design review of the project. So council has two separate review periods, and that's during a public meeting. You have to have a public hearing during a council meeting at two different times for one SB 35 project.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and then can we go to the next slide? And so your proposal is to take out the first red box and just do it all encompassing at the very end of Step 2 during the council ministerial design review of the project, yes?
Yes.
So I guess my question is, the council review of notice of intent for verifying site eligibility, are we able to do that during the ministerial design review? Is that possible? There's nothing limiting us from doing that?
Yes, Mayor, that is possible. Removal of the site eligibility during Step 1 will not preclude council's review of site eligibility during the final approval. So you would be able to review site eligibility during Step 2.
Okay, and that way you don't have to come here twice to a council meeting. Not that we don't love having you here. Okay, great, that was my only question, does--
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
More to the point, not that it's a burden on staff, but I think in the previous projects, the public was confused. They thought council was approving a project when council was only passing on a very limited question of eligibility of the site, and they didn't realize they'd have to come out six months later when council was actually considering the consistency of the project in the design review. So I believe it was also causing confusion with the public.
Sure, sure, I can see that. Any other questions from council for staff?
So just to clarify that someone will submit the application, staff will review it, and it will come back, it will come to council, and council has the ability to refuse the site eligibility and also the project at that time after staff receives the application.
So there's different words for what the developer submits. So the first thing they submit is a notice of intention to submit an application. It kind of looks like an application, but technically speaking, it's a kind of a pre-submital that kicks off the tribal consultation. So council was seeing that. Under the current ordinance as it sits today, without this item, council, the community development director brings their preliminary assessment to council under the notice of intent. Once the tribal consultation is completed, if the city reaches an enforceable agreement with the tribes having ancestral connections to Burbank, then the applicant's allowed to submit the application, like the formal project application, and that starts the clock that Ms. Rajesh went over for the 60-day eligibility determination and the 90-day design review. The 60-day period is significant, so as you'll note, staff normally brings the whole thing to you before 60 days is up, because if the council has a different opinion, they want council to be able to make any findings it can on the consistency and the design review.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that it's clear to everyone that we're not, that council still has the last final approval when it comes to us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good clarification, thank you. Questions? Yes? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you for the presentation and for this, the streamlining of the streamlining process. So I have a couple of questions. Back to the, the final ministerial design review that's proposed in this new setup. Does, does the city council have discretion during this ministerial review at all when it comes before us?
No. The process is ministerial. The title of the whole process--
Yeah.
--is streamlined ministerial review.
Right, that's what I thought I understood. Okay, so it's ministerial design review seems to me like another way to say, looking at it and going okay, without much discretion of being able to say, no, right?
Correct. The prior council wanted that decision, that heavy decision, to rest on its shoulders. But in reality, the council and staff are limited, and when it's, when it, when we say ministerial design review, what we're basically doing is doing a checklist. Does the application as submitted meet the requirements in the code and any other objective standards that the city has available to judge the project against? To be an objective standard, it has to be readily available that any member of the public or applicant can find it without having to submit an application first. So it's really set up as a checklist process to make sure they've complied with our published requirements.
Okay. So the, the purpose of having this review then is, is kind of just to highlight these particular projects for the community to see, because otherwise, I'm not quite sure what our role is as a council in these particular meetings. Now, not to say that we shouldn't have them necessarily, but I'm just kind of confused as to what the purpose of having them done is, if we don't have discretion to make a decision.
It's a challenging role indeed.
Okay, thank you. Some more questions. So how many, how many applicants do we have now that would fall under this SB 35 and 2011 estimate?
AB 2011 only will be effective July 1st.
Okay.
So we don't have any applications as of now.
Okay.
For SB 35, I think it's four?
For SB 35, we have received up to seven applications that we're currently processing.
Okay, so let's be conservative and say we have 10 applicants a year. That's, that's 10 public hearings a year. Okay, just putting that out there.
20 if we don't change the ordinance.
Right, right, okay, that's why we change it. That's still 10 public hearings, okay. When, if we were to pass this tonight, or if we were to approve this tonight, when would it take effect?
So ordinance requires introduction, which would be tonight. It requires a second reading or adoption, which would be in a week. I believe it's scheduled for next week.
Well, it's scheduled for June 6.
Oh, June 6.
June 6.
31st day after adoption.
Okay.
So July.
So July.
7th.
July 7th, correct, yeah.
When it goes into effect July 7th, would it affect SB 35 and potentially 2011 in that first week, right? July 1st is when those, they can come in. Would it affect those already submitted?
No, by law, project, once a notice of intent is submitted, it freezes the rules in place. The only, well, I'm not going to say the only, I'll let staff correct me. One of the major substantive requirements is this issue of toxics and site history. There was some confusion on some prior projects. This one has an objective standard that if a project has a history of, of use or storage of hazardous materials with the fire department, and it's actually a very quick look-up there, the agency of record that monitors these, then they're required to bring us a report. That's not currently in place. We do have the ability to undertake that research. Right now, the law requires that we only look at one particular list on eligibility. This new objective standard, which would be in effect as of July 7th, requires them to affirmatively submit a Phase 1 environmental site assessment if they have a record of known use or storage. That's the main one. The other requirements are procedural, and I don't foresee an applicant arguing with staff if staff takes out the first meeting of eligibility, because the statute really envisions that staff will conduct that anyway.
Okay. All right, that is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions of staff? Questions?
Questions?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, one line of questioning. Can you please remind us, what is the criteria that we must find to make an ordinance urgency immediately effective upon four-fifths adoption?
Oh, for instance, this ordinance.
For, for example, hypothetically, this ordinance.
Well, so you'd, you'd make findings that there is a public health safety hazard that requires some immediate action.
And can you remind us, right now, if we had a parcel that was suspected of having a history, history of hazardous materials use or storage, what is it that this ordinance would seek to correct that right now isn't provided for?
So this ordinance would affirmative require developers to do that, what they call due diligence, and provide information upfront that could help staff determine whether the site is suitable or not.
And as of right now, there's no such requirement?
There's a requirement for a particular list called the Cortese List, which is a list of known hazardous materials, but there are other lists. And so this provision gives the city greater protection in ensuring that there aren't any conditions that could be harmful to public health that don't rise to the Cortese contaminated sites list.
Thank you. No further questions.
You want to follow, you want to try to follow that one up? Go ahead.
I have no questions, I'm good.
Let's go.
All right, there being no more questions from council. Thank you, staff. I will now close the public hearing, and it is now time for council to deliberate. Well, first off, first off, I believe this was my agenda item, October 25th, I brought this back. And the reason I did so, just to start us off, we saw what was going on. We tried it the other way, we put it in an ordinance, we wanted to take a look at it, and we saw how it worked. For me personally, it seemed, especially, especially with the timing of it, there's so many requirements, 30 days and 60 days and 90 days, that to get staff to come back to us twice, especially because we don't meet every week, right? So sometimes the timing of a council meeting is not necessarily the exact timing of when somebody walks in to the planning office and says, hey, here's my notice of intent. So, so yeah, so I wanted to bring this back and talk about it. Mr. Vice Mayor, you were also there. Did you want to give some input?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to clarify the reason that the mayor and I made a disclosure at the start of this public hearing. In January of 2022, Ordinance Number 22-3964 was approved, and as you've heard tonight, it required a two-step review process. The reason I bring that up is to say at the time, I was pretty vocal in opposing that ordinance. I believe you were as well, Mr. Mayor, although it passed through the council majority, and I cited the fact that it would lead to a waste of resources and staff time and could lead to confusion. I made that disclosure because a year and a half later, I tried to keep an open mind. But I feel that I was proven right, with Circle K being just one example of public confusion and again, a waste of staff resources and time. And I would also note that if the purpose of state legislation is to quote, streamline the development review process to encourage housing production, I believe that the ordinance as existed, and the reason I voted against it, is because it actually frustrates that process and slows it down. So I think that this is an opportunity for this council to correct a mistake and to rescind the ordinance or to add it. The last thing that I would add is, based upon the line of questioning with the city attorney, I believe that there is tremendous public value in adopting this ordinance on an urgency basis because it provides greater protection to our community than currently exists under state law with regards to sites that have a history of hazardous materials use or storage. For that reason, I don't mean to cut the conversation short, but because I'm trying to keep the record really clear, I would move that we adopt the ordinance presented by staff tonight on an urgency basis requiring a four-fifths vote.
I have a motion?
I'll second.
For discussion purposes, Mr. City Attorney, as the ordinance is written and as it's presented to us, would we need to make any changes to the language to create a urgency ordinance?
Well, what I would ask you to do is actually adopt two ordinances tonight. The ordinance as an urgency ordinance, making findings that the, the common presence of storage and use of hazardous materials on sites throughout Burbank with its aerospace and industrial history presents a threat to public health and safety, in particular for the development of housing and affordable housing for peoples of, people of low and moderate income. And that the ordinance be adopted to increase the due diligence on these sites that may be reused under the streamlined process SB 35, and that without the urgency ordinance, future inhabitants of sites could be at risk without this due diligence. So those findings would be added to the ordinance in the, in the findings, you know, somewhere in the first two pages. So you would adopt an urgency ordinance, that would only pass if you had four-fifths vote. That would be effective immediately, and then you would move to, my recommendation would be-
Before you, before you continue, we are in the middle of a discussion of a single motion. The maker of the motion would like-
That was my intent. Very well said.
Great. We'll add that amended. And the second? Okay, so that is the current motion. Let's vote on that.
Can, can we have a discussion?
Yeah, 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 let's do a discussion, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I, I think we need to all be-
Well, I don't want to go to a vote. I was saying, let's discuss that current motion and, and only continue with that one.
And I, obviously, the Vice Mayor, Councilmember Perez, Mayor, you all have more insight on what this is all about than we do, or me personally. I can't speak for Councilmember Takahashi. What I'm hearing the city attorney say is it has to be an urgency ordinance because there's issues with health and well-being, and, and I don't know that staff has identified anything tonight to tell us that they must pass this as an urgency ordinance because there's actually health issues or well-being for our city or some of the sites that we're talking about. I, I guess, maybe all three of you know something that I personally don't know. So unless you want to share that information, and I didn't hear from staff or the city attorney saying we must pass this as an urgency ordinance, I need to first, before we do a motion, to have an explanation to why we're doing what we're doing tonight.
No, that's fair. That's totally fair. Yeah, I wasn't going to go to a vote just yet. I just wanted to hold the city attorney before he-
Obviously, we went from discussion to, we didn't even deliberate, to a motion, a second, and the mayor is agreeing to it. So I think it's only fair for the public, for the council members, to understand the reason behind the Vice Mayor's motion.
Totally fair, totally fair. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, there isn't anything that I know that you haven't heard come out of the city attorney's mouth right here tonight, but it did go very quick. So, Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to ask it in the form of a question so that we can create a really clear record. Is staff aware of any sites located within the city of Burbank that are perhaps home to sites that were priorly, previously used to store or to maintain hazardous materials, perhaps connected with the aerospace industry, that could have an adverse impact on health and well-being? Should it be developed for housing? Do we have any knowledge of potential development sites?
There are, there are many such sites. One site that is in the process, the Sky Cranes are still across the street at the 777 Front Street site. That site was a former briefcase manufacturing site that had contamination, groundwater contamination, had been remediated, but there was soil gas, soil vapor rebound. And when the environmental was done, it turned out they needed to remediate that site again. That's a, that's an example of a site that didn't have a recorded restriction prohibiting the development of housing. Nevertheless, there was still due diligence needed and additional remediation needed on that particular site. There are some sites, one site in particular, an SB 35 site, that has gone through, I believe they have a tribal enforceable agreement, and they had a history of prior usage. I believe some residents were confused between some of the sites and, and came out concerned that there was a hazardous site. It had a prior record of a violation. It turned out it, it did not relate to the soil. But that came up later, and there was some public confusion. The public is, there's really not a place for the public to get involved in the vetting of SB 35 projects. That's kind of the point. It's called streamlined ministerial review. Because if the general plan permits residential development or the zoning, in our case, it's the general plan that's more permissive than the zoning presently, it creates a very fast process, and there were questions raised that couldn't adequately be answered. The provision in this ordinance seeks to require that information upfront so that it's a little bit more transparent to staff and that the questions can be asked, and if there's mitigation that's required, that it be included. The site that SB 35, they, I'm sorry, the list that SB 35 requires us to look at, at Enviro Store, under the Department of Toxic Substances Control, it relates to Cortezi list sites, but they also generally refer to sites that have land use restrictions. And in the context of hazardous materials, land use restrictions means that after cleanup, or in lieu of cleanup, one of our regulatory agencies, the Department of Toxic Substances Control, or the Regional Water Quality Control Board, has required the owner to record a covenant or deed restriction that there shall not be residential or childcare facilities on that site due to human health, ingestion pathways, time of residency. And so there's this kind of a complicated list process that you look through. But the fire department also has, has records that can readily be searched to help us identify whether there was any record requiring oversight.
Thank you. And, Mr. City Attorney, I only have one more question, and then I think we should go to discussion so everyone's comfortable with it. I believe that the question and the answer you just posed relate to the potential risk to the public and the, 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 the solution that is set forth in this ordinance. So I'd now like to ask a question as it relates to the urgency and why would we do it on an immediately effective basis as opposed to 31 days? So with that context, here's the question. If hypothetically, we were to introduce the ordinance tonight, and then it were adopted, I'm sorry, when did you say the next hearing would be? July, and then 31 days after that date?
So June 6th is the, is the prospective adoption date, July 7th would be the prospective effective date.
So if somebody were to say, the end of this month after tonight, if we didn't adopt it immediately as an urgency ordinance, if they were to put in an application for SB 35, would law as it exists today, which does not require those heightened standards as contemplated by this ordinance, would that apply? Meaning they don't have to go beyond the Cortezi list?
That's correct. It, it would not apply, and it would be a challenge to do that due diligence on the city's 60-day clock after the application is submitted. It, it would be challenging to determine whether, there may be very feasible ways to mitigate the presence of a hazardous material, but the clock may run out on staff.
Yeah, and the only thing I would add to the discussion would be the July 7th, I know we're talking a lot about SB 35, but the July 7th date is almost a week after AB 2011 becomes law, and so there's no reason to think that there isn't a handful of projects out there that are just waiting for the July 1st date. And if any applications come in on the 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, they would also fall under the current ordinance, not the expanded list.
That's correct.
Okay, yes. And now, Councilmember Mullins, yes, please.
Thank you. In that case, what I'd like to ask staff and the city attorney, if staff felt that this should be adopted as an urgency ordinance, why was in the recommendation presented to us as such that in order for us to stop future projects from coming in, that perhaps can be affecting health or all the urgency ordinance, whatever applies under it, why was in that recommendation made to council then?
I would just say a failure to imagine. Normally, we do urgency ordinances, and we have done four or six in the last year and a half. And they're normally driven by a statutory deadline like July 1st for, for AB 2011. This one came in due course, and, and it's rare that we do them, but I appreciate the findings that the council members can make. We simply did not suggest it.
Well, and I'm not beating up on staff, I'm just trying to understand why, in that situation, we're not looking at it like the previous urgency ordinances that we adopted. And it was, obviously, we adopted just last month, or I know there's been one or two that we at least adopted. So my point is, why are we do, why didn't we do it now? If it's an oversight, it's an oversight. But I think it's unfair that we're sitting here at council, and I have the Vice Mayor, Mayor, and Council, I just promoted you, Councilmember Perez. Sorry, I demoted you, so-
I will say, I'll say this, I didn't think of it until he asked this question.
And I'd like to clarify for Councilmember Mullins, you know, obviously, I can't speak for my colleagues, I can speak for myself. You know, I know SB 35 pretty well, so that was not much to thank for there, and I appreciate the Vice Mayor's leadership on this because we have heard this in this very room from commentators who have come here. We've had one comment on the health and safety of a site under SB 35 review. I think that is a public concern that's been brought to our attention. I've also received emails on this subject matter, so I can speak for myself on why I'm very comfortable supporting that. And I can see why staff might have not brought it up that way, because it is a creative decision, I would say. But one, I appreciate considering the rest of the facts, we've had months to see and think about.
Yeah, I, I looked at the same material you did. I didn't see it till you asked that question. And then I, because I remember us talking about the Cortezi list and expanding the Cortezi list, I remember that discussion. I didn't put it together that an urgency ordinance would cover anything from now until, so I mean, you know, it happens in the room.
And I, and I appreciate us concern about the public and the health of our public, but I think the most appropriate thing would have been done is to have a discussion and bring that to our attention as a form of question. So I appreciate instead of having an immediate motion without having to discuss the reasons behind the motion, is to make it clear first to why would we want to pass it as an urgency ordinance and understand that this was an oversight, not to bring as an urgency ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To the extent that there's been an insinuation, that there's been an improper communication under the Brown Act, I will unequivocally deny that. I can tell you truthfully that I did not discuss this matter with any member of council. Mr. City Attorney, I often turn to you as sort of my, my counsel, my sage, we discuss many items. Did I address this item to you before tonight's meeting?
You completely caught me off guard, yes.
So what I will, what, what I will say, Councilmember Mullins, to the extent that it's not an insinuation of misconduct, sometimes to the community, I can think very quickly. And so, to the extent that maybe the city attorney and I are on the same wavelength, or at least responding very quickly, I appreciate you having us slow it down so we can walk the community through that. All of that aside, I still mean-
That's what you get when you vote for lawyers into office. That's what happens.
What I will say though, thank you, Mr. Mayor, is that I still fundamentally, all of this aside, I think it's a fundamentally good thing for our community to act quickly because I don't want to be here sitting explaining to the public that we could have put a more stringent standard in place immediately, and we didn't do that because, I don't know. So, so I, I still think it's the right vote to make.
Councilor Takahashi?
Thank you. Yes, thank you for this discussion. And thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for bringing up the, the, the issue of hazardous waste potential on sites. Because it wasn't in the presentation, I didn't catch it in the readings either. I'm glad now that I've had a few minutes to think about it, because I mean, it is important and it's kind of complicated how it works. And to the point about making a motion, I do also agree with Councilmember Mullins that it's important to have a discussion first, even if you know that we're all going to say yes, and even if it's a pretty obvious vote. I think it's important. We haven't even had the discussion about the item that was presented to us of whether we're going to even approve this, let alone the hazardous or the urgency. So I, I'd like just to, again, slow it down and kind of back up a little bit with the, with the, with the discussion. So I, I wanted to ask, in regards to the hazardous review, and, and to your point, if we didn't do an urgency ordinance, if we did do the regular process and this hazardous review is not part, is it possible that a residential building could be built on a site that is actually physically dangerous for folks? That we are running the risk of doing that?
There's a, there's a possibility because the Cortezi list is so limited. There's only two sites in Burbank, last time I looked, two or three sites on the Cortezi list, and there were only one or two sites on the institutional controls or land use restriction. There are more sites that have been impacted by hazardous materials and may require some kind of remediation. They may be relatively minor. There are those that would say, you know, well, they'll, if they encounter a substance or condition, they'll, you know, just have to remediate it, but oftentimes, it's the city that precipitates that due diligence. So this is an objective standard because our fire department actually has records going back decades. I'm not going to guess how far, but more than 50 years because they are the first responders and they have records, and those records are oftentimes more detailed or as detailed as the state's records. They're readily available, and any property owner can call and determine that. And so if they're on the list, this puts the onus on them to do that due diligence so staff isn't left kind of scrambling because the statute only requires staff to look at one list. And the same website, literally, I couldn't tell you how many different lists there are. They're for different reasons. Leaky underground storage tanks, land use restrictions, Cortezi hazardous waste lists. And so it, it, it's, it's a lot of work, as, as you probably have heard numerous times about SB 35. We're taking a process that even efficiently can take 18 months to two years or more to process a significant project, and it gets compressed into, we can do a little bit of pre-work during the consultation, and then all of the departments are really aching with the streamlining process to bring something polished to council in 60 days, less than 60 days, is such a challenge. So this actually really facilitates the process and reduces the risk that there's some known condition or possible known condition that didn't make it onto a list that could be hazardous to future occupants.
Okay, that, that's very helpful. Thank you so much. And to that point, I think that this, this update is absolutely valuable and essential to our community for the safety of the folks' current and future residents. And to the point too of how squished the timeline is, I just want to point out again that even though I know that we, we are, we are reducing the number of, of public hearings to, from two to one, even one though, is, is a lot, you know, we have to time it to the right council meeting, and we pretty much will just say yes to it anyway. And I, and I want to just also, I want to avoid giving the community false hope that something can be stopped when it can't. So if we do decide to go with this tonight, I would like to make a request from, to just kind of consider that when we, we put in the materials, it's very, very clear that we're not, we had, don't have discretion. It's more of like a public announcement that this is happening versus, versus a discretion. Because I don't want to have a public hearing, and then we have 30 people coming up saying they don't want the project, and we go, sorry, we still have to do it anyway. Unless that's what we want, unless that's the point of having the hearing. So I just want to put it out there that, to consider that when we're thinking about the updates, and maybe right now's not the time to think about that particular issue, but just want to put it out there that that could be-
That language could definitely be put into when the presentation, when we bring those public hearings forward.
Okay.
I have a question. Do you mean like a disclaimer?
Kind of, right?
Is that something we can do?
Yeah.
So I believe the staff reports that came before you on each of the prior projects very clearly spoke to the very limited nature of council's review.
Okay.
And I, and I, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, and I, I do agree with Councilmember Takahashi because we continue getting emails over specific projects that do exist that qualify under SB 35. However, the perception is that council still can stop those projects. And even though I know staff has done a great job in answering all these questions, it's still in the public side that, that council actually has the authority to stop the SB 35 projects. So I do agree, we need to make it more clear in the reports, even, even more clear to, when it's presented to council and to the public, that this is a ministerial process, that we don't have control over that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, before we go to a vote on the urgency ordinance that was seconded, I want the city attorney to finish- want the city attorney to finish your thought. You, we are voting on an urgency ordinance now, but you want us immediately afterwards to vote on the ordinance as written. Now, talk to me about the findings of an urgency ordinance, those can be challenged, is that correct?
Yes, I mean, it's, it's rare. A lot of the, many of the urgency ordinances adopted by the council are interim or temporary and they go away. So they're not often challenged. But if you adopt an urgency ordinance, the nature of the findings could be challenged, the nature of the urgency, the, the question of whether the SB 35 statute doesn't cover the issue anyway. So it's best to also adopt an ordinance in the normal fashion because before a party could even get a court hearing date to challenge an urgency ordinance, the normal ordinance would have already taken effect.
July 7th will have passed, coming on, okay.
Speaking of discussion about the urgency ordinance, I'm sorry, okay. I don't see a downside at this point, now that we've discussed it thoroughly, thank you very much, so we can understand it. I don't see a downside to adding an urgency ordinance to speed up the process. It seems it makes sense to me, and that's one of the reasons why I asked the question of whether the ones that are being applied for before July 7th would be in this or not. And I like the idea of an urgency ordinance to then cover that space basically between now or I guess whenever the urgency, it would be next meeting, right? Next meeting and the July 7th meeting so that everything's covered from then immediately and there's no like space for people to get, it won't be confusing, it'll be a little bit easier to understand and it'll be implemented pretty, pretty quickly. So I like that idea, thank you for bringing it forward.
Councilor Mullins?
The only other question I have to the city attorney, since this was not posted as an urgency ordinance and the public, I'm just making an assumption, the public probably didn't pay attention to this is going to be adopted today, whether they put in application or not, or with, they may be assuming there's 30 days to do it. Are we opening ourselves to liability when the public did not know that this is going to be adopted?
There's a risk, but actually a notice public hearing is not required for an urgency ordinance. Before an urgency ordinance can, can extend for a long period of time. If it was an interim ordinance, a hearing's required to extend it. But in any event, it was properly agendized for this subject matter and for an ordinance on this topic and provided a normal ordinance is adopted, this, or introduced this evening and adopted at your June 6th, then the normal ordinance would nevertheless take effect and be binding.
That's correct, but if we're, if the title, again, the subject of our staff report and the, and the public hearing is this introduction of an ordinance and it's understood with the introduction, you're going to come back again for the adoption and then it takes effect 31 days. If someone, if this would, would have been read, if it was urgency, it would say adoption of an urgency ordinance versus the subject saying introduction. So with that put us in liability because it was not publicly noticed correct that we're adopting an urgency ordinance tonight.
That's possible, yes.
Yeah, so I, again, I understand the vice mayor and the urgency and I applaud you for coming up with this great idea. My concern is that we posted this legally in the newspaper as an introduction of an ordinance. If we adopt an urgency ordinance, somebody can challenge us and you're the attorney in the room, not me, but somebody could challenge us that this was not as an urgency ordinance, this is only to introduce the ordinance. I don't know if there's a developer out there that may come back, there may not be somebody. I just want to bring it up to everybody's attention.
I think that begs, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I was going to say, I think, I think, I think the safety net is adopting a second ordinance to do in the regular process as well. So we do one and if it goes through and it doesn't get, we do the urgency, if it goes through, it doesn't get challenged, we're good. But we also, after this vote, take a second vote to do it the regular process and that way we've got both moving through and we're covered. That's, that's my thought.
Well, I think where I was going with Mr. Mayor is I think that the comments expressed from my colleague could actually be posed as a question. So, Mr. City Attorney, if there were a challenge to an urgency ordinance, what would be the remedy that would be sought by the party? And if we did it as you're suggesting, adopting both ordinances, would there be an argument that even if there were validity to the claim, which I'm not convinced that there would be, that it would be mooted? Can you, can you just explain that concept to all of us?
Okay, there's a lot to unpack there. But short answer, yes, they could file, if they choose a lawsuit rather than submitting their application because they want to fight over the requirements, it could be that ultimately that lawsuit is mooted because the regularly adept, adopted ordinance is in effect. Alternatively, if they submitted an NOI tomorrow, a notice of intent to adopt a project, and then challenge the urgency ordinance, when they prevail, if they were to prevail, then the remedy would be that the new requirement wouldn't apply to their project. Though I would submit to the council that what is actually being required is some due diligence. It doesn't actually, the meat of this ordinance is to streamline the streamlined process, as council member Takahashi put it. But the, the due diligence part is something that we can try to address in the normal course. So if a project came in, in, in the intervening period, we could, you know, we could try to do extra due diligence on those sites until the normal ordinance became effective. We can also settle a challenge that's filed, but council member Mullins raises a good point. But it's a point that ultimately expires once the normal ordinance becomes effective.
Oh, Councilor Takahashi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you for bringing that, Councilmember Mullins. And I would like to just share my concern that this is the second time now that we have added something to our agenda that was not agendized. And I understand the reasonings for both, but I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the concept that it's okay to do it tonight because even if we get sued, the suit wouldn't go through. And that's what I'm hearing, maybe I'm not right about that, but that's what I'm hearing. And I would really like to do it the correct and right way, even if that mean, even if it wouldn't really result in anything if we did it the way tonight. And so I'm going to ask if we, what is the correct way to do this? If we did not have to worry, I mean, we're not thinking about suits, we're not thinking about whether or not somebody can contest it, but just what is the correct way to introduce an urgency ordinance?
Well, an urgency ordinance, if there were an ordinance you could have adopted to address an issue the night you first hear of the issue, some type of a, of a curfew or something in the middle of an event that just happened today, you could add that, making the findings that we previously discussed, if there was an immediate need to take action, and you could adopt an urgency ordinance that night to address that urgency issue. I think it's an open question as to whether a properly agendized, noticed public hearing on ordinance, whether also adopting an urgency measure is, is not valid. I'd say it's a, it's an open question. I don't think it's beyond challenge, but I don't know that it's, it's an invalid act.
Okay. All right, so I have a proposal. So just to, just to make sure we dot all our i's and cross all our t's, how about we put this on the next agenda as an urgency ordinance that we'll quickly approve as an item? And then the next meeting after that, we put it on the consent and then that's just a week, a week pushback.
Let me go to our city manager. Our schedule next week, we're still doing budget, right?
No, but we do have other items. We weren't planning to bring this back until the 6th.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can just speak to it, I, it, I'm looking at the hour and I'm looking at the audience. I will just say that to the extent, I brought up what I thought was in the public's best interest, was an innovative solution, to the extent that that's been coupled with insinuations of misconduct, I, I, I don't appreciate that. With all of that said, it requires a four-fifths vote and I'm hearing that at least two of my colleagues don't feel comfortable with that. So I would simply remove my motion and just make a new motion to approve the, the, or to introduce the ordinance as is, though I will maintain that based upon my legal, my legal training and experience and my knowledge of this file, I believe that it is a valid and justifiable action. But my word alone is not enough. I need at least three colleagues to join me and I don't want to waste the public's time. So we don't have the votes, so, Mr. Mayor, I will withdraw my prior motion and make a motion to introduce the ordinance.
All right, the motion is made, so the first motion is now withdrawn, we are now going, we do need a second for the regular ordinance?
I'll second. You don't have to, I didn't know if you want to, I didn't know if you want to second it or not.
I seconded the original motion because I thought it was a very innovative and solution to what was being done. Yeah, I got excited too, I thought it was very innovative, given the conversations that we'd had. I also don't appreciate the insinuation of a, through a conversation, that did not happen. I want to make very clear on the record that there was no violation and that I was basing, well, I'm finishing, that I was basing it on the public comment we've heard, on emails I've received and on other communication that I've seen, even on social media, about hazardous materials. So I just want to make that extremely crystal clear.
Thank you for clarifying and I, I can tell you that I was not trying to imply that there was any misconduct that was on, from the vice mayor or council member Perez. What I did say is that it seemed that there was immediate motion and second motion, we didn't have a chance to even discuss it, to get into the purpose behind that. And the reason there's a lot of chatting on, on social media is regarding the Empire project that the council did approve while back, prior to us being here. And this is still a concern out there. So I am very aware of what the public perception and I'm aware of that project and that really has nothing to do with our discussion tonight because this discussion deals strictly with ministerial process. And I'm very comfortable to approve the ministerial process as it's recommended by staff. I, maybe it's the, the public service in so many years when you post something to the public and you let them know that it's only an introduction. It's, we cannot take that back and introduce an urgency ordinance when the public is not aware of it. That is my concern. And my concern too is we need to explain why we're doing what we did. But given the time and given the discussion, if I, I want to clarify, that was not an insinuation at all, there was missed any
Apology accepted.
Thank you. If it makes you, I do apologize if this is how it was taken.
I appreciate the clarification, that is exactly how it was taken. And also I just want to further records that I wasn't just talking about the SB 30, with the project fries, which would be an SB 35 project, so exactly what we're talking about, but also other projects that the city attorney mentioned.
Okay, yes.
I just want to clarify and make sure that I had no indication at all that there was any, I didn't even think about that till you mentioned it. And for me, I'm just a process person and I'll make sure the process is absolutely crystal clear, so that was my main concern.
That's fine, let's take a vote on this as, as recommended by staff, moved by council member Schultz, seconded by council member Mullins, please call the roll.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
And Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we move on, real quick, councilor Takahashi, a couple, I can't remember if it was last week or the week before, you had brought up an idea that I said I'm very rarely inspired by stuff that happens at council. I was very excited when I heard this because I had, I had had a discussion with our city attorney about the Cortezi list and about the expansion of it to the other lists. And so for me personally, I, I felt it was, it met the findings and I don't think our city attorney would take us down that path. So I'll ask one more time, if I introduce a motion for an urgency ordinance, would you find it possible that you could believe that this could be covered and then were bridged over with the regular ordinance? If I do that right now? Yeah, sure.
Is it legal and are we allowed to do it?
Can we hear the discussion?
Sure.
I assume you, you were talking to council member Takahashi.
Yeah, is it legal and are we allowed to do it?
That's a question to have, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, this is the first time we've ever had an urgency ordinance spring forth from the deliberations. Staff could bring back an urgency ordinance in a week and properly agendize it to satisfy the concerns of part of the votes that are needed to pass an urgency ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, if the city attorney says it is legal and we're allowed to do it, I'll be totally 100%
Tonight, or you want to wait?
It's supportive, but tonight, sure, if he says it's legal.
I'll move.
But he didn't say it.
Oh.
He didn't say it.
I don't believe he said tonight.
Mr. Mayor, point, point of order, I believe we had a vote to introduce the motion, the ordinance, it has been done, I think that we are now well beyond the agenda item.
All right, thank you, that's fine, moving on. No good deed, I tell you. Thank you, everybody, for bearing with.
Sorry about that. We have two reports to council this evening. Staff's presentation will proceed with an in-person public comment only with the yellow card. First report, appointment to fill one scheduled vacancy on the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Airport Authority. Madam City Clerk, please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony and members of the city council, Kimberly Clark, City Clerk. Tonight I will be presenting item number two, appointment to fill one scheduled vacancy on the Burbank Glendale Pasadena Airport Authority for a four-year term ending May 31st, 2027. On April 3rd, 2023, the city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for the scheduled vacancy of Commissioner Paul Dyson, whose term is set to expire on May 31st, 2023. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of scheduled vacancy was advertised through the following channels: the city's website, city council meeting announcements, all social media platforms overseen by the city clerk's office, press releases sent to the LA Times, Burbank Leader and my Burbank.com, notices posted on the city hall bulletin board and through community groups and organizations. The deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office for this vacancy was May 3rd, 2023 at 5:00 PM. The city clerk's office received nine applications and I will list them in the order they were received. Shinsuke Yamato, Alfonso John G. Alejandro Jr., Paul Dyson, incumbent, Carrie Walco, Nelson Petrosian, Terry Norton, Jess Talamontes, Laura Iono, and Martin Adams, who late today withdrew his application. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Counsel, are you okay moving straight to a vote? Is that, oh, I'm sorry, oh, that's right. Hello. All right, I got two yellow public comment cards. Up first, Paul Dyson, followed by David Donahue. Hold on one second. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Vice Mayor and council members, Paul Dyson, Airport Commissioner. Once again, offering my services to my favorite city and to my favorite airport. I've just completed a little over a year as Airport Commissioner and I believe I've worked diligently and I hope productively. I haven't missed a meeting and I believe I've made useful contributions to the organization. You know my qualifications, you have my resume and application. In brief, I've been a manager with small, medium and Fortune 500 companies in the private sector as well as having had my own business. I have years of experience with leases, contracts and other legal documentation and I'm the only one of the Burbank Commissioners with private sector business experience. I'd like to talk very briefly about some of my goals should you choose to reappoint me. A key objective of the replacement terminal is to have a building that is as energy efficient as possible. But what I would like to see above that is to use the considerable square footage of the roof area of both the terminal and the parking garage to be fitted with solar panels and battery storage so that we can generate a large percentage of our own energy requirements. Keep in mind that while the new building may use less electricity than the existing one, the airport will be using battery powered vehicles and the parking garage will have an ever increasing number of electric vehicle hookups as the state mandate for EV vehicles takes effect. We should design this in at an early stage, it's a lot more expensive to retrofit it later. One of my first actions as Commissioner was to ask the staff for an update on these new EV TOLs, electric vertical takeoff and landing aircraft. While there are still regulatory hurdles to overcome, the technology is advancing very quickly and soon after the report was circulated, there is an announcement that United is purchasing 500 of these craft in the hope to start service in 2026. We have to keep up with technology, we have to make sure that the new terminal is designed for future generations, not just as a replacement for today. I'm a fanatic about I'm a fanatic about facilities for the disabled. And together with that, I'm equally fanatical about signage and wayfinding. And it's not just about wheelchairs. Most of us now and in the future will suffer from eyesight, hearing, or mobility impairments. Signs, signs, and more signs. We need and decipherable public announcements. These are key elements. I've been meeting with the Burbank Council on disabilities to better inform myself of their needs and to learn about some of the new technologies that are available, for example, to help the blind with vial signage. So you know my commitment to transit. You know, in general, my philosophies. All I can ask you is that you weigh my knowledge, experience, and my enthusiasm for this position when you make your deliberations. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dyson. David Donahue, followed by Jess Talamontes.
Honorable Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz, councilmembers, and talented staff. My name is David Donahue, and I'm resident and business owner, and thank you very much for the second opportunity. Unexpected, but I was happy to read the applications for the Airport Authority, and I want to endorse our former mayor and city council member, Jess Talamontes. I think he brings a lot of leadership and experience to a role that is critical to have such sort of knowledge and insight. So I hope that the city council does choose to appoint Jess Talamontes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Jess Talamontes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, staff. It's nice to be back. I think we'll find out in a few minutes. Anyway, why am I here? I'm here to ask for your vote for the appointment to Airport Authority. It's pretty simple. I applied. You saw my resume. You've seen me in action. You've seen me up here for 13 years. If you've been involved with the community, I've been here on that side of the dais for 13-plus years. You know, I've been a 60-year resident. My interest in the airport started when I was a student at Luther Burbank Junior High School. It wasn't middle school then. It was late '60s. That's before a lot of you were born. So that's when the teacher would have to stop her class to let the airplanes go over. It was that loud. We were right over the takeoff pattern. So, you know, once again, I just want to, you saw my resume. I want to stay engaged. I believe I bring a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge. I can hit the ground running. I don't have to, you know, take weeks to get uploaded. I've been watching the Airport Commission meetings. I've taken part in trips to Washington, D.C. to promote our permanent curfew, nighttime curfew. And I hope that still happens, and I want to be involved in that. You know, I want to continue the good progress that has been done to this point, but I also want to bring some diversity to our commission. For a long time, Burbank Commissioners haven't been very diverse. As you think back about who's represented us, when you look at Glendale, when you look at Pasadena, they're completely diverse. But nonetheless, I want you to appoint me, not because of my diversity, because of my qualifications and the leadership that I bring to this discussion. And I think we have to build this terminal for the next 100 years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Those are all the cards that I have. We can go to a vote? Yeah? Okay.
Show of hands, vote. I'll read the names.
Yeah, sure. Let's do it.
Shinsuke Yamato, Alfonso John G. Alejandro Jr., Paul Dyson, Carrie Walco, Nelson Petrosian, Terry Norton, Jess Talamontes, Laura Iono, and Jess is appointed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'd like to move if my colleague would join me in making this a unanimous appointment by the council.
Second.
All right. Can we move that to a 5-0? Madam City Clerk? Thank you. I just have one follow-up question. Mr. City Attorney, there is, I've been told, a possible conflict with our LoSan board, L-O-S-S-A-N. They meet at, I believe, the same time as the Airport Commission. Can we look into what happens if our current LoSan member board is appointed to the, what, the things that happen? I'm just asking. You don't have to answer now. I'm just saying if you could bring that back as a report after the fact.
I'll discuss it with the city manager. We don't have anything to do with LoSan, so.
Oh, I mean, don't. Okay.
There's no conflict with serving on different, on these different bodies. I know that because these bodies are not set forth in municipal code.
Okay.
But as to schedule.
Okay, I'll follow up later then.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
I'll just be brief in saying congratulations to Mayor Talamontes on the appointment. And to Mr. Dyson, thank you, sir, for your service.
Thank you.
I echo that. This was really tough. A lot of great applications, lots of qualified individuals. And I do thank Mr. Dyson for your service. Congratulations, former Mayor Talamontes. And thank you to everyone who applied because I know this is not an easy process to go through. And it's not easy for council to choose either.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, I just want to, you know, congratulate our former mayor and thank both our former mayor and Commissioner Dyson for being here today and sharing with us. It was a tough decision between both of you because you bring very different and wonderful qualifications. And frankly, we would be lucky to have either of you serve on this board. So thank you for your interest and thank you for continuing to serve the community.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues likewise. It was a tough decision. There are a lot of great applicants on this list, a lot of qualifications. And I encourage the folks who did not get chosen to please continue your interest in the airport. Watch the Airport Authority meetings, call in with your opinions, be engaged, be involved because you clearly care. And it's an important project in our community. Also, there are several other boards and commissions that are being opened, that are opening up, that are due by May 30th, so please consider applying for those as well. Thank you.
Great. Excellent. Next is our final report of the evening. The, yeah, a little report we got. A continuation of the review of our proposed fiscal year budget 2022-2023. Mrs. Jennifer Becker, Financial Services Director.
Hello. Good evening. Jennifer Becker with the Financial Services Department. I'm just going to briefly introduce what's going to happen this evening. Last week, as you remember, we went through our entire general fund and all of our Burbank Water and Power Funds. So tonight, our plan is to finish our remaining two enterprise funds, which are operated by Public Works, the sewer and refuse funds. After that, I'll get up and we'll go through our remaining non-general funds, including internal service funds and special revenue funds. Following that, I'll introduce Mr. Berkman to go through our capital improvement program for the coming fiscal year. And then we'll finish off with a review of our discussion papers that you, the rest of which you received last evening. So with that, I will kick it off and introduce Mr. Stephen Walker from the Public Works Department to speak to us about the sewer fund.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Good evening, Mayor Anthony and councilmembers. I'm Steve Walker, Assistant Public Works Director, Wastewater Systems. I will be presenting the fiscal year 2324 budget for the Water Reclamation and Sewer Enterprise Fund, also known as Fund 494. We'll begin with a fund overview comparing the approved budget for fiscal year 2223 on the left with the proposed budget for fiscal year 2324 on the right. As you can see, the total budget for fiscal year 2324 is approximately 22.1 million, which represents a decrease from the prior year of about 981,000. This is mainly due to a new vehicle purchase and more capital improvement projects being funded last year. The total budget includes the following three categories. First, capital funding, shown in red, is about 2.8 million. Second, materials, supplies, and services, shown in orange, are about 17 million. And third, salaries and benefits, shown in green, are about 2.2 million. The total sewer fund revenues for fiscal year 2324 are estimated at approximately 20.9 million, which represents an increase from fiscal year 2223 of about 1.7 million. The total expenses for fiscal year 2324 are estimated at approximately 19.2 million, which represents a decrease of about 1.6 million from the prior year. Year-to-date expenses for fiscal year 2223 as of April 19, 2023 are approximately 20.9 million. With the highlighted changes to revenue and expenses, the sewer fund is projected to have a positive change in net position of 1.68 million for fiscal year 2324. The cash reserves for the sewer fund continue to be healthy. The beginning cash balance for fiscal year 2324 is estimated to be about 25.9 million. With the positive change in net position that we discussed, and after depreciation and obligations, it is estimated that the fund will have an ending cash balance of 26.8 million. The required reserves for financial policies, which include 60 days working capital and funds for future capital construction, are approximately 8.9 million. In addition, the reserves for the Hyperion Sewer remain at approximately 10.3 million. Burbank continues to make payments to the City of L.A., which we will discuss in more detail later in the presentation. In summary, the estimated unrestricted cash balance for fiscal year 2324 is 7.6 million. We are proposing a 4% increase in sewer rates for fiscal year 2324 and a 4% increase for fiscal year 2425. Previously, in fiscal year 2223, there was a 2% increase. And prior to that, there were no sewer increases in fiscal year 2021 or in 2122 during the pandemic. The rate increases are needed to provide funding for projected increases in cost for capital charges from the City of L.A., contractual charges, excuse me, from the City of L.A. for the conveyance, treatment, and disposal of wastewater, capital improvement projects, and inflationary impacts to labor, chemical, and electrical costs to operate the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant and the Sewer Collection System. In addition, it will help ensure that we maintain the proper fund reserve balances. With the recommended increase, the monthly flat rate for sewer services for single-family residential properties will be $27.22 in fiscal year 2324 and $28.31 in fiscal year 2425, each of which represents an increase of about $1 per month over the prior year. This chart provides a comparison of Burbank's sewer rates versus inflation over five years. For reference, the inflation metric used is the Consumer Price Index for All Urban Consumers, or CPIU, which represents the price of goods and services purchased by urban consumers. It can be seen in the chart that for the prior two fiscal years, 2021 and 2122, for the current fiscal year, 2223, and projected out for two future fiscal years, 2324 and 2425, that Burbank sewer rates are expected to remain lower than inflation. Our goal is to keep the rates at the level required to ensure that we have a financially stable enterprise fund, allowing us to provide safe and reliable wastewater services. This chart provides a comparison of sewer rates for single-family residential properties in fiscal year 2324 between Burbank and other cities in Southern California that have generally similar wastewater systems. As you can see, Burbank's proposed sewer rate of $27.22 for fiscal year 2324 continues to be lower than most other cities in the region and significantly lower than the larger cities of San Diego and Los Angeles. We've been able to operate the sewer system efficiently to keep rates low for Burbank's residents and businesses. In addition, we have made capital improvements to the collection system, the Beechwood Pump Station, and the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant to improve the system reliability while keeping rates very competitive with other cities. Sewer service charges cover the necessary cost for the operation and maintenance of a variety of wastewater facilities, including the sewer collection system, two sewer pump stations, and the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant, which is operated under contract by Veolia, formerly known as SUEZ. There are numerous regulatory compliance requirements that have to be met under two NPDS permits, one for the treatment plant process discharges, and the other for the production of recycled water. In calendar year 2022, the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant generated approximately 1 billion gallons of recycled water, which was distributed by Burbank Water and Power customers for use in industrial applications, at construction sites, and for landscape irrigation at city parks, the DeBel Golf Course, and in roadway medians. In addition, in fiscal year 2324, Public Works will continue working with the Regional Water Quality Control Board to renew the city's NPDS permit for treatment process, for the treatment process at the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant. The city's collection systems crew performs hydrojack cleaning and root cutting on the 230 miles of city sewer pipelines and 3,800 sewer manholes. I want to highlight that Burbank had only two sanitary sewer overflows, or SSOs, in 2022, and no SSOs so far in 2023, thanks to the diligent efforts of our sewer crew. These are excellent statistics for the size of Burbank. The photo on the left shows the combo truck, which has jet flush and vacuum capabilities and is used for sewer maintenance. It is noted that the vehicle is at the end of its useful life, and the replacement truck was ordered this year and is expected to be delivered and put into service in fiscal year 2324. The sewer crew also performs CCTV video inspections on numerous city sewer pipelines to evaluate the condition so repairs can be prioritized and completed when necessary. The photo on the right shows a CCTV van used for this work. Next, I'll highlight two CIP projects. First, the Providencia Phase 2 Sewer Improvement Project joins the completed Phase 1 project near the new IKEA and will provide pipe capacity upgrades. The alignment continues under the I-5 freeway and MTA rightway, and then along Providencia Avenue and Barney Street. The project is currently in construction and is scheduled to be completed in July of 2023. The construction cost is approximately $2.8 million. The second CIP is the Chandler Sewer Improvements Phase 1 project, which is located between California Street and Lake Street. It will also provide pipe capacity upgrades. The scope of work includes approximately 9,000 lineal feet of sewer line upsizing to approximately 18- to 24-inch diameter pipes. The sewer will reduce the amount of sewage entering Los Angeles's Hyperion Sewer Collection System and will convey flows to the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant for treatment. The estimated cost for engineering design is approximately $500,000. It was funded in fiscal year 2223, and the design is scheduled to be completed in fiscal year 2324. The estimated construction cost is approximately $5.7 million, bringing the total project cost to about $6.2 million. Our Public Works team has had numerous negotiation meetings with the City of L.A. staff between 2019 and late 2022 to continue resolving the ongoing sewer flow and billing dispute covering the last 14 years. I am pleased to report that to date, Burbank has made payments to L.A., which totals approximately $24.9 million. The payment for fiscal year 2223 in the amount of about $3.3 million is currently being verified and will bring the total to approximately $28.2 million. Reconciled payments in the amount of $18.5 million have been made for flow years 09, 10 through 1819, and estimated payments in the amount of about $9.7 million for flow years 1920 through 2223. All payments have been based on a plain read of the contract, which covers the costs for the conveyance, treatment, and disposal of wastewater. It should also be noted that Burbank is currently maintaining the Hyperion Reserve Fund in the event that additional payments are required to resolve the matter. the event that additional payments are required to resolve the matter. The Focus Sewer Capacity Technical Study is a joint effort with CDD related to the downtown Burbank, Golden State, and Media District specific plan areas. It is noted that the Rancho Plan, Rancho-specific plan area will be handled as part of the SSMP update that we will discuss next. The city team selected HDR, a firm with expertise in sewer capacity analysis and infrastructure modeling, to evaluate potential capacity impacts to both the sewer collection system and the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant from new development in the specific plan areas. HDR will meet the city's tight deadline to complete their work in summer 2023 so the technical study findings can be incorporated into the city's specific plans. The not-to-exceed contract amount is $365,000, with sufficient funding budgeted in fiscal year 2223 in the Sewer Enterprise Fund. After the Sewer Capacity Technical Study is completed, HDR will be assisting with an update to the city's Sewer System Management Plan, or SSMP. The update will address new statewide waste discharge requirements that become effective on June 5th, 2023. The goal of the SSMP is to ensure that cities properly fund, manage, operate, and maintain their sanitary sewer systems to prevent overflows. Burbank last completed an SSMP update in July of 2020. Some of the items to be included in the SSMP are organizational structure, legal authority, O&amp;M program, sewer design and performance, and a revised spill emergency response plan. Also, the System Evaluation and Capacity Assurance Plan, or CCAP, for the next 20 years will be included, and it was last updated in 2006. A determination of the sewer capacity needs for the Rancho-specific plan area, as mentioned, and finally, a joint effort with BWP to evaluate the city's recycled water system in relation to the sanitary sewer system. Recommended funding for the SSMP update is included in the fiscal year 2324 budget in the amount of $400,000 in the Sewer Enterprise Fund. The work is scheduled to be completed in spring of 2024. I also want to share some of the great work by the wastewater engineering staff on development reviews and permitting during the current fiscal year. Through the end of April 2023, wastewater staff have set development conditions on 78 proposed projects, reviewed construction plans, and provided comments on 1,046 building permits and 256 excavation permits. In addition, they have completed seven sewer capacity analyses, studies for large development Public Works has identified the need for two additional civil engineering associate positions within the wastewater division to streamline the permit review process and provide adequate service levels to our internal and external customers and to support the city's goals. First, to address the continually increasing complexity of wastewater regulations related to the sewer collection system and the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant, this includes overseeing special technical studies and annual reporting required under regulatory permits. Second, to assist with additional regulatory compliance efforts under separate NPDS permits in place to protect stormwater quality. Third, to manage a variety of capital improvement projects for the sewer system. And fourth, to review and condition a large number of development projects related to the city's recent housing element updates and continuing state legislation on housing. Both of the recommended civil engineering associate positions will be funded by a combination of sewer enterprise funds at 85% and Measure W Stormwater Funds at 15%. I want to mention that these two requested positions do not use the general fund, and that fiscal year 2223 was the first time in about 10 years that new dedicated positions were added to the wastewater division team, which included one civil engineering associate, who will be starting in about two weeks, and one collection system lead worker that was recently filled by staff promotion. The final topic that I will be presenting tonight is the interim sewer facilities charge update. Before we get into the details, it is important to mention that sewer facilities charges, or SFCs, are included in the citywide fee schedule and are not part of the rates for sewer service charges. SFCs are one-time fees, defined in the Burbank Municipal Code, for increased sewage flows into the city system. They are generally assessed on property owners or developers when building permits are pulled to redevelop or modify the land use of a parcel served by an existing connection to the city sewer system, or for projects that add new connections to the city system. SFCs are required for all customers with new or increased sewer discharges to the city system, as mentioned, to ensure that they pay their fair share of the cost associated with sewer capacity enhancements. The existing sewer facilities charges included in the citywide fee schedule were implemented in July 2001. It is critical that these charges be increased to ensure that they reflect the current construction cost for sewer infrastructure improvements. The interim sewer facilities charges study was prepared by the consulting firm of Black and Veatch. When they established the proposed SFCs, multiple factors were evaluated, including evaluation of existing fixed assets, planned CIP projects for capacity expansion over a six-year period, and future system needs, considering updates to the city's housing element for development of thousands of additional housing units. They also identified and incorporated the legal requirements for ADUs, and I do want to mention that this is an interim sewer facility charge study, as charges will be reevaluated after the Sewer System Management Plan update is completed. The interim sewer facilities charge study recommends that charges be increased across the customer groups for residential, Group 1, commercial and industrial, Groups 2 through 4, and institutional, Group 5. The updated SFC charges would become effective for building permits pulled after July 1st, 2023. Highlighting some of the charges for several of the most common categories, single-family residential units will go from $814 to $2,043. Multifamily units will go from $667 to $1,674. Professional offices will go from 417 to 1,046 per thousand square feet, and retail will go from 323 to 811 per thousand square feet. As mentioned, it is important to ensure that all customers pay their fair share for increased discharges to the city sewer system. Footnotes D and E on this slide were added for clarification to the citywide fee schedule after your budget folders were printed. They will be included in the final fee schedule document to be recommended for city council approval on July 13th, I'm sorry, on June 13th. Single-family residential additions and ADUs will be charged on a proportional basis for added square footage. Single-family additions would generally be assessed for new area added over 1,800 square feet, new ADUs over 750 square feet, and up to the maximum size in Burbank of 1,000 square feet would also be assessed. The charge will be based on the added square footage proportional to the average-sized single-family home in Burbank of 1,800 square feet, and the surface facilities charge rate for single-family residential dwelling units of $2,043. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions or comments?
Before we go to questions, let's go to public comment. I have a question, actually, before we do that. We've got the enterprise fund, we've got the non-enterprise fund. Should we do public comment after each, or should we get through the whole list?
I would recommend running through the rest of the presentations.
Okay, let's do that. Let's run through everything, hang out, we'll ask some questions at the end, and then that way, the public commentators can comment on everything. Okay, so let's, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Let's move past to the Water and Sewer Fund. Let's go to Assistant Public Works Director on Refuse.
Yeah, so next we have John Molinar, who will present the budget for the Refuse Enterprise Fund.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, for clarification. We're going to ask questions after.
Yeah, so we'll ask questions after, because we can't ask questions until we get the public comment.
Got it.
And I don't want a public comment until they're able to hear all of the presentations. Otherwise, we're going to keep coming back.
Thank you for the clarification.
John Molinar, Assistant Public Works Director?
Yes, sir.
All right, great.
Just making sure this thing worked. Good evening, Mayor Anthony, Burbank City Council. I'm John Molinar, Assistant Public Works Director over Street and Solid Waste, and I'm here to present the Refuse Budget. Got to remember to do this. I'll start with an overview of our Refuse Budget. The left column represents last year and the right column, this fiscal year. Each column is made up of three categories broken down by color. The red portions are capital expenditures, orange, materials, supplies, and services, and the green, salaries and benefits. As you can see, the overall 2324 Refuse Budget increases about 36% over last year. This is due to increases in material supplies and services for consultants and supplies needed to comply with state mandates, but the biggest reason is we have a really big project coming up. So now on to our financial sheets. The total revenues are increasing about 11% this year. That is due to last year's fee increase, new fees that we introduced last year, as well as our 6% fee increase that we will be proposing. Last fiscal year, our expenses exceeded our revenues, as you can see. This year, we have turned things around. We're still in a slight deficit, but it has definitely turned around, and in the outgoing years, it will be positive. One of the things that helped turn this thing around was that we paid off our Refuse bonds that had been ongoing since the 90s, basically, and that's about $550,000 in savings each year. So even though we're running pretty lean, we have to make sure that we keep running efficiently to make sure we have a positive outcome in outgoing years. Our cash reserve sheet shows that we start the year with a balance of $34.2 million and the end of the year with a balance of $24.1 million. Our reserves for financial policies and capital purchases are nearly $10.8 million. Our landfill closure reserves are about $11.2 million. We will be leveraging some of our liquid reserve monies to finance our big upcoming landfill CIP rather than bonding. This is feasible because our landfill's lifespan has been increased by over 100 years recently, and our unrestricted cash balance is heading in the right direction in outgoing years. Thank you, sir. Got it. I'm the defective one here. Now for our Refuse Fund rates. Last year, we applied a 4% rate increase. However, in the prior six years, there had been only two 1% rate increases and one 2% rate increase. As we are now proposing rates in a two-year cycle, we will need a 6% rate increase this year and a 6% rate increase next year in order to start catching up with the demands the state mandates are putting on us. With these increases, a typical household will be paying an additional $2.09 this year and $2.22 next year. To help their ratepayers, we are increasing rates in the smallest increments possible. So how do our rates hold up against inflation? On the chart you see here, as Stephen showed you previously, we have CPIU versus our city rates. Now, CPIU is the Consumer Price Index for All Urban Consumers, and this one is set for trash rates. The calculations both started in 2011, and we've been keeping track ever since. So even though we have back-to-back 6% rate increases, Burbank's rates will have still averaged only 2.2% over that time, where the CPIU will have averaged about 3.2%. That means a typical customer will be paying $5.84 less this year and $5.33 less next year than if we had applied the CPIU to our rates. So now let's compare our rates. Our city solid waste section is unique, so these comparisons are really hard to make, apples to apples. For instance, Pasadena has no landfill, and they have progressive fines and fees to offset revenues. Glendale has recently franchised all their commercial operations, and they were subsidizing their fees, that's why their rates were so low for so many years, by selling tonnage in that land, in Shoal Canyon landfill. So, pardon me for a moment. Now Glendale is planning a significant number of rate increases over the coming years to offset the loss of that landfill revenue, and their rates are nearly going to be at parity with ours this year, and next year will be over $4 more. San Francisco is charging individually for all three containers now, which is probably the way everybody's going to be heading soon with organics coming in. And Los Angeles is bundling their recycle and their trash cart together, but the organics cart is being charged separately, and their rates are very high, as you can see. Burbank will most likely be introducing more progressive fines and fees, as Pasadena has been doing, and we probably in some one of these days will be doing individual rates for trash recycle and organics. Now I'd like to talk about our manure program as part of, thank you. I'm talking trash, I'm talking manure, you know? As part of Senate Bill 1383, we need to ensure that the manure from our questern area is not going on our landfill, it is going to our composting. Right now, it's way up in Bakersfield, but let's not talk about that part yet. We have established a new rate for manure carts, and we've reduced the rate of our manure bins in order to match the organics rate that we set last year. These fees are necessary to ensure that all ratepayers don't subsidize the rates, that weight of those manure bins, because they're very heavy. We're working to balance our commercial collection rates with the new recycling organics cart fees brought on by state mandates. So we'll be slightly reducing our commercial trash rates while increasing our recycling organics rates. Although the recycling percentages seem quite drastic, the overall costs of the businesses do not dramatically increase because recycle and organics cart rates were so small initially. These fees ensure that our operational costs are borne by the commercial business that is receiving the service rather than the other ratepayers. So what services do our fees cover? Our solid waste collection operation collects our trash, organics, recyclables. We also provide weekly bulky item collection, which includes Christmas trees, electronic waste, and appliances and mattresses, averaging over 19,000 bulky collections per year. Our recycle center operations are now bearing an even heavier responsibility. Our recycling coordinator must direct city solid waste collections, as well as the private haulers, to ensure that we remain in compliance with mandates and report back to the state. Some of these responsibilities include SB 1383 compliance, AB 341 compliance, the recyclable processing contract, and universal waste collection, and later this year will be plastic reduction ordinance. Our landfill operations are also bearing a heavy responsibility. They must ensure that we report and remain in compliance with at least eight state and federal agencies, all while ensuring that we are operating efficiently and minimizing our airspace utilization to keep the landfill open for as long as possible. As always, our street sweepers follow our trash within two days, keeping everything So let's talk about our Refuse Fund budget drivers. Though we are holding rates as low as possible, the things that drive our increases are compliance with state mandates, salary and benefit increases, and purse contributions, capital purchases of equipment, vehicles, carts, and bins, upcoming capital projects set aside for future landfill closure, and insurance costs. We are doing our best to incrementally smooth rates over time and avoid large increases. So more about state and local mandates. I'm going to go into more detail about how state and local mandates are affecting our Refuse Fund. The most recent state mandates for organics and recycling, AB 1826 and SB 1383 and AB 341 are really draining our resources. Organics trucking costs alone run over $1 million per year, with the rate going up about $9 per ton, or about $300,000 per year, with the addition of food to the green waste recently. Our upcoming plastics ordinance will also require resources to implement and enforce. Our special handling of items such as mattresses, appliances, and electronics continues to drive rates due to the special handling and contractors needed to remove and recycle these items. And we are still seeing the loss of revenue from the collapse of the global recycling market. All of these mandates require staffing and funding, and we are projecting incremental rate increases to keep up with them. incremental rate increases to keep up with them. I want to elaborate on two of the aforementioned state and local mandates. SB thirteen eighty-three mandates organics diversion for greenhouse gas reduction. The goal is to reach seventy-five percent diversion for organics by two thousand and twenty-five. We are working with our consultants and CalRecycle in order to achieve the two thousand and twenty-five goal. In our recent conversation with CalRecycle, they were optimistically happy with our progress, stating that we were ahead of most cities in Southern California. We are also working on a local mandate, the Plastics Reduction Ordinance, that will require substantial resources to implement and administer. The Public Works Recycle Center is responsible for leading the coordination with the city and county entities, waste haulers, waste processing facilities, recyclers, commercial businesses, residents, and edible food recovery organizations to ensure the city's compliance with these mandates. With our Burbank Recycle Center and landfill staff tapped out, we will need to augment staffing resources in coming budgets to support and maintain compliant programs. This budget includes the addition of five positions: two utility workers at the landfill to clean up the organic stream, one intermediate clerk to staff the front counter at the recycle center, one administrative analyst one and one administrative analyst two to perform outreach, support, and reporting and enforcement of mandated programs. Now let's talk about some of our upcoming projects. For the last couple of years, we have been looking into the feasibility of placing a composting site on our active landfill as one of our strategies to comply with state mandates, and we are still working towards this goal. So far, the only viable system permitted in Southern California is some form of static pile composting as depicted on the slide. We will continue to move forward with this project and keep our eyes on the many upcoming technologies and challenges associated with it. Another important thing to note is that the sighting of this composting operation rests entirely upon our successful completion of the landfill liner expansion project. Speaking of landfill liner project, the landfill liner project is the last liner expansion of the landfill and involves moving five hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards of material from the area shown in red to, in the picture on the slide, to the areas in green. Once the removals are, once the removals are completed, the area in red will be lined to create a barrier between our trash and the water table. The project's cost is estimated around thirteen point six million dollars. The project is slated to start construction in two thousand and twenty-three, and I must commend our landfill staff for doing such a good job in pushing this project out as far as possible. The project is also driven by thirteen eighty-three because we need this newly lined area to place trash so that we can make room for our composting program. Let's talk about a highlight. In March of two thousand and twenty-two, council approved this, the ordinance that allowed us to implement SB thirteen eighty-three, the most far-reaching solid waste mandate in many, many years. So far, we have handed out over seven thousand pails to help facilitate organics diversion with residential and multifamily customers. During this and the next fiscal year, we are using SB thirteen eighty-three grant funding to provide water refill stations at city schools. So what are we doing next year? We've rolled out our residential and commercial organics collection programs. Our consultants have been auditing the residential portion and providing education where needed. Though much more involved, our consultants have assessed every business, and the review of waivers is in progress. However, the state has told us that we still need to keep going back to those businesses each year to ensure that the waivers are still relevant. We are also mandated to purchase products with higher recycled content and purchase approximately five thousand tons of compost for distribution throughout the city. We also have to do a great deal with edible food recovery, and are now working to partner with a nonprofit to take that on. Finally, we have to begin enforcement of both the residential and commercial programs. We are using consultants to keep up, but we still need dedicated city staff to provide the reporting, compliance, and enforcement mandated by the state. So that wraps up the refuse budget. Thank you for your time. I am available to answer any questions, but I guess we're waiting until after that. And I'm reintroducing Jennifer Becker.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Moving to non-general, non-enterprise funds, correct?
Yes, hello again. Jennifer Becker with the Financial Services Department. I will bring up our next presentation if we can, so we can keep this rolling. Hey there. Sorry about that. Sorry for the delay. So at this point in time, like I said, we have finished reviewing all of our general fund and all of our enterprise funds, which does make up the large majority of our budget, roughly seventy-eight percent. So we're close to the finish line. We're going to review now the remaining funds in our budget that you see highlighted here, including our internal service funds, special revenue funds, the housing authority, parking authority, and successor agency. So let's get started. And I'll start with our internal service funds. Internal service funds are used to accumulate funds for specific citywide purposes, such as insurance or equipment replacement. The required funds are collected from city departments and funds through a nondiscretionary budget line item appropriation in their cost center budgets. The city has seven internal service funds, all requesting appropriations tonight. The first two are managed by Management Services Department, and those are the General Liability Insurance Fund and the Workers' Compensation Fund. Next is the first of two internal service funds managed by Public Works, the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. Then we have our Fund Five Thirty-three Office Equipment Replacement Fund, which is managed by Finance. And following that, we have another fund managed by Public Works, our Fund Five Thirty-four Municipal Infrastructure Fund. This budget will be presented shortly by Mr. Berkman as part of our CIP presentation. Fund Five Thirty-five, the Communication Equipment Replacement Fund, is managed by BWP, and that was actually covered last week during their presentation. And last but not least, we have our Fund Five Thirty-seven Information Technology Fund, which of course is managed by the Information Technology Department. So let's start with General Liability Insurance, which is managed by Management Services. This fund covers the cost of citywide insurance premiums and self-insurance premiums, along with all claims against the city. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, the fund will receive thirteen million in revenue and has about twelve and a half million in proposed appropriations. The General Liability Fund received the majority of its revenue from rates that are collected from most departments and in, and all funds through the insurance account in their line item budgets. As you are well aware from past budget reports, the city of Burbank, like other public agencies, is facing an extremely difficult market for insurance. Staff is anticipating a forty percent increase in general liability insurance costs, a fifteen percent increase for citywide property insurance, and a ten percent increase for all other lines of insurance, such as power generation property coverage, cyber liability, environment liability, auto physical damage, crime, and earthquake. Based on this forecast, Management Services is recommending a one point three two five million dollar increase to the Fund Five Thirty insurance budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. This increases the overall operating budget of the fund, which must be collected from citywide insurance rates. The next fund in our presentation is the Workers' Compensation Fund, which is also managed by Management Services. Fund Five Thirty-one provides for the city's workers' compensation program and all related expenses, including medical, salary continuation, permanent disability, legal expenses, and investigative services. The Workers' Comp Fund receives most of its revenues from rates that are collected from all city departments and funds based on a percentage of budgeted employee salaries. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, the Workers' Comp Fund will collect twelve point five million in total revenues to go against ten point five million in appropriations. Now, there are no new or increased budget requests for the Workers' Comp Fund this year. However, it is important to note that after several consecutive years of Workers' Comp cost reductions, the fund did experience an actuarial liability increase this year of two point two million dollars, based on the latest actuarial report completed in January of two thousand and twenty-three. This necessitates an increase to the cash reserves within the fund in order to abide by governmental accounting standards and fully fund our future liabilities. The actuarial increase is primarily driven by increases in case reserves of existing claims. Of course, Management Services, in conjunction with our labor unions, will continue their ongoing efforts towards mitigating futures Workers' Comp cost increases. Next, we'll move on to our Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. This fund is managed by the Public Works Department and provides for the scheduled replacement and maintenance of all vehicles within the general city's fleet, including parts, labor, and fuel. The fourteen million in projected revenues for this fund come from rental rates that are charged to city departments based on the depreciable value of their vehicles, as well as the annual maintenance and fuel costs. The vehicle fund has been hit particularly hard by inflation, with the cost of new vehicles, as well as parts, maintenance, and fuel for existing vehicles continuing to rise. As a result, we've increased the vehicle rental rates collected from departments by about thirty percent from the prior year, or roughly two point three million dollars. Total appropriations of twenty-three million are proposed for Fund Five Thirty-two, with over nine point two million of that amount going directly towards the scheduled replacement of depreciated vehicles and equipment in two thousand and twenty-three. I should point out that the Public Works staff does a thorough review of each vehicle at the end of its life and only replaces those that are truly in need of replacement. Because so many of our vehicles remain in good condition, Public Works has been able to defer a hundred fully depreciated vehicles at a savings of six and a half million in vehicle replacement costs for this year. The Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund also has some capital spending planned for the two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year. We have the replacement of the tire changer at the city yard for thirty thousand, some CalOSHA-required fall protection equipment for staff for a hundred and seventy thousand, and the ongoing replacement of the city's fuel system for four hundred thousand, with planned replacements at fire stations twelve and sixteen. And lastly, Public Works is requesting a new intermediate clerk position for the vehicle fund to assist with maintaining the city's fleet, the fleet warehouse's inventory data and activity logs, as well as other administrative duties. Moving on to our Office Equipment Replacement Fund, this fund is managed by the Financial Services Department and provides for the replacement of a variety of city assets, including furniture, machinery, and various safety tools and equipment. Similar to the vehicle fund, total revenues of one point seven million are collected from rental rates, which one point five million in appropriations, going towards the scheduled replacement of capital assets and small equipment as needed. Roughly a million in capital items are budgeted to be replaced within the Five Thirty-three Fund in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. These include the replacement of the fire department's self-contained breathing apparatus, or SEBAs, as well as the accompanying mask fit testing system for those SEBAs, the replacement of a high-performance graphics printer for the police department's forensic section, and the replacement of two genie lifts utilized by the Public Works Facilities Maintenance And last, but certainly not least, for our internal service funds is Fund Five Thirty-seven, the Information Technology Fund. The IT fund houses the entire IT department under the direction of our Chief Information Officer, Kevin Gray. These functions include administration, technology, infrastructure, data and DevOps, GIS, applications, and enterprise resource planning. Fund Five Thirty-seven also provides for the replacement, maintenance, and upgrades of all of the city's computer and network equipment, as well as software. Overall, the IT fund will collect around eighteen point two million in revenues for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Fund Five Thirty-seven receives its revenues from rates paid by all departments and funds based on the results of an annual IT cost of service study, in addition to one-time contributions from the general fund and other city funds for special projects. The IT department is proposing total appropriations of eighteen point nine million for the upcoming fiscal year. The department is proposing a staff reorganization to support technology product management and agile delivery, and to improve the department's ability to serve as a trusted partner and service provider for all city departments. The reorganization includes the incorporation of three new positions, which will be largely offset from savings from the overall department reorganization. Also included in the IT budget is the proposed investment of four point three million dollars across twenty different projects that will modernize and enhance the city's technology infrastructure in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Now here's a look at some of those city-funded technology projects for the coming year, which include technology enhancements within our public safety and IT departments, technology equipment upgrades at multiple city facilities, and efforts to transition from manual or paper-driven processes to automated processes to improve efficiencies within internal service departments such as Finance and Management Services. Now in addition to those projects listed here, staff is continuing to leverage the city's remaining American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds to support technology projects that are eligible under the guidelines of this program. The IT department is proposing just over two million in ARPA-funded projects, including the continuation of the computer-aided dispatch replacement project for the police department and the expansion of our Burbank Three One One mobile app. Of course, Mr. Gray and his team are here tonight to answer any questions you may have about IT's planned projects for the coming year, and I am happy to answer any questions about the other internal service funds we just covered as well. But it sounds like we should just keep on moving. So with that, I will, I'm going to turn this presentation over to our Deputy Financial Services Director, Leanna McGurkian, who will lead you through our special revenue funds.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Leanna McGurkian with Financial Services Department. As Ms. Jennifer Becker mentioned, I will be presenting the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three proposed budgets for the city's special revenue funds. The special revenue funds are established by the city to account for revenues that are restricted for specific purposes. These funds play an important role in the financial health of our city. The city has fifteen special revenue funds, and cumulatively, these funds account for approximately fifty-five point four million dollars of this year's They help support important needs like regional power supply, transportation services, infrastructure, as well as affordable housing. We will review twelve of the special revenue funds, as Burbank Water and Power staff already presented the street lighting, Titan Hydro Power, and Magnolia Power projects as part of their budget presentation last week. So the city has four special revenue funds that provide transit programs and transportation infrastructure, including the Burbank Bus Fixed Route Service, senior and disabled transit, maintenance of downtown metro link station, and a variety of street improvement capital projects, which will be discussed further during our infrastructure presentation. As shown here in this chart, combined appropriations for Burbank's transportation funds total just over nine point six million dollars for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, with projected revenues of approximately eleven million dollars. Proposition A, Proposition C, Measure R, and Measure M each receive their funding from one of four Los Angeles County voter-approved quarter cent sales tax measures. While operating budgets remain largely the same from the prior year, there are a couple of budget highlights to point out for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Propositions A and C, Funds One Oh Four and One Oh Five, will continue their regular operations with increased funding in private contractual services for daily transit bus operations and maintenance. Measure R Transportation Fund One Oh Seven includes two hundred seventeen thousand dollars budgeted for the First Street Bike Lane to design and construct a class four bikeway on North First Street, and a total of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Vision Zero Program to implement improvements on collision patterns. Measure M Fund One Oh Eight will be funding two point two million dollars for the city's street and sidewalk repair program. The last of the city's transportation funds is the Air Quality Management District Fund. The AQMD Fund receives revenues from state vehicle registration fees, which have a small portion dedicated for local return to cities in the South Coast Air Quality Management District. These funds are restricted to only be used for clean air mitigation measures. The city of Burbank's share of these revenues is projected at hundred forty-seven thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Consistent with prior years, this revenue will be used to fund the city's rideshare program, which helps reduce vehicle trips generated by city employees. The Measure W Fund One Oh Nine was created in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one to account for revenues received by the city from the LA County Safe Clean Water Municipal Program. This program is funded through a special parcel tax of two and a half cents per square foot of impermeable area, which was approved by LA County voters in November of two thousand and eighteen. Burbank receives about one and a half million dollars annually from this revenue source, which is managed by the Public Works Department. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, the Public Works Department is proposing to fund fifteen percent of two new civil engineering associate positions, to be split with the sewer fund to address the continually increasing complexity. with the sewer fund to address the continually increasing complexity and number of stormwater regulations. The Measure W Stormwater Fund includes a capital appropriation of six hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four to fund the McCambridge Park Stormwater Project, which will improve water quality and groundwater supply through a multi-benefit stormwater capture system. The next special revenue fund I would like to present is the Community Development Block Grant Fund, or CDBG. The city receives annual revenue from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. These funds are allocated towards activities that benefit persons of low and moderate income. The Economic Development and Housing Division of the Community Development Department is responsible for the administration of this program. The proposed CDBG budget for fiscal year twenty-two-three twenty-four is almost one point one million dollars in revenues, and approximately one and a half million dollars in appropriations. The Community Development Department will be presenting the proposed CDBG Public Service and Capital Projects Plan at the June thirteenth City Council Meeting. Now let's talk about Fund 123, Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation, and Fund 125, State Gas Tax Fund Special Revenue Funds. Both funds receive revenues from the state of California and are dedicated to street maintenance and rehabilitation. These revenues are collected by the state through vehicle registration fees and fuel excise taxes. The combined revenues for the Road Maintenance and Recovery Act, also known as RMRA, and the Gas Tax Fund total approximately five point eight million dollars for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four, with proposed appropriations of just under four point eight million dollars. The RMRA Fund 123 is proposing a budget of two point five million dollars, which is entirely dedicated to street improvements program for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four. The city is required to submit a list of projects approved by the city council to the state in order to receive these funds. The Public Works Department presented the report on the proposed street improvements project to the city council on April fourth. The proposed budget before you incorporates the direction and projects approved by the city council at that time. The Gas Tax Fund 125 supports public work staffing for road projects and the annual maintenance of the city's traffic signals and regulatory guide sign replacements. State's revenue from fuel taxes has been dropping in recent years, resulting in decreased revenue receipts for the city. As such, the Gas Tax Fund has no new CIP appropriations for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four, and includes appropriations to support salaries and benefits and material supplies and services. Now let's talk about Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund 124. This fund was established to account for drug asset forfeiture revenues and expenditures. These funds are restricted and can only be used for law enforcement purposes. The proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four is almost thirty-four thousand dollars in revenues and forty-five thousand dollars in appropriations to support a variety of training, technology, and equipment needs. The Public Improvement Fund is funded by development impact fees charged to developers who bring new projects into our city. These revenues are restricted to funding projects that appear in the city's infrastructure blueprint, or projects identified at the inception of the impact fee program. The public improvements budget includes anticipated revenues of one point five million dollars, with proposed appropriations of approximately three point eight million dollars in fiscal year twenty-two-three twenty-four. Budget highlights for this fund include about one point one million dollars for the San Fernando Bikeway Project, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Dick Clark Dog Park, and hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the George Isaiah Park Master Plan. Fund 128, HUD Affordable Housing Program, receives funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to increase the city's supply of affordable housing. This fund provides permanent supportive housing, PSH vouchers, to assist unhoused individuals. Also included within this fund is the Home Investment Partnership Program, which uses HUD funding to increase the supply of affordable housing in the city. Included in this year's Fund 128 budget is an estimated five hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars in continuum-of-care permanent supportive housing, which will cover administration and material supplies and services costs, along with housing assistance payments. That completes our special revenue fund, so I'll continue with the Housing Authority The Burbank Housing Authority contains two funds providing affordable housing for lower-income residents. The Section Eight Program provides rent subsidy payments directly to landlords on behalf of very low-income residents. Of the approximately thirteen point one million dollars operating budget for this fund, ten point six million dollars will go to directly housing assistance payments, and eight hundred thousand dollars will go towards emergency housing assistance payments in fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four to help households experiencing homelessness and those at risk of becoming unhoused. The remaining balance is used to cover the administrative costs of the program. The fiscal year twenty-two-three twenty-four proposed budget for Fund 117, Section Eight Program, includes a new housing assistant position to assist with the additional casework and inspections. The Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund 305 lost its primary funding source with the elimination of the Redevelopment Agency when it received twenty percent of the RDA tax increment. Current revenue projections of five hundred seventy-one thousand dollars are from rehabilitation loan repayments provided to low- and moderate-income households and interest earnings on fund balance. The proposed budget for this fund includes a new housing development manager position to assist in monitoring existing affordable housing units and future units currently under development. Our next fund, the Parking Authority Fund 310, is managed by the Community Development Department Transportation Division. Currently, the only revenue stream for this fund comes from parking permits and leases, and is projected to total just under seven hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four. Proposed appropriations of approximately seven hundred ninety-two thousand dollars are needed to continue to fund the operations and maintenance of downtown parking lots and structures, as well as the administration of parking maintenance agreements and parking permit programs. This means we'll be utilizing about a hundred thousand dollars of that two hundred ninety-three thousand dollars fund balance to keep Parking Authority operations running for the coming year. There are no new budget requests proposed for the Parking Authority for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four. The final fund of the evening is the Successor Agency, which is a fiduciary fund maintained by the city. This means that we are responsible for these monies, but they don't actually belong to the city of Burbank. As part of the legislation that eliminated redevelopment agencies, successor agencies were established to oversee the unwinding of the redevelopment agencies. The total successor agency budget for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four is right around seven point four million dollars, most of which will be utilized to pay bonded debt service. In order to receive these dollars, the city needs to submit an annual recognized obligation payment schedule to the county oversight board, and then subsequently to the California Department of Finance for approval. This was completed in January, and the city received final approval from the Department of Finance in April. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, or take additional requests for follow-up, but since we're waiting, I invite Mr. Berkman to present the city's capital improvement program budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Berkman.
Honorable Mayor, Council Members, Vice Mayor, good to see you. My favorite time of the year personally, Public Works to get to our capital program. We're getting better and better at this. Ms. Becker and her team teed this up nicely. So I'd like to start off noting the theme of the presentation, which is commitment to infrastructure, because that's exactly what city council and the residents did with the passage of Measure P. It was a very wise decision, made much more evident given the impacts of an unanticipated pandemic. There are two relevant guiding policies for the Measure P funds. We dedicate no less than fifty percent of the funds, the revenue, to infrastructure repairs, maintenance, and improvements, and we dedicate a baseline general fund annual commitment of four point seven million dollars. A bit of recent history here, we see a steady CIP budget of about twenty million dollars over the past several years, except for the COVID year, where we weren't quite sure what was coming, and now in two thousand twenty-three twenty-four, we're looking at a significant thirty-seven million dollar program, of which about seventeen million is funded by Measure A lot of work goes on behind the scenes to put the annual CIP program together. In December, new project requests are received, which also includes each department reviewing their unfunded needs projects to consider if they want to submit them as a new project. In January, staff scores the projects based upon prioritization criteria created with the Infrastructure Oversight Board, and then in February and March, we present this to the Development Oversight Committee, our internal staff committee, and the IOB. In this case, there was no quorum for the IOB in March, so we just held it last month, and with the board's approval recommendation, that is what you are seeing tonight. This is a lot to take in, but don't worry, I'll be zooming in on the projects in the upcoming slides. But what you're looking at is an overview of all the new proposed projects submitted by the departments. In total, there were seventeen new projects submitted at about twelve million dollars with various funding sources. And here we see nineteen multi-year, or ongoing, projects that total about twenty-five million dollars of requested funding. So to zoom in on the projects, we'll start with the new projects, and at the top, our most critical annual rehabilitation efforts that we take care of in order, ten million square feet of sidewalks, two hundred and thirty center-line miles of roadways. We also have fifty miles of alleys as well, and more on that later, and our facilities' capital work for our one point three million square feet of building area. Next, below that, we see products that are funded solely with restricted dollars. A few to note below the annual projects are the McCambridge Park Multi-Benefit Stormwater Capture Project, which, in addition to the stormwater infiltration system, includes bioswells in parking lots, trees, picnic tables with shade structures, solar power, and other amenities for the community. We applied for competitive Measure W funding, but did not make the cut this time. We think it's a really strong project, and we're moving forward with design to get a more accurate cost estimate, which was kind of high, as it was only based on our feasibility study. Further down, we see a project to replace the police department's video storage, so a federally mandated one year of storage is provided within the jail area, and the Johnny Carson Park shade structure for the stage in what is one of the largest and most heavily-used parks in the city. Measure P is being put to great use towards a wide variety of projects, such as the waterproofing, the subterranean portion of the PD Fire Headquarters Building, lighting modernization at Schaefer Ball Field, and picnic facility improvements at McCambridge Park. As you can see, the flexibility of Measure P enhances our ability to take care of our infrastructure in a proper, proactive manner. So this is the second fiscal year that we're, there are more new projects submitted for inclusion in the program than funding available. You may recall staff worked with the IOB to create a prioritize scoring methodology to rank the new projects and ensure the best products are included in the program. That could be completed, not only given the financial resources expected to be available each fiscal year, but the staffing resources as well. The scoring and discussions in the IOB and DOC meetings resulted in one project falling below the red line, as you see, thus not making it into the program this fiscal year. The McCambridge Playground Equipment Replacement was that one, and while it did have a higher score for prioritization, and thus ranking initially at an estimated cost of about two million dollars, we thought it was of greater benefit to the community to move the other projects forward with those funds. The next part of the proposed CIP program is consisting of the ongoing or multi-year projects. These are larger and are more complex projects that require more extensive planning, design, or construction, or perhaps in some cases were placed on lower priorities within previous fiscal years to address unexpected or urgent work. You see, CDD continues the design efforts for the San Fernando Bikeway Project, which will connect the Chandler Bike Path to the downtown MetroLink Station, and complete the final three miles in a twelve-mile regional bike path. While Parks and Recreation have some exciting upgrades planned for the golf course, with renovations of fairway bunkers and tee boxes, a shade structure over the driving range stalls, and continuing the replacement of the irrigation system, and also replacing the irrigation system at McCambridge Park now that design has been completed. As well, the construction of the Dick Clark Dog Park at Johnny Carson Park is slated for the coming fiscal year. Continuing on the multi-year ongoing projects, a few efforts to note on this slide include the PD Fire Headquarters Flooring Project, which was established in fiscal year sixteen-seventeen and is long overdue for action. We're currently about to commence construction on the first phase that will improve sixteen thousand square feet of the total, one hundred and five thousand square feet of floored area, at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or a little over nine dollars per square foot. Library Director Goldman provided the council an update last month on the new central library and civic center project, so as you know, we're continuing our work with the consultant team towards the release of a public-private partnership RFQ by January twenty-twenty-four. Please let you know, the opening of the bids for construction of the Glen Oaks Boulevard Signal Improvements Project is set for June sixth, with the recommendation of a contract award slated to come before this council in July. The Interstate Five Arterial Phase Three Project above it is a signal reconstruction project for four major intersections on Magnolia at Reese, Mariposa, and Screenland, as well as for Victory at Elmwood, and is currently in the design phase. Like Glen Oaks, it is also a hundred percent Measure R funded. Down at the bottom, twenty-two forty-four North Buena Vista may ring a bell as the prior site of the Boys and Girls Club for twenty-seven years. Staff is negotiating a lease with a nonprofit, and since the prior lease had no requirements for building upkeep and maintenance, design and construction funds are included in this project, as shown, and the new lease will provide the means for the city and the entity to properly maintain all aspects of this property and the facility itself. So moving on to a financial overview, this pie chart is very pleasing to the engineering part of my brain with how balanced it is, and it again demonstrates the diversity of the improvements within our thirty-seven million dollar program in the coming fiscal year. We have the eight million dollars towards streets and sidewalks, over ten million for our facilities, about ten point seven million for Parks and Recreation improvements, and over eight million for traffic and transportation. So staff always seeks to acquire and apply grant funding, then use restricted dollars, then finally put Measure P to work before considering any other general fund usage. As you can see, this coming year's program was funded with twenty-seven percent of restricted funds, along with a little more than half of unrestricted funds, and also includes a significant amount of twenty-one percent of our projects being funded by grants. There are eleven restricted fund sources bringing improvements to the city, as shown in the box outlined in green, from Art and Public Places at four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, to the two point five million of Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, or SB One, funds that Ms. Becker mentioned, that are helping us make significant progress on our citywide roadway rehabilitation program. Excuse me for a sec. Thank you. So it's important to understand that Fund 534 not only helps us design and construct new infrastructure, but and upgrade that which exists, but also properly operate and maintain it. The five point seven million dollar maintenance budget helps us take care of a wide variety of assets, like our buildings, roofing and flooring, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, and HVAC systems, take care of graffiti, street maintenance, our sidewalks, traffic signals, signs, park landscaping, irrigation signs, park landscaping, irrigation trees, and many others. In total, staff is recommending an approximate $22.5 million Measure P investment into our infrastructure this coming fiscal year. Finance Director Becker provides this slide for us annually. It shows how our projected revenues are anticipated to increase, and subsequently why we can confidently increase our infrastructure investment in the coming fiscal year. Fund 534 is comprised of the General Fund Infrastructure Commitment of $4.7 million in green, the Measure P actual and projected revenues in dark and light blue respectively, as well as the interest income from revenues not being spent in yellow. Now for the fun part, really fun part. All right, some completed projects, some good work that we've accomplished. Starting off with our most behind-the-scenes work, I like to say that no one really notices, but it's all too critical, highlight some of our annual small-cap facilities projects, starting with this one at Maxim. Small capital improvements, they typically take about three to six months to design and construct, and the costs include the design, the permitting, and the construction. So this one first, the Maxwell Park Backflow Valve Replacement at a little under $100,000. We just completed this this past February. A similar project completed at the recycle center last month, and both system improvements entailed upsizing the system from eight inches to 10 inches to support the current fire-water needs for the facilities. The two light poles at the downtown MetroLink Station Elevator Tower were antiquated and needed to be replaced, as was the stairway lighting and other wayfinding lighting. These were all revamped to light the stairway and pathways and the tower effectively and evenly. The fixtures are also designed to minimize light pollution, like spill over or glare, and the now iconic tower is once again a beautiful sight at night. On a side note, we have a, our major capital project to renovate and waterproof the elevator advertising for construction bids right now, and expect to commence construction of that important project in the coming summer months. So that's been a long time coming as well. The last important small-cap project here, EV's charging station was added at the yard to accommodate our expanding EV fleet, which was designed so that it could utilize emergency power if needed in collaboration with BWP staff. Parks and Recreation always has great projects. They deliver year after year, such as this one for the design phase of the Olive Recreation Center redesign, which was part of the George Isaiah Park Master Plan completed in August 2022. The next phase for this coming fiscal year will include an aerial, topographic, and field survey, phasing feasibility studies, and a 3D rendering of the design. The Verdugo Aquatic Facility Public Art Project was completed with an unveiling ceremony conducted on December 15th of last year. New sliding doors were installed at the DeBel Clubhouse, which allows for expanded use of the space at a facility that experiences 54,000 visits and hosts 24 tournaments and private events every year. The golf course received some needed upgrades, including renovating the cart pads on holes five, six, seven, and nine in February, as well as the sand bunkers on the front nine in May. I mentioned 10 million square feet of sidewalks. That's a lot, but we have a solid maintenance and rehabilitation program to take care of them all. This annual effort precedes the annual residential paving rehabilitation project for the same areas on the map here shown in a call gold or yellow. Essentially, this area is east of San Fernando Boulevard and south of Amherst Drive. The project removed and reconstructed approximately 3,500 linear feet of damaged curbs and gutters, over 22,000 square feet of sidewalks, over 15,000 square feet of driveways, and 16,000 square feet of alley approaches, and added or removed and replaced 86 ADA ramps, such as those seen here. Another great annual sidewalk project that provided almost $1.8 million improvements for the city. So here's a map for our annual residential pavement rehabilitation program, which is the same as the sidewalks map, just adding a year since it follows the annual sidewalk project. That's, that's pretty. I always love a fresh mat of asphalt, but you can see what a difference it makes, not just for the structure of the roadway, but also the striping and enhancement of pedestrian and cyclist safety. We're particularly proud to present the city's largest pavement rehabilitation project in its history. This year's project improved 26 centerline miles of roadway, and also removed and reconstructed curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, and also 99, we should have done 100, but 99 ADA ramps. Staff did an outstanding job managing this monumental effort, bringing the construction cost in at about $7.5 million from a contract award of $7.8 million. So excellent work. I can also let you know that we made such good progress with the roadways that we are able to start rehabilitating alleys as well. And after doing one, two years ago, we were able to do five, yeah, five this year, and we have over a dozen slated for the coming fiscal year. So we are making some, some progress. The last part, just to get to some projects also under construction. Our annual arterial pavement rehabilitation project will provide about two centerline miles of new roadway surfaces for Victory from Clyburn to Buena Vista and San Fernando Road from south of Hollywood Way to north of Buena Vista. It will also rehabilitate the Burbank Fire Department Training Facility parking lot as part of an effort to make sure we are taking care of the city facilities' parking lots where it logistically makes sense as we work in different parts of the city. An approximate $3.5 million construction contract was awarded by council in December, which was very accurately within the engineer's estimate of approximately $3.6 million. Construction started in February, and concrete and other pre-paving work occurs first, as can be seen by the new ADA ramp being installed in March on the left, and the manhole work on the right earlier this month. And now we are on to the cold milling process as of last week, where we shave off the design depth of the old roadway material to get ready for the new pavement. Finishing with some, some parks projects, we have Verdugo Park receiving a new shade structure for the picnic area. The playground equipment and shade fabric at Overm Park will be replaced, and Valley Park will receive new playground equipment as well as a new shade structure. And last but not least, the outdated fitness equipment at Witnall Highway Park South is currently being replaced. They also have several projects with construction imminent, including shade structures at the animal shelter and for the bleachers at McCambridge and Schaefer, as well as new water slides at Verdugo. And later, I and all the project managers will be available to answer questions. So thank you for your time, Ms. Becker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berkman. Hello again, Jennifer Becker with Financial Services. Let me get to the right page here. So we've reached that point in time where we've completed all of our fund reviews as well as the CIP budget, and we all seem to have survived, so that's great news. Now is the time when we turn our attention back to those remaining outstanding items, those decision points in the budget, which are our discussion papers. You received six of them with the original budget book, and another eight last night based on the direction we received from last week's city council meeting, for a total of 14 discussion paper items. Of those 14 items, six have a fiscal impact, while the rest are informational only. So I'm going to start with a look at the discussion papers that, if approved, would have a recurring impact to the budget. Some are a fixed amount, while others include a range of options that the city council could choose from. And these include the potential addition of a senior assistant city attorney position, a distant addition of a legislative analyst in the city manager's office, or expansion of the scope and services for the city's current state legislative advocacy group, expansion of homeless outreach services, and the creation of an additional administrative analyst position to enhance sister-city activities. So those are our recurring discussion papers. We also have two additional discussion papers that, if approved, we would recommend utilizing one-time funds. These are the Landlord-Tenant Dispute Resolution Program and Funding Options for the Burbank Historical Society 50th Anniversary Event. And lastly, we have a number of memos provided to you that are informational only, as listed on the slide here. Some of these items are already included in the budget, while others require more follow-up or do not require an appropriation at this time. So staff is here to answer any questions on any of these discussion papers you have before you this evening, and for any of the items that do have a fiscal impact, we are happy to take direction from the council if there is a consensus to incorporate these items into the budget when we come back for adoption next month. So that concludes our budget presentations. We've covered a lot of ground over the past couple of weeks, as we've made it through our entire operating budget and CIP program. We'll be back on June 6th for the public hearing and adoption of our utility rates, and then on June 13th for the public hearing and adoption of the citywide budget and fee schedule. With that, me and all the rest of our staff are here to answer questions or take additional direction on follow-up.
All right, thank you so much. We will now move to public comment. I have one public comment from JP. If you want to give a public comment, we're only doing in-person only, please put a yellow public comment card. I don't see JP. I think JP may have left, maybe he's outside. Did you, Madam City Clerk, do we have any other yellow comment cards?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
All right. Going once for JP, going twice. All right. We'll move on, there being no public comment. All right. So we can take questions, yes, we'll be taking questions of staff. I do want to remind council, this is not the final, final moment to weigh in and vote on the budget. We will have plenty of opportunity moving forward, but it is the first chance for us to discuss the discussion papers. So we had a lot today. We had water reclamation sewer, we had refuse and disposal, the non-enterprise funds, and the capital improvement program, just to name a few. Do we have any questions of staff?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And for the record, I'll just note that while I wasn't here, I had a chance to watch the entire presentation and the many questions that were posed and the great answers, so I am up to speed. I wanted to start by asking you about, Ms. Becker, I think this is directed to you. There were, I believe, eight discussion papers that were requested from the last meeting?
That's correct, yes.
Do you have any data about the staff, resources, time, and costs that were devoted to the preparation of those eight papers? Ballpark is totally fine.
Sure, I mean, it can vary, it could take anywhere from two hours to an entire day, depending on the complexity of the memo. If you say average five hours or so times eight papers, you're probably looking at about 40 hours of staff time. Those are typically prepared by analysts and then reviewed by department heads like myself and forwarded to the city manager for approval before being sent to you.
Great, thank you. I don't have any questions about nearly all of the funds, but I did want to see if I could get Mr. Gray up here to talk about Fund 537. It's good to see you, Mr. Gray.
Good to see you too. It's been about three years since I've stood at this podium.
I'm glad I could call you up here. This is great. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, Kevin Gray, Chief Information Officer.
Okay, so what I wanted to talk about specifically were the projects, I believe this was on slide number 11 of the, the presentation that was labeled Fiscal Year 2023-24: Proposed Budget for Internal Service and Special Revenue Funds. So, Mr. Gray, I just wanted you to give us an overview. So I know there are, there's about $2 million in funds that are derived from ARPA that we're, that we're planning to support. Maybe if we could pull that up, just so he can.
Yes, yes.
I'm not going to go line, line item by line item, but I just wanted to ask you about a couple of them. I think some are self-explanatory. I get Mobile 311 Integrations, the Police Department CAD. There are two items here. One is, is labeled Personnel Action Form Processing or Process Automation.
Yes.
And the second one was Electronic Onboarding and Offboarding. And these total, just fuzzy math, almost $700,000. Could you just talk through, what are those two items specifically? What are we doing?
So, you know, one of our, the key themes of our strategy is around digitizing and automating manual process, manual paper processes that we have here at the city. Betsy's looking at me because she, she knows this very well. Often I have my business partners help make the business case for us, but, but I'll share with you what I know. There, there are many hours of staff time that go into manually processing personnel changes around the city. Paper forms that have to be signed, copied, mailed, and manual processes that go along with that. We're looking to implement automation, digitize the process, implement automated workflows, and automated processing for the, for that kind of work. Same thing for electronic onboarding. Part of the problems that we have today are, as an example, when a new employee starts with the city, it can take up to two weeks before they show up in our systems. So it creates all kinds of problems for us, like we're not able to assign training, online training to certain, to certain employees because they don't show up in the systems that they, that they need to be. We're looking to automate really those processes, really streamline the processes, so that someone's hired, they're automatically on-boarded, they're automatically created in all of the systems that they need, so that they can get to work right away, rather than it taking two weeks for that to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Excellent explanation, that answers my question. The follow-up to that, it might be a Ms. Becker question, I'm not sure. I just wanted to know, so as we were highlighting some of the other funds, you were forecasting anticipated revenues, proposed appropriations. What I didn't see for this one is, what's the current balance of Fund 537? Is there any money already in there that's just sitting there? And I know it's somewhere in my binder, but for the benefit of the public.
So I don't, in front of me, have the actual fund balance for 537. The reason why we don't put that on our internal service slides is pretty much those funds take in whatever revenues they need for their expenses for the next year, right? There's also some depreciation that comes in, but pretty much we collect from all of our citywide departments enough to fund Mr. Gray's operations for his department. In addition to that, when we have big one-time projects, those are new projects that we're not already collecting annual operating funds for, so we have to collect that from somewhere. So whichever fund is supporting the project, whether that's the General Fund, or one of our utility funds, or whoever the, sort of the, the project is servicing, will contribute a one-time amount to help fund those special projects. And then after the special project is implemented, we'll continue to collect replacement dollars from those departments to make sure that the next time around, we'll have the funds available to upgrade or replace that, those projects. So there isn't really a fund balance per se, and a lot of those internal service funds, they're pretty much tied up in just sort of the assets and the depreciation to keep the fund ongoing annually. I hope that answers the question somewhere.
It does. I had one more follow-up for you, Ms. Becker. Mr. Gray, that's all I had, so thank you. My colleagues might have more.
Yeah, I think there's more.
But while we're on the subject, Ms. Becker, for the benefit of our, of our three colleagues who are relatively newer, in the last council, we had to deal with ARPA funds, and I believe... are relatively newer, in the last council, we had to deal with ARPA funds, and I believe that this is about wrapping that up, where we will be encumbering all of the monies that we've received under ARPA.
Yes, we had about $2 million remaining, and when we look at items that we could fund with those remaining funds, we're running up against a deadline now. They have to be committed by December 2024 and expended by December 2025, I believe. So when we go to identify those programs, we will look for things that we know we can get up and running and out the door relatively quickly to meet those federal reporting guidelines. And there's a lot that goes into projects when they're funded by ARPA. We have to do extra screening of the vendors that we use. We have to do a formal bid process. There's heightened requirements for when we're utilizing those funds, so we try to select projects that we know that we could have a good success rate with following those program guidelines.
Thank you. So I only have two more questions, and only one of them's for you.
Okay.
So my question was, this is kind of going back to the beginning, the purpose of ARPA. I know it's a big question, but what kinds of things were we empowered to utilize those funds for? I know offhand, one of them was revenue replacement at the height of the pandemic. If I'm not mistaken, there was also rent relief assistance, small business loans. Could you just give us a generic, a general overview of the purpose of those funds?
Sure. I will do my best to sort of go back to my memory bank of the federal guidelines, but there's sort of four broad categories. The first you mentioned are revenue replacements to support city operations, revenue that was lost during the pandemic. That's where the majority of our funding ended up going to, because as you know, during the pandemic, we lost a significant amount of hotel revenues and sales tax revenues, and that was what enabled us to stay afloat during the pandemic, essentially. The other category, there's a category for sewer and broadband projects specifically. Then, yes, there's a category for special assistance, like rental assistance, small business assistance. We got a lot of those funds. In addition to the ARPA funds we received directly, we also received additional ARPA and CARES money through like the CDBG program and through other programs that allowed us to provide some of that assistance during the pandemic. So what I'm talking about here is only sort of the general city, the general fund portion of ARPA. And then the fourth category is sort of any kind of project or program that would help the city respond in the event of an emergency. So anything, like the police CAD system is a great example of that, right? Anything that's improving our technology, allowing better communication with our citizens, allowing us to be more flexible in the way we work and do business. So all of those projects are the ones that are eligible under ARPA, which is why some of those projects that take manual processes and automate them are a perfect candidate for use in, for those funds. So those are kind of the four basic categories.
Thank you, Ms. Becker.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. That's more than enough for now. My last question is actually regarding our transportation funds, Measure R. I just had a quick follow-up about the Vision Zero program. Maybe Mr. Krisky, or he's taking a guess there because he's gathering his things.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. David Krisky with the Community Development Department.
Yeah, I know it's in our book, but I was just wondering for the public's benefit. This was one of this council's very first items that we talked about this year. Could you just give us a quick recap of three-quarters of a million dollars? What is that going to go for? And then what is the anticipated, anticipated timeline? I know it could change.
Yes, thank you. I'd be happy to answer that. So we, in response to the city council's request to look at implementing Vision Zero, we're proposing a program this coming fiscal year for $750,000. It'll consist of basically three functions, kind of the money split across these three. One is the development of a Vision Zero plan. So we need a plan to identify how we're going to implement Vision Zero, what are the important objectives of the community, how our Complete Streets Plan kind of ties into that. We're proposing to do it a fairly streamlined manner because we believe that Complete Streets is already setting a good baseline, and we want to kind of get out the gate quickly. So we want to do a streamlined plan to kind of encapsulate our Complete Streets policies into our Vision Zero program. The other thing that plan will do is make us eligible for some safety grant funds that we're not currently eligible for, so it'll do double duty for that. The second portion of that will be consultant services, funds for consultant services to do the actual Vision Zero analysis. So that means looking at our crash statistics over the last several years, looking at them geographically, finding out if there are hotspots or areas where there are more crashes are happening, and then kind of going deeper and forensically looking at those crashes to see if there's patterns or causes that are grouping different things together where we can make a targeted improvement to reduce that. And then the third component is, once we identify those measures or those issues, designing quick build, short-term measures to address them. And that can be low capital, high impact, so signing, striping, signal timing changes, minor work in that regard, to put an improvement out quickly and then monitor it and see if it's helping. And then if it is helping, the backend, which wouldn't be this year, but in the follow-up would be then hardening those improvements to make them more permanent. So it's three components. We expect to have the Vision Zero plan worked on in probably the first half of the upcoming fiscal year. And then we also think maybe in parallel, we could start some of the analysis. We won't have the plan, but we'll be able to at least start doing some of the investigations with kind of the resources we have. But then at the second half of the fiscal year, doing the more analysis and maybe even implementing some actual improvements, which is why we asked for some money for actual physical implementation.
Thank you, Mr. Krisky. That's all I had. I only have one more, Mr. Mayor. I just thought of it. Ms. Becker, I'm going to need you back. So I was going to bring it up later as a conversation, but I think I'll pose it as a question, so it can stimulate some thought. I'm going to try not to go wax on, Mr. Mayor, but I just want to provide enough context so Ms. Becker can understand where I'm going with it. We have had a conversation in our community about how we're going to help tenants, and often the conversation revolves around what impositions are we going to put on property owners in the form of rent control, eviction protections? But as we've seen tonight, it's very hard, both internally and externally, for government to move quickly. My question is this. ARPA is a resource of one-time funds, and my understanding is that other communities, I believe Clermont is a very recent example, has looked at using their ARPA funds to provide immediate assistance to supplement the one-month relocation assistance that's provided for under Assembly Bill 1482. I believe the way the program works is that if you're a tenant who's perhaps displaced, lost your job, you qualify for whatever the reason, in addition to the one-month relocation assistance that you're getting from your landlord, you're also able to come through the city, through a program that I believe would be administered by Home Again Los Angeles, and I know that from my conversations with Mr. Hernandez today, that that's something they'd be open to. So the question is, is that something that staff has looked at? Because while everything else that we have talked about in that context is actually absolutely worth exploring, this to me like seems like something that we could do right now to help folks that are facing displacement, and quite frankly, would be at no out-of-pocket cost to landlords. So I really can't see the downside to it or the argument against it. Is that something staff's looked at?
It's not something we've looked at outside of the rental assistance and small business assistance funding that we got as part of the CARES program through CDBG. So we did have some of that at the beginning of the pandemic. Certainly, it's an eligible expense, to answer that question. When you utilize ARPA funds for that expense, you do put some more administrative burdens on the program because of the background and the screening and all of the additional kind of federal hoops you have to jump through to make people eligible to receive that assistance. So it is something that would take longer to get off the ground than it would be if we just used like general city one-time funds, for example, just because there are further restrictions. So that's just something to consider. But certainly, it is an eligible expense, and other communities have used their ARPA funds towards all sorts of different projects, right?
Thank you. And you did mention other one-time funds. Do we have any of those lying around? I think we do.
Here and there, yes.
About 90 million, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, of course, that 90 million number includes our formal reserves, which I obviously wouldn't recommend. But yes, there is an available pool of general fund cash, as we presented last week, that, you know, the council's been made aware of the remaining one-time funds that we have throughout the city. So those are certainly possibilities, you know? That'd probably be my recommendation over, you know, removing some of these IT projects that are easily funded with ARPA and then utilizing one-time funds to pay for them. You might as well just do the things that are most easy on the federal side and use your one-time funds, which are a little bit more flexible. But, you know, we're here to take directions, so.
Thank you. I think that's more than enough food for thought for now, and I'll save my comments for later.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? I have one. I just have one. I'll go, I'll go real quick. I just want to ask about Measure W, the stormwater fund. That's my only question for today. Hello, Mr. Burkmann, welcome back.
Hello.
The Measure W, so just in the staff report, it says that our safe, clean water capital project will be phased out, and then it's going to be turned into a line item. The project in question, is that the McCambridge Park project? Is that what that is? Or is there something greater that we're looking at?
Can you repeat the first part of the question?
So, so in the staff report, it mentions a safe, clean water capital project that's being phased out, and then we're replacing it with a simple line item, just for permits and training. If I'm reading that correctly, does that, is that the McCambridge Park stormwater project that is, that we're calling the safe, clean water capital project? Or is that a different name? Oh, sorry, I'm on page 16 of the staff, of the, under tab, Special Revenue Funds.
Yes, absolutely.
Measure W.
So when, when Measure W first came about, this was a new source of revenue.
2018 parcel tax, yeah.
Correct. We knew we needed some amount of budget to support some of the programs we wanted to do, so we kind of put one line, like a lump sum, in the budget as a placeholder. This year, we're actually establishing, you know, a budget, rather than putting everything in one line. You know, we're putting, you know, charging staff time and resources like office supplies and training and special departmental supplies to, so that it has a full budget, like you see all the other special revenue funds, as opposed to just one line that says, you know, operations. So we just wanted to clean that up for this year.
Okay.
But yes, there is an appropriation for that McCambridge, I believe it's the McCambridge Stormwater Capture Program.
Okay.
That part I can't really speak to, but I'm sure our public work staff can help define that project a little bit more if you're interested.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that was the thing on the, yeah, because it's not, it doesn't list it in the report, but when I look through, it's the only thing I could see that has stormwater on it, other than maybe that drain pump, but I don't think that we'd be pumping.
Yeah, if I were to look at the budget, it probably says something like, where is that? Infrastructure improvements, right?
Right. Here's why I bring this up.
Sure.
What, well, I bring it up to ask the following question. The parcel tax money from Measure W, how do we get that money? Is it a guaranteed return? Is it an applied return? Do we get a percentage, and then we have to ask for more? How does it work?
Well, it comes to us from the county of LA, and I do think it's a fixed amount, and it's based on, I believe it's like two and a half cents per square foot of impermeable area you have on your property.
Okay, great. So we know how much that's going to be coming every year, approximately?
Correct. It's about 1.4 million. Is that, do I have that correct? 1.3, 1.4?
Excellent. Okay, so that's why we're turning it into a full budget, because we can plan it, we know how much is coming.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question. I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm good. I'm good for the night. For the night.
Promise.
Thank you. Sorry for getting into the weeds there a little bit. Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you. My question is regarding the vehicle equipment replacement, and I see that we look like we're scheduled to replace 87 depreciated vehicles. It's on page four, slide number seven. My question is, is that, can I include our electric vehicles in the replacement? So the $9 million has been allocated, does that include the cost for the electric? Or we're not planning on doing it this time around?
Through the mayor, council member, thanks for the question. We just completed a fleet optimization and diversification study and report, and we're implementing it this current fiscal year with those vehicle reductions. As a result of that study, we've saved $500,000. And yes, those vehicles do include electric vehicles. We have a short and long-term plan. We're expanding our infrastructure, which of course has to go along with that, but there's definitely plans to replace the gas-powered engines with the clean EV engines.
Great. Thank you. And while you're standing there, I have another question, and this is on the Capital Improvement Program, page five, slide 10. And this addressed a specific, the 2244 North Buena Vista facility, which I understand this, it looks, it looks like $1.3 million has been requested for this coming budget year. This is the project that Home Again LA, I believe, are taking over, the facility for Boys and Girls Club. I just wanted to confirm, is this the right location?
I'm hearing, yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you for that. So is that 1.3, the city will be then responsible in doing the tenant improvement in the facility? Because I'm, I was really hearing different information out there, so I wanted to confirm, is this the total cost of the tenant improvement in the project?
Yeah, and I see Assistant Director Simone McFarland. To tee it up, you know, in general, we look to have major maintenance done by the city and then all the other improvements done by the tenant themselves, but I think I said that right?
Good evening, Simone McFarland with Community Development. So the total cost, we're still estimating what that will be, but right now, our estimates are 2.4, sorry, I'm thinking, almost $3 million for the improvements that will need to be done on that facility. And so last year, and this is just to bring it up to the standards, in good standard. And so last year, the council set aside $424,000 out of CDBG funds to go towards those improvements. This year, we're asking for additional funds out of this account, the 1.3. And then when you receive the new CDBG request in a couple of weeks, there will be an additional $800,000, or $744,000, approximately, out of CDBG funds that we'll be asking for, too. And in total, all of those funds will, should bring us up to what improvements need to be done on that facility to bring it in good repair. Now, that doesn't include the tenant improvement requirements that you, council directed us to negotiate with Home Again LA. And so we're still putting those together, and that looks like there'll be another large number. And when we go into negotiations, we've informed Home Again LA that we will be negotiating them to do their tenant improvements, and that we would come up and bring the building into good repair. That's still to be negotiated, but that's kind of where we're heading with that. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I'm just curious with the anticipated amount of money to be spent on, I mean, we're talking $3 million, maybe plus. Is it cheap or just to knock down a building and start from scratch? I mean, it sounds like it's...
No. If you look at, just for comparison sakes, when we bought the building at Front Street, where the Hollywood Piano Store is, we paid $5 million for that, and we paid less than what the appraised price was. So that kind of gives you a little bit of comparison. The other thing that we will be looking at is if we don't have enough funding out of all these, cobbling these resources together, we may end up having to reduce the scope of things that we would improve in that building. So say maybe we don't do the windows right now, and that would be phased in at a later date. So we do have a little bit of playing room, based on what's going to happen, because we don't, we haven't bid it yet. We don't know exactly what it's going to look like. We haven't even done the architectural plans yet, to see what the cost is going to be and what the improvements are going to contain.
But you will be back to council at some point.
Many times.
Yeah, and in truth, some of the, quite a few of the structures, if you've seen that site recently, are modular buildings, so there may be quite a bit of demolition, but the core of that site is the former fire station, and that's a more solid building. So it'll be a combination. Some of it may be torn down, removed, and then rebuilt.
Okay, thank you for that. I think those are the questions I have right now. Thank you.
You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for all these presentations and for your patience with sitting in the audience, going through all this with us. My first question is in regards to the refuse fund rates and sewer fund rates. It's just a quick question. The two slides that showed the monthly impact to single-family residents, the refuse fund rates was six percent and sewer fund rates is four percent. I'm curious, what would the impact be for multifamily buildings and people, and businesses on these? So are they impacted or are they, what would be the comps for those?
Good evening again, John Mullenar from Public Works. Our commercial and multifamily rates are competitive with the haulers, so yes, we have a six percent increase on multifamily. Commercial is a slight increase, as I explained earlier, we're reducing the rate slightly because we've implemented the organics and recycling. So yes, there's going to be a pass-through cost, I'm sure.
Okay, great.
But I can't tell you exactly how much that would be.
Right, okay, great. Thank you. And then my next set of questions is back to IT. Oh, you have your follow-up, go ahead, sorry.
Want me to answer your question for sewer?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that. Steve Walker, Assistant Public Works Director, wastewater. So yes, the four percent rate increase does also apply to multifamily, as you had asked, and the rate would go from twenty-two dollars and thirty-two cents per month to twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents per month. That's an increase of eighty-nine cents per month.
Okay.
Or about a little less than eleven dollars a year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm very eager to get to the IT questions. So mainly my questions are around data management and storage and standardization across departments. So could you just speak a little bit, just briefly, to those two topics, I mean, without going on too much about, you know, the details, but just generally your overarching plan for those two things?
Data management?
Uh huh, and standardization across departments.
Oh. Well, let me talk about data management first. You're not talking about physical storage, you're really talking about data workflows, management of data.
Yeah.
So what we're looking to do is actually start a data and analytics program where we can actually build a governance program and, and, and build the workflows to provide the kind of data that we need today to make more informed decisions. We don't have that today. The position for that is actually a part of the reorganization and we're looking to hopefully recruit and hire for that position, maybe in a couple of months, or less than a month, actually. So once we get the, the, the position hired, then we're going, really going to be starting from scratch. So we'll start to build our strategy, we'll start to build a new governance framework about how we're going to handle data and we'll start to actually build the workflows. It doesn't exist today. It's a part of our plan to do. I need to hire the right person to help us get there.
Great, thank you. And then for standardization across departments, what's the focus on that?
Well, so you'll often hear me with, you know, one-liner axioms that kind of define our strategy and one of our strategies is one city, one solution, one, one system. So we, we look to standardize all of our systems, all of our workflows across all of the departments of the city where it makes sense. There are cases where it doesn't make sense. For example, I, I like to talk about how we have maybe three different timekeeping systems in the city today and a couple of cases that's necessary because the timekeeping requirements for the fire department are very different than the timekeeping requirements for, say, Public Works. So we probably need two systems there, but there may be other opportunities for us to consolidate and we're always looking to consolidate where we can. We, when we're working to deliver new solutions for the city, you may hear us talk about PI planning, our program increment planning. We bring the entire city together to plan the entire portfolio, the entire technology portfolio for the entire city. So that forces standardization and it forces collaboration and engagement across all the departments. So it really helps us stay aligned across the entire city.
So what would you say would be the visible benefits of this effort of improving our data management collection and being able to retrieve it and standardization across departments? This is a big project. It's a big vision. What do you see will be the benefits down the road for the, for the city?
Try to answer that in a budget framework, since this is the budget.
Yeah, like saving money, saving money, financial benefits, I know, right? It could be like an hour long, that is true.
Yeah, otherwise it's kind of a separate item.
Yes, council member, you're setting me up because you're going to get me talking bits and bites here in a second, which, which you don't really want me to do.
Yeah.
Really standardization, standardization really helps us with efficiency, saving money, simplifying the work that we do. It really makes automating things a lot easier. So it's, and it, and it also allows us to support all of these things with a smaller team. See, if you're, if, if it's one solution that you're supporting for the entire city, you don't have to have five people supporting five different solutions.
Yeah. So would you say that it would reduce staff time needs around those processes and that the processes would be faster so to be able to do, to do the minimalist time?
Yes.
Great, wonderful.
Yes.
So it's worth the front-end, front-loading the, the cost to get these all set up and then the long-term benefits?
Oh, absolutely. And we often, we almost always do, you know, payback and return on investments or return on, on asset calculations to, 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 you know, really just to make sure that it makes sense that we're, we're making the investments that we're making.
Great, thank you. And then one fun question. So the 3-1-1 app just recently added the forestry capability.
Forestry, yes.
Yeah. What are the, what are the, this year's forecasts of what's going to be added to the app? And so we, because we have 263,000 for mobile 3-1-1 integrations, what's that going to look like?
Well, let me, let me look and see what I have in my notes. First, I'll say I, I know animal shelter, animal services are coming up next. That'll be in the very next release that we do.
Great.
Bear with me a second because I don't have the roadmap in front of me right now.
Yeah, if you can't find the details, that's fine, just like kind of, we're going to have a few different things added to it as we go along.
Yeah, I'm going to have to get back to you on that.
No worries, yeah.
But we've got, we've got a long list of features and functions there.
That's so exciting. That is so, so exciting. Well, great work to the IT team. I think that this is huge for our city, for the way that things are going to work and for cost savings and for staff sanity. So thank you very much for all the work that your team's done.
Sure, thank you.
And then I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor, on the CIP projects.
Sure, sure.
Okay. So I don't, is Marissa here? Okay. So one of the, one of the CIP projects, which I see made it through to the budget this year, is a Johnny Carson Park shade structure, which you know has been one of my projects that's been on my list for a while. So could you speak to that a little bit and, is this going to, still going to be a public art, a public art project? Is it going to be funded through public art funds? Can you just speak a little bit to that, please?
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, and council members, Marissa Garcia with Parks and Recreation. Yes, so the shade structure at Johnny Carson Park, we are looking to use Art in Public Places funds to fund that entire project, so that is a good use of restricted funds. So we're able to just leverage those dollars. So assuming the project gets approved, my staff will be moving forward in the summer to do a request for artists and move that project along.
That's wonderful news. Thank you so much for, this has been like, what, three years, I think, this, working this out, getting this going. So thank you so much for that. And that's, that's the structure, that's like the concrete platform that's at Johnny Carson Park and then we're going to put a thing over it.
Correct. That's the stage. So we'll, we'll have a shade structure. So we'll be, that stage will be, it could be better utilized or utilized during, during the summer months in the, the warm weathers.
Great, awesome. Thank you. And then I have a couple of questions about bike paths. So I see on here that there's the San Fernando Bike Way and a First Street Bike Lane project. So, Mr. Kreske, I'm, I'm curious, curious about that. So the San Fernando Bike Way, is that in partnership with the San Fernando Reconfiguration project? And maybe it's Mr. Berkman. And then the First Street Bike Lane is, oh, well, actually, let's just start with the San Fernando Bike Way. Is that in conjunction with the San Fernando Reconfiguration? Or is that separate?
It is not, council member. They are separate projects. The San Fernando Bike Way, while I get to the sheet here. So we're finalizing the documents, preparing approvals from the county and regional agencies, preparing bid documents and looking to commence construction starting in like June of 2024, probably be about a year of construction.
Which section of San Fernando is that on?
Well, it's connecting Chandler to the downtown metro station.
Wonderful. Great. That's beautiful. Great, thank you. And then the First Street Bike Lane, is that the one in front of the new project, the First Street project? Or no, where's that going to be at?
That is, right? Yeah, that's correct.
Is, is that partly funded by the development as well or is, I thought, I was, I was under the understanding that that was part of the plan, was to have them do the bike lane, but just with a little clarification on that.
Which, if I may ask?
First Street Bike Lane.
Thank you. Mr. Kreske?
Thanks.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So yes, First Street Bike Lane is, a portion of it is developer provided, most of it is city provided.
Okay.
The purpose is to add a protected bike lane from basically Grinnell and San Fernando by In-N-Out down, along First Street down to Verdugo.
Beautiful.
The portion, the city portion will be in-street protected, so it'll be in the existing curb-to-curb down in the travel lane with the, on the asphalt with the travel lanes, but will be buffered with vertical elements to protect cyclists from cars nearby. In front of the First Street Village project, however, they are proposing or will be constructing their portion at sidewalk level, so it's more protected. It's going to be up-level with the sidewalk, away from cars, protected by a curb. That's what we eventually want all of ours to be like, but we want to start with the in-street, but then if development happens, we can ask development to kind of fortify the city project and, and make it more, more protected, similar to what we did for the Avion development. So the First Street, the city portion will probably, well, the developers' portion in front of the building that's under construction now will be built first, but will be kind of inactive. The city's portion for the whole street will come in a little bit after that and then as the developer, developer builds its second phase, they'll tie their part into, to the city portion. So it's a little clunky because the development project's been on a very long track and then our project has come later, so we're trying to integrate them.
Okay. And are both directions on the same side of the street?
In this case, it's more of a, like a traditional bike lane. The southbound will be on the southbound side of the street, the northbound will be on the northbound side of the street.
Okay, so the, the development is just doing the part on the south?
Yes, so we'll be doing our portion also northbound, opposite the development.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sir.
Great, appreciate it. Councilmember Perez, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm so sorry to bring y'all back up again, but I also have a question about the refuse fees. Do we have, I know we mentioned the recycling increase and we shared that it, for commercial, that it was nominal and we shared the percentages. Do you have the numbers for what that is currently in this year and what it will be next year? I'm just very curious.
Hi, John Mullenar from Public Works again.
It was like thirty-three percent?
Yes, I have the numbers. Do I remember them? No. Well, are you, there's a multitude of different rates for every single bin, so I'm not sure.
The recycling ones for commercial.
Okay. Let me dig them up.
While you do that.
Sorry, I don't remember the slide number.
I always appreciate the people on staff who think they're not going to get called up, so they sit all the way in the back and then they're the ones who get called up. See, Fred's smart. He's right up front.
Sorry, I have, there's over fifty-one fees in, in refuse, so it's just hard to find. Yeah, it, are we, we're talking about bins or carts?
Carts.
Carts. So let's say a sixty-four gallon cart, which is the most common type, at least in residential. This year, it's going from fifteen to twenty dollars. And I actually don't have next year's, but it's going up, well, it, it should be going up another six percent on that, so.
Dollar twenty?
Thank you.
Thank you. That was my only question for you. I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
And then my other question is on the drug asset forfeiture. In there, it mentioned that night optic vision devices are a lease. I have a question about why that's a lease rather than a purchase of something that we own. I'm not sure who, I believe it's the chief.
That's him hanging it off to me.
Yep, yep. He was just getting up to get out of the way.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Courtney Paget with the Police Department. Yes, we do, the US Department of Navy offers a military surplus lease program. So what they do is they take their used but still operable night vision optics and they lease them to law enforcement, state and local law enforcement agencies at a reduced price. So we lease those on an annual basis at a cost of forty-two hundred dollars, which is much lower cost than it would cost us to actually buy that equipment ourselves. And if they become damaged, we can trade them in, they provide us a new one and so on and so forth.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Great. Now I want to know how much it is to buy one. That's got to be a lot. You good? Oh, that's it. Okay, great. Oh, oh, yes. Yeah, yeah.
One quick question. For Measure H, I know I missed it completely on the slides. Is there any Measure H funding information in here in the slides? Just to let us know what we receive in Measure H.
Hi there. We don't have a separate fund established for Measure H, so I do believe we get some Measure H funding annually, which is part of our grant from our general fund. I don't know if somebody's here from housing who could maybe speak to that.
Yeah, do we know how much we got this year or?
I'm not. I don't want to throw out a wrong number, so I'll allow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Marcus Gonzalez, Community Development Department. The Measure H funds that the city receives on an annual basis will always be based on twenty-twenty, uh, twenty, excuse me, the point-in-time count numbers. And this upcoming year for 2023, we're expecting to receive a little over three hundred thousand and the funds have not been awarded to the city yet. We plan on bringing that back to council so that the funds can be appropriated as part of the, as part of a budget.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up. We've applied for three hundred thousand or we expect to get three hundred thousand?
The, it's the latter. We expect to receive the three hundred thousand.
Gotcha. Okay, good.
If I could, you bring up Measure H. So, so, so we beg for that three hundred thousand and, and look for grants and things like that, but we also, you know, remit a check to the county for roughly nine, ten million dollars every year. So just want to...
Because that's not, so I mentioned Measure W, that was a, that's a parcel tax. Measure H is a sales tax and so we are the quarter, quarter cent, three-quarter cent?
Correct.
Quarter cent. We remit, you said nine million dollars?
Yeah, depending on our sales tax figures.
Eight to nine million. Back to the county on quarter cent sales tax.
Correct, and we do not get a local return.
There's no guaranteed return on that.
No guaranteed return, other than some, a few hundred grand.
Okay, so we can't have it as a line-out in budget like we do with Measure W?
We typically don't because we're never aware exactly of the amount. We could estimate, but usually they bring it back and have spent it, you know, we'll, we'll recommend expenditure.
Ms. McFarland, any follow-up?
I just wanted to add, as the city manager said, it's not a direct allocation. We have to get it through grant funding. And so every year, we go back and we ask for those grant funds again. And so there's no guarantee that we will receive anything or, that we are, we're hoping that we will.
And we have to apply with a project in hand, correct?
It doesn't necessarily have to be a project. It can be, we, we have to present what our project's going to be before we actually receive the funds.
Got it.
But we're told you're going to possibly receive X amount of dollars and then they ask what our projects are.
Okay, okay, great. Good?
I, for my colleague's benefit, I'm looking at, in our binders, it's the, the primary report related to the budget dated May nine, twenty twenty-three. I'm looking at Attachment One, Page Two, and if you're online, it's the, it's the same overview report. It's Attachment One, Page Two. I just wanted to take a look at this spreadsheet, and you let me know when you're there.
Absolutely, that's our budget matrix and five-year forecast.
Okay, well, I went to law school for a reason. Math and spreadsheets are not my strengths. I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. Now, that top line, projected spendable fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So, if I'm reading this correctly, and tell me if I'm wrong, as it stands right now, we have twenty-nine point five million dollars in unencumbered one-time funds available for expenditure.
That's what we estimate to have available at the end of this year. Obviously, the year hasn't closed yet. That's our estimate based on our projected revenues and assuming that we expend most of the budget.
Okay. So, some amount, probably fair to say more than a million dollars, somewhere in there, between one and twenty-nine we have right now.
Correct.
And then, as we go down this chart, this is where staff is recommending that we make certain strategic investments. So, our deposit to our one-fifteen trust, our additional contribution to CalPERS. Okay. So, when I look at that bottom line, if the estimate about our projectable fund balance at the top is accurate, and if we were to follow all of the staff recommendations to the T, am I correct in seeing here that we would have still, at the end of that, at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, nearly nineteen million dollars in unencumbered one-time funds available for expenditure?
That is correct. That is what is in the staff report, what we're projecting at the end of next fiscal year. So, assuming our revenues come in as projected, and our expenses go out as projected, we assume an eighteen-point, well, nineteen million dollar one-time available general fund cash balance at the end of the year.
Okay. My final question?
Sure.
Is, I just, budgeting one-on-one, we can't use these one-time dollars for recurring expenses, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, you want your recurring budget to be balanced on a recurring basis, right? Once you use it, it's gone, it's not then available for the next year's budget, right? So, you would want to use those one-time items for one-time purposes, right? In the past, we have utilized some of that cash to balance budgets when we've had deficits. So, if we were to enter a recession, for example, next year, it's nice to know that we do have some available cash. If our revenues don't meet expectations, and we're not looking at having to make any service cuts for the community, but of course, you know, that's a very nice cushion to have, nineteen million dollars on a two-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar budget.
And if we look at the following page, Attachment One, Page Three, it nicely outlines the approximately nine-and-a-half million dollars in one-time expenditures that staff is proposing, correct?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking at it.
I do read it.
Yes.
All right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a process question, so, and maybe this is for staff. So, in regards to the discussion papers, is now the time that we would, if we have any thoughts about, like, like adjustments or?
Yeah, with regards to discussion papers, earlier to discuss is always better. That way, by the end, we have ample time.
Okay.
So, yeah, if we want to do, well, so, real quick.
And I can bring the slides back up if you'd like.
Sure. So, we're good with questions on the standard budget, all of that stuff, refuse, sewer, okay? Uh, yeah, if we want, let's move into, we can do a little bit on the discussion papers. That way, we can give staff direction, and that way, when it comes back, that we have plenty of time. So, yeah, let's, um, let's move forward, we'll do some discussion paper conversation.
Mr. Mayor, you might want to take.
Who's yelling at me? Yes, oh.
Eleven o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
I move to continue meeting past eleven, Mr. Mayor.
One second.
Yeah? Show our hands? Okay, thank you.
I'm almost there.
All right, Councilmember Takashi, you want to leave us off?
Sure, yes. Um, first of all, I want to thank staff for the fast turnaround on the additional discussion papers that we requested, and the depth of the information was very useful, and I appreciate your, your, your information on that. So, one of the items that I had requested looking into was the Emergency Medical Services Membership Program, the one where you automatically get EMT services without having to pay out-of-pocket. And it was just, you know, it was, share with us that an opt-out program is not something we can do for legal reasons, but I'm wondering if we can, as part of this attention on this, if we can look at ways to increase the, the number of folks in our community who are registered for it, and just thought about how we can potentially maybe add it to our, when new customers sign up for utilities in Burbank, that it's one of the questions that gets asked on the, on the utilities, or just some other ways that we can try to increase the number. Yeah, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Eric Garcia, Fire Chief, and in relation to question, Councilmember Takashi, we can certainly, I know, speaking from the Fire Department side of things, we can certainly look to do all we can to be able to promote the, the program that way, have it on our website, social media, things along those lines, as far as the, the other items and the like, to be able to potentially look at what that would be able to do, we need to incorporate conversations with water and power as far as utility and the bill and so forth.
To that point, I'm wondering if there can be kind of a permanent line item in the Currents magazine, just like at the bottom saying, you know, if you want to sign up for the EMT, because people, most people read the Currents or have a regular, because not everybody's looked at social media, not everybody looks at the website, and that's one kind of consistent way that folks can see that that's available. Maybe even do a PR on the awesome service. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I was thinking that today, as a matter of fact, I was on hold for our office, and one of the messages was, did you know that you can sign up for the, the services? And I was like, wow, they put it on there, whether you had it or not before, but it did get my attention. So, that's a great way of, when we put people on hold, that they can listen to that recording message, because it got my attention right away. I assumed that you guys put it on there because of our discussion last week, but it might have been there all along.
It's actually been on on our, for certain.
I started paying attention to it, so that was great.
But yeah, we certainly opened, exploring all the options of being able to put it out there.
Thank you. Yeah, such a wonderful program, and to see some, I mean, I'm glad that there's several thousand of people signed up for it, but I would love to see a good, like eighty percent, I mean, it would be great to see a huge majority of folks signed up for it to benefit to the community.
Sure, and just to, to add to, Councilmember Takashi, just to, what the subscription or membership program is, is not solely just the, that monetary amount for your participation covers your EMS fees, is that your insurance will also be billed, and it is that nothing would come out of pocket beyond that. So, just for clarification sake.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, for clarification. Thank you so much.
Could I, could I have a follow-up on that?
Yeah.
We have a lot of senior homes and rest homes, nursing homes. Are we doing outreach to the facilitators and administrators of those buildings and saying, hey, would you like us to talk to your residents, or we can offer, like, I understand there's outreach to individuals, but we have a lot of folks that would use this service in very specific locations, so are we doing that kind of outreach to those centers?
We do have outreach, it does get out to each of those facilities, in specific to the EMS membership program. I can research that, Mr. Mayor, and make sure that, as we do go about that, that we can include that with that.
Yeah, yeah, because I know there's, you know, there's onsite facilities managers and property managers and senior homes, the senior living centers, the rest homes, all of the nursing homes. If we talk to them and staff and those folks, maybe it'll help us get people enrolled, you know?
Yeah.
We'll certainly make that note, ensure that we do add that, include that with our outreach.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And while, this next item, I believe it was Councilmember Mullins or Perez who added it, the addition of a legislative analyst. Yeah, the options that were given, I really liked the option of expanding the services of the current legislative, so I just wanted to share that, it's my preference, and see what the other councilmembers thought.
Sorry, which one?
The second one here on the page two, addition of legislative.
Oh, for housing?
No, yeah, no, no. A legislative analyst to, yeah, the legislative analyst to give us more upfront information about pending legislation, and what's potentially coming down the pipeline, and keeping us informed of things that we could support or oppose or have an opinion on. And then, in the discussion paper, it mentioned several options, and one of the options was to expand the current legislative contractor, give them more responsibility versus hiring an entire staff member for it.
That was actually Councilmember Perez. I, yeah, I was looking for a staff member, but you came up with that idea, and I think it's great, having to add, expanding their service, I think it's something good to try, so that was a really creative idea. Thank you.
Thank you, and I felt like it was a fiscally responsible thing to do, given it's seven thousand dollars. And it's also something we're already contracting this very capable and knowledgeable provider to do.
Um, yeah, I like, I like that. Yeah, I also don't feel it should be a whole new person, if there's a way to find staff time, is that, I mean, that, that would be the option, right? The, I'm looking at my city manager, like, what?
Certainly, hiring a new staff person, which is a lot more than adding, supplementing the contract, and I think there's some good things in there with the supplemental work.
And that's supplementing the contract with our current state legislative analyst.
Correct, and I think we try it for a year, and, you know, we reevaluate at that point. It's, as far as the cost-benefit analysis, seven grand versus a hundred and fifty grand, I say we try it for a year. And I'd also, you know, once we finish this item, I think it might be wise to kind of be a little bit more organized, and maybe we go back to just kind of.
Go in order?
Go in order. And so, staff is trying to take notes, and I know you guys are all, you know, shuffling paper, and we'd all like to get out of here, so, so, yeah, so if we could go back to Slide Two and kind of go, and again, we do not have to make decisions, but it would be great if you did have decisions, or there's some general consensus, we could keep moving forward.
Okay, great. Uh, okay, so we'll, we'll work off, because I was working off the staff report, but let's work off the slide, because that's what everyone saw. Mr. City Attorney, the Senior Assistant City Attorney position, we do not currently have someone in that position, is that true or no?
We have seven or eight of them. This is an addition.
Oh, you want an addition? Oh, I.
Yes.
Addition of instead of additional. All right, okay, what's, and then never mind. What's the, sell me on this, what do you need, another Senior Assistant City Attorney?
Uh, well, you need one, because you have a very ambitious work program. So, things like firearms regulation, the human trafficking.
Hey, those are mine.
Yes, they are.
Okay, okay.
So, it's really our office, as the paper briefly says, I'm one of few departments that hasn't had an increase overall in staffing in over ten years, but the city's programs continue to expand, and we touch nearly everything that comes to council. We assist all fourteen departments, or I guess I'm one of the fourteen departments, and we are increasingly becoming a bottleneck to items moving forward, both the expenditure of an eight-hundred-million-dollar budget, because all that money, except for a few very small contracts, also moved through the office into the division that I'm requesting this additional attorney. And then, there's key areas where the city has tremendous workload, like disciplines, and Public Records Act requests are just ballooning across, and every department have people working very diligent, but they also have to work with our office, and.
So, is this request to take someone who is not, who's just an Assistant City Attorney, move them up to a senior position, or are you requesting an entirely new?
This is a brand-new position.
Okay, okay, all right. I mean, you got me, I'm sold, what are you, yeah?
Yes, I'm definitely supportive of moving forward. I know we've been throwing in a lot of things to the city attorney and asking him to come back with a lot of agenda items, so he does need that position, so I'm in support of it.
Okay, great. He's got to feel my things, so, by all means.
I'm in support of it too, and in fact, I asked, are you sure you don't need two? Because I mean, there's so much going on, and I understand it's, you know, it's a budget issue, but I do, you know, yeah. And we also have quite a lot of litigation going on this year, districting and stuff, so I definitely, I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer for at least one more.
Let us know mid-year if you need a second one.
It's a, it's a, it's a difficult choice you have to make on all of your budget priorities. You have, there's another paper we'll get to. But we, we have a way of offloading our litigation to outside council. We cannot do that with our prosecution, and it's not the best use of the city's funds to try to offload transactional work, because our labor rate is about a third of our private attorneys, or a quarter in some cases, are outside counsel, actually, in some cases, a fifth or a sixth of the rate of some of our outside counsel. So, it's, it's efficient use of the city's dollar for these, in particular, the departmental stuff, because that workload is really a sustained workload, versus a case that are, you know, we have low cases during the pandemic, was one of our all-time lows.
And you can expand and contract how much you're hiring based on that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, we did the legislative analysts for the, okay, and then let's move on, expansion of homeless outreach services, a hundred thousand to a hundred and fourteen thousand, what would that go towards?
There's two options there. I could have Community Development answer any questions.
Yeah, just give us a quick.
They're roughly about the same cost, but they're, they're slightly different.
All right.
Thank you. I'll start, and Mr. McFarland can add more. Marcus Gonzalez, Community Development Department. The two options we included would be the first request from Councilmember Mullins to look at exploring the Street Plus expansion, which would be a contract with Street Plus to add a third homeless service liaison to the existing program. The other option we presented is a contracted sole proprietor who would come on board, hire, we would, the city could hire and will interview and hire the person that meets the criteria that we establish to the job description for that position. So, it would be a little more than the Street Plus program, because with Street Plus, you already have some of the costs factored into what program we have, but with the sole proprietor, there comes some additional costs that they'll have to absorb, such as insurance and travel.
Was there any discussion as to just hiring someone part-time, or is that job specifically, you got to have a full-time person?
I can say that for outreach, for our outreach to be more effective, we need a full-time outreach, outreach teams out in the field. It's also harder to find part-time employees.
Okay, this is, Councilwoman Mullins, as you're asking.
This is part of our goals that we discussed, to reduce our homelessness population and do more outreach. I know staff had requested two additional analysts in the budget that were included as to those position, we're, we're looking at grants and additional funding for the outreach homeless program, but the discussion, what we've had in the past as far as setting our goals, and then also listening to people in the community, that we do need to be more proactive, we need to have more visibility in the community, and trying to evaluate the cases and assist the individuals who are in need, whether it's mental health, or refer them to homeless shelters, or find out what their cases are. So, this is something, I believe it's really important, and it matches with the goals that we have set for ourselves.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't disagree with my colleague. I guess my question for staff is this, what are the metrics of success? What I mean by that is, I think it's great, yes, we definitely need more resources to, to, to assist our unhoused population, but what is an extra position going to do? What specifically are we looking to expand? What is the problem we're trying to solve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director. The metrics are contained in the recently adopted Homelessness Action Plan that the council adopted, including the one, I think, Vice Mayor, that you proposed, which was a pretty significant reduction in the number of homeless, was it fifty? Fifty percent by year five. So, that, we would use the, the metrics that the council asked for. Remember, we brought it forward, and the council wasn't satisfied, so we would use those metrics. The one that sticks out is the fifty percent reduction.
Thank you, and I'm not expecting an answer tonight, it's more feedback. I'm all for expanding our services to compassionately treat those who are unhoused in our community. My understanding is that we have three contracts, so we have the downtown Burbank P-Bid, so I would want to know, right now, we have service Monday through Friday, eight AM to eight PM, and then eleven AM to eleven PM on the weekend. Are we going to be talking about expanded overnight hours, or we could similarly, I don't think we would probably do anything with the second contract, which is through our Transportation Division, and already provides twenty-four-seven coverage. Perhaps it would be under our two homeless services. expanded overnight hours? Or we could similarly, I don't think we would probably do anything with the second contract, which is through our transportation division and already provides 24/7 coverage. Perhaps it would be under our two homeless services liaisons who provide citywide coverage. But that's really what I'd like to know is, are we, by having this extra position, going to aim to have citywide coverage 24/7? Because if so, that's something I could get behind. But I guess, I look at it, it's an extra position, but what exactly are they going to do?
It would not be 24 hours. That, we would probably have to look at what that, what that would cost. You might add another team and not just an individual, right, at 24 hours, but
Okay. I want to hear what my colleagues have to say. I support it in concept, but before I approve a budget with it, I'd want to flush that out a little bit more, because I just don't want an extra person who's sitting around. I really want someone who's there to deal with someone who's in crisis overnight, for example. I want to kind of see how we're going to really expand our service and not duplicate what we already have.
And we don't have that overnight.
I have a follow-up question. And I will say, I'm going to put on my provider hat a little bit here. To the Vice Mayor's point, it's, it's a little dangerous sometimes to have staff overnight and can be more costly. I would never ask that of my case management team. To the other point about making them part-time, it is impossible to find somebody who wants to do this part-time and the pay is not good. It's impossible to find staff. Full-time, the costs are about, you know, where staff mentioned. My, my concern and my question for staff would be, is our current Street Plus team inundated? Is, what does their caseload look like? How are they doing to warrant the addition of a staff member?
Street, Street Plus does not have a necessary caseload like you would normally determine when you had a social worker, where you would be assigned 10 people and that would be your caseload. What we do is we cover the entire city. So certain, that caseload may change depending on who's coming into the city, who's going out of the city, who are we helping? How many people are we trying to track? Because our numbers change every single day. We, a lot of times, we'll find somebody new that's in the city and we'll approach them. And then the next day, they're gone, or they've gone to a different place. And then there's a new, another new person that's in there. So the caseload really changes all of the time. They are pretty busy, because what we do, one of the things that we expect out of them is constant touches. So you have what you consider to be 10 people that you want to see that day. And you may, we may want them to see the same 10 people the, every other day. So if they have more time, then what we expect is more touches. And the touches are what really turns people around, that constant interaction, because you have to catch them at the right time to be able to accept services and help them.
So do you first see that an extra position would equal more touches? Is that something that you feel is necessary at this time, given the current staffing? Because like I shared, I don't know that I would agree with expanding hours of service, you know?
Councilmember, if I can just add to that, because I see your point. I guess here's, I'll just be very blunt, given the late hour. I like, I love it in concept, but it sounds like we're adding a position to look like we're doing something. I want to see, what are we actually going to get out of this? Maybe we hear from Streets Plus and say, we're able to make 40 contacts an hour, but with an extra position, we could double that. Like, that's really what I want to know, because I want to be effective in how we use those dollars. Because what we really need is, is a shelter.
We can come back at the next meeting and bring you more data. I will add that one of the things that we expressed when we approved the homeless plan at the beginning, was that we had high aspirations and not enough funding for people to achieve all those aspirations that we set. They were goals that we wanted to do. And so this would help us get to some of those goals a lot quicker. And if we don't have anybody in the next five years, we may not achieve those goals.
And, and if I may add, I mean, you bring really good points, because we want to see the results. What's the end results? And some of the conversations we had, and Councilmember Perez, you was there, you were there at the meeting with the Magnolia Park folks, that the merchants, most of them expressed concerns, and especially Betty Portos, about the amount of homeless individuals that, you know, show up and hang around her business and other businesses on Magnolia. The Street Plus staff was there. They were very welcoming to see Street Plus individuals, and they were engaging and having conversations with them. And given the limited staff that they have, they cannot be all over the city. So one of the things that I think we discussed at our goal session, and we've been talking about it for a while, and setting the goals for staff, is how do we engage more with our homeless population? And they can't be at everywhere. I know at Metro, also, there is a lot of homeless individuals that show up there. We can't have staff running there and leaving the downtown area.
They'll bring it back. I mean, yeah.
Yeah. So I want to provide, you know, for the explanation that the reason of having to ask for this is a lot of the discussions that we've had, and also listening to the merchants and listening to residents, that they need to have that visibility.
Yeah. So just flush that out, bring it back.
Definitely see your point. And to that point, that's why I would like to see where are we putting this person? Is it for Magnolia Park? Is it for, you know, so I'd love that clarification from staff.
And I think there's consensus that it's a Street Plus person. I think that's, we've seen success with them. So let's keep it with that.
We can bring that information back.
Great. Thank you. Yeah.
Just a follow-up. I wanted to clarify too, that I think that we were talking about adding, the difference between Street Plus and adding a staff, but in the staff report, it's the difference between Street Plus and having our own contractor that the, that the city hires. Like, so our own version of Street Plus. Just want to make sure to clarify that we're not
Right. We would, we would recreate the very nature of what Street Plus versus just adding more.
Got it, got it.
So yeah, let's just stay with what ours already working.
Got it, got it. Okay.
Moving on, library services, creation of an additional administrative analyst position to enhance sister city activities. Do we have enough sister city activities for an entire additional administrative analyst one position? That seems like a lot, right? How many sister cities we got? Three, four, five? Five. Can you list them for me real quick? You know them all offhand.
Good evening. Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services. I can list them for you in order.
All right, go for it.
Solness Sweden, 1960. Enchan Korea, 1961. Haberoni Botswana, 1975. Oda Japan, 1983. Anaretto Italy, 2022.
Awesome. Awesome. That was impressive. That was impressive. She didn't even look down at her notes. That was off the top of her head.
We don't have very many sister city activities that we do right now. The purpose of the position would be if council wishes to expand our program. So right now, there isn't, there never has been in the whole history of the program in Burbank, there's never been a position to focus on it. So people are just, library staff are just here and there, trying to, trying to manage what we can. There's the community group, the Burbank Sister City Committee, that has, does a lot of volunteer work around the student exchanges every summer. They have no capacity to go beyond that. The staff has no capacity to go beyond that. So last year, when there was the request to add the fifth sister city, it came up that if we wanted, we can add as many sister cities as we want, but if we want to do activities with them, we really need a person. Now, the work within the sister city program, because there might be some activities that happen at different times of the year, it might be a little bit less certain times of the year and a little more others. We certainly have, we have some other areas where we have need at the library that this person could also contribute to, to specific areas. We've identified our social media and volunteer management. And those would fit in really well, because they would support the sister city program as well.
Can I, can I offer a different solution? I know the sister city program, the, the committee is a volunteer position. Would it not just be much cheaper for us to send a staff member to their meetings and just help them put together programs? And then they can give it to us and we can fund it? I mean, $93,000 for a whole job seems a bit much, because we only have five cities right now. And my, my idea would be, let's just support the current volunteers. Maybe we create a small funding mechanism where we're helping them out. Because they want to come up with stuff too. It's just, there's no assistance. So is, when, when this comes back, if, if, if council agrees, two options. One, let's lay out what $93,000 would get us. But then let's get a second tier where it's just, we assign a staff member, or maybe we give a grant donation to this committee for a little bit of funding for them to come back to us and, and bring ideas.
Sure. I can bring something back, but I will let you know, we do send someone to the sister city committee, committee meetings right now.
Oh.
Because there's a lot of interaction for those exchanges. There are parts of it that the city has to be involved with. And the other thing, the nature of the sister city organization, is that virtually everyone who participates in it is the parent of a child who's traveling.
Right.
So there is extremely high turnover. There is almost no institutional knowledge. So we are serving, the library staff are serving as the institutional knowledge, the training in everything from how to put together an agenda and run a meeting, to how to organize the trips and coordinate all of the elements. Every year, we're already doing all of that. Their membership has not been growing. And
So they're
The future of the program, the future of the program is not certain. So I'm not sure money would be enough to give them the capacity to do more.
The committee, the committee they have currently, how are they, is it all volunteer from the, 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 so is there a possibility? I know we make appointments to a bunch of different boards and commissions. Would they be open to having an official appointee from us, from this body, to be on their staff? So we have a permanent volunteer who stays with it?
Well, that would run the risk of turning it into a Brown Act, so city organized committee.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two questions for you, Ms. Goldman. You mentioned a minute ago that the, this person could potentially also serve as a volunteer coordinator. Do you currently at the library have a volunteer coordinator?
We currently have a staff member who has many responsibilities, and this is a small one. And similarly, you know, we have, as you know, as one of our former volunteers, we have a couple hundred volunteers at the library. We are able to bring people in, give them work and that, and track their hours, but we don't really have a comprehensive program. And that's been a long goal of ours for a long time. Oh, many areas of our work, we see the future ability to provide the level of service that's needed as being volunteer-based, particularly with one-on-one assistance for things like
Yeah.
the adult learning, technology training, job training, and areas like that.
So I'm wondering if this position could be both, you know, explicitly both a sister city liaison and, and assistant to the, to the board, and a volunteer coordinator, which is, you know, from my experience as a volunteer, that would really help the, the library's system.
Yeah. I mean, if they can do others' jobs, I mean, I
I think those two
My problem was I just read it's, that this is all they're doing. And I'm like, there's not going to be enough to do.
Could we potentially add, maybe just kind of clarify that potential addition to their responsibilities? And my second question is, in the staff report, it mentioned something, a kind of cool idea of, of the sister city liaison or staff member communicating with the other cities with, and potentially even visiting them, with the intention of learning from them for ideas of how to, specifically around sustainability, environmentalism. And I think that's an excellent idea of having partner cities around the world that are potentially, you know, I, it's good to get ideas from folks, the cities that are nearby, but across the world, even cooler, that have like different international ideas for sustainability and environmentalism. So I think adding that, I mean, that in the staff report was great, but it was kind of almost like a side comment. I would obviously kind of more front and center, like that's kind of the purpose too of it, is things like that where this, the volunteers on the board just cannot do that kind of, that kind of liaison. And also to have that like level of gravitas too, when they're working with the other cities too.
Sure. And this is a critical time, in addition to having our new sister city, that there's a lot of energy around coming up with some activities. Since that memo was written, we have found out that one of our normal student exchanges, the visitors from Enchan will not be coming this summer, because they were unable to recruit enough students to travel this year. They're very interested in us sitting down together and talking about other ways that we can work together as sister cities. That's been one of our strongest relationships for many years. So just being able to think through the options, have those, you know, kind of staff-to-staff level conversations. This would be really the perfect time to be able to launch into something like that.
Yeah. And one more, I, one more thought too. So now that we have, you know, Zoom technology, and, and we have actually regular meetings with them and group meetings, that would be really cool. I mean, the board could do that for sure, but, but having this like high level skill set in that negotiation would be really, really great, I think, addition to, to the
So when it comes back, just flush out the rest of the jobs that this $93,000 is going to do.
Yeah. I think that the description doesn't do it justice of what it could be. Yeah, that's a great idea though.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, slide three. We'll get through these real quick.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend either we, we wrap up the, these two one times and then be done for the night, since the rest of them are informational.
Oh, right.
Or we just be done now and we'll come back. It's, it's up to you guys, whether you want to
Let's do real quick, number three. Let's, City Attorney's Office, Landlord-Tenant Dispute Resolution Program. That one seemed tough.
Can I speak to that, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
I know he didn't request it.
Go for it.
You're a lawyer. What do you got? So look, I like mediation, but the reality is it's non-binding. Parties don't have to participate in it. And in a lot of ways, you have one party that says, go pound sand. There's no recourse for that. And as they outlined in the memo, it can actually put a party at disadvantage if they're not exercising their other rights. So rather than, I guess I should, I'd be curious to hear what you all think. I'm not opposed to mediation, but here's, I think, where I see the bigger problem. When I look at Attachment One, Page Three, I look at a budget, and I think the budgets reflect the values of your community. We're spending $1.4 million to develop a specific plan for the Rancho, which is critical. What I don't see is, we've been hearing for weeks now about we have tenants who are at risk of eviction. And it's not even normal time, because we have all the eviction protections that have been lifted across the region, countywide. So you're going to see more evictions in the next six to 12 months than you probably would see any other time. Why don't we have something in this budget to offer assistance to them? We should absolutely be talking about rent stabilization and eviction protections. But here's the reality, nothing that we do, no compromise that we strike, or no decisive action that we take is going to happen for probably a couple of months, realistically. And it doesn't help anyone that we've heard from recently. I think we have, what did I say, almost $19 million in one-time funds available. And I think we have a roadmap to provide at least a pilot program for the next year to help people who need help right now. In your informational item, Councilmember Takahashi, about the ESG program, which unfortunately doesn't pan out for us, there was a reference to the fact that we used $667,000 in ARPA funds at the height of the pandemic, administered by Home Again LA, to offer assistance to renters who are in relief. I don't see why we couldn't do something similar right now. I talked to Albert Hernandez today. They're on board. They're willing to work with us and have that conversation. We have the funding. We might not be able to prevent people from being displaced, but we can certainly do more to help them land on their feet than simply say, enjoy that one-month relocation assistance. And to anyone out there who thinks, well, this doesn't sit right with me, there's no out-of-pocket cost to property owners. So I cannot see one good argument against it. So to me, I just feel like if we fail to put in place a program like that, what the message we're sending to our tenants is, you really are on your own and we don't care about you. So we've got to do something here.
My question to you, City Attorney's Office put 150 to 348 for the dispute resolution. So ballpark, I'm just hitting in the middle there, maybe 250, we earmark for this to start off with, or?
I mean, I was going to say half a million, just based on the fact that we doled out $667,000. And if you figure for each household, let's say, this would obviously need to be flushed out in the course of staff communications with Home Again, but maybe you say, in addition to the property owner's one-month relocation assistance, you can apply and get up to two additional months through this program. So at least they have three months. That might sound like a lot, but that might, might begin to cover first and last month's rent and relocation costs, true moving costs. And that's at least a little bit closer to equity and parity. And it's not like we don't have the resources to provide for our community.
For the sake of, of, you know, think about this numerically. We keep calling it relocation assistance, relocate. It is literally the cost of your rent, one month of your rent, which for most people is not the cost of current rent at this time. It is the cost of whatever increase they got last year, as allotted by the law. That might be 10%. If you have a landlord that's very nice and forgiving, it's not 10%. It's lower, but it's still not what cost of living or what current average housing cost right now. So something to think about.
All right. Can we, yes?
So two separate items, and we'll talk, I think you bring a good point, but the ongoing mediation, obviously, this is not going to ever go away. We still have our landlord commission.
Right.
Who needs assistance to, based on what we heard at last meeting and a couple of weeks ago as well, that I believe there's a lot of people that, that suggests that they don't have a lot of faith in our landlord commissions, which I think, you know, again, they're volunteers, they're trying to do their job, but they might need that additional help. I know the city attorney, we're approving an additional position. We discussed that having maybe an attorney to attend the meetings, to keep calm and understand how they operate. So to attend the meetings to keep calm and understand how they operate. So I, I still think whether we, we don't have to do it internally and hire a mediator, but we can definitely utilize outside services on contract basis, one-time funding. We can see if that would work in, in assisting. I know it's a, mediation is actually, yes, it's, it's not guaranteed, and people don't have to sit at the table, but at least it's a try to assist the landlord commission and assist future individuals who would be having issues. It's nothing more or less but trying to make the program a whole program so people have faith in it.
Well, let, well, we're not voting on anything now. So yeah, let's bring, let's bring the mediation option back, and then let's look at something between
And more outside, if there is a, I, I saw some recommendations in looking on outside.
So, so if I could just say, mediation is something that happens between the tenant and the landlord. And I specifically didn't discuss, it wasn't clear, actually, several of us that listened, some people thought it was as assistance to the landlord-tenant commission, but I don't think that would work because the mediator needs to figure out, the landlord-tenant commission becomes a fourth party. So there's a mediator, there's the tenant, and there's the landlord. And the question is whether the tenant and the landlord can reach an agreement on a dispute, or is even willing to come to the table. The landlord-tenant commission would not be productive because it's for the mediator, you hire a professional mediator to do that. And the mediator, and I put this in my paper, needs to have an understanding of the law so that they, one, can reinforce that the parties need to not use this as a substitute for what their legal rights are, but number two, can understand the consequences of their failure to agree. You know, so when, when the city engages in mediation, it's oftentimes a retired judge or a professional lawyer mediator, and all of the parties understand and are, and are on equal footing. And in this case, the parties aren't necessarily on equal footing. So I give it, I'm not sure if I put it in there directly, I give it less than a 50/50 success rate, because it, in many cases, it may only be the tenant that perceives there's a problem. And how do you get the landlord to the table, or maybe only the landlord? But, but the mediator wouldn't be there to advise. My office would be there to advise on the Brown Act. We also have other work to do that we will, you know, in, in the budget, there's another line item that we discussed briefly last time for $50,000. It was a ballpark number that I just kind of pulled out of the air, to get us started with a study session and tenant protection ordinances. And I think we can make more progress forming our own laws and, and resetting the relationship and the restrictions and be more protective than AB 1482, once we all understand what that is. And then my office, with, with some additional resources that we've already discussed, we can help the landlord-tenant and the housing staff. It may end up being more ambitious than the resources we've given, but I view that as different than mediation, because what we're talking about is giving more structure to the landlord-tenant, maybe formalizing some of how they handle cases. And I see that as different than, than the mediation. Dollar for dollar, 50% of this money might not have a measurable outcome, going back to the metrics.
Right.
Mediation is very difficult to measure. It can help parties that are already kind of exchanging offers and really far, really far apart, because in court, you're already at the table. Both parties have to show up, or you get a default judgment. In the landlord-tenant context, it's not that clear-cut.
And I, I was, even when I started this, I was hesitant to move forward, because just the previous cases, I mean, in the staff report, there was one city that had it and then got rid of it. So, yeah, I
Yeah, I mean, we could give it, we could give it a try, and that's why we have the one-time funding option in there. But even our, our, the, the most active housing rights group, one of the most active housing rights groups, they don't have the capacity. They would actually want to see a proposal, and it could take us months to even find a service.
All right, well, we're not voting on it yet, so thank you for that input. But to the Vice Mayor's point, I'd love to see a second thing come back.
If I could.
Yeah.
It seems like the Vice Mayor has a discussion paper that he wants to
Yes.
To talk about. I, I just, that's what I'm sensing. I, I don't know, but that's
I, I would very much love to see a discussion paper on a one-year pilot, using our one-time funds to assist our tenants. And I can provide any other direction, but I probably gave you more than enough.
But that's a rent stabilization fund.
Yeah, I guess it would, it would be. It'd be, it would be the
Rental assistance.
Technically, it's relocation.
Relocation assistance fund.
Right. Thank you for the catch. Yes, that is what it would look like. I'm just throwing out 500,000 as a number, but the need could be greater. It could be less. I don't know, but I'm gonna assume probably greater.
All right. And then you had one last thing. I wanted to get to the last thing. Go ahead.
Yeah, but I'm gonna give my two cents. So, based on this discussion, right, again, as, as the person who has experienced mediation, I have to tell you, it is a 50/50. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, and it is very hard to do so with somebody who is not a skilled attorney in, in this. So I, I'm very hesitant on this item, and I'd love to table it for more discussion. And, and I think this item is a response to a lot of what we've been seeing lately, which I think is good and is important. And, you know, I'm not sure, certainly this is the time, but this discussion on, on all of these items, I can help, this situation has led me to a question on our current budget. We've discussed a lot about, on this council, about being proactive, not reactive, and many of the ways that we're responding to the issues that our tenants have brought to us, right? Our Vice Mayor is proposing a creative solution, which is its own discussion paper on what we can do to help the folks currently in, in these situations, folks that are currently going to face eviction, right? I would like to ask my colleagues, you know, based off this discussion paper, might lead to another one, not sure where this will be placed, but to think about the fact that this, we are reacting to this issue right now, this one. We are not going to look at tenant protections or AB 1482 for, until the next fiscal year at this point. By then, how many more buildings, how many more people are gonna come before us? That study session, that look at those desperately needed discussions around tenant protections are not gonna come in time. So I would like to propose to, you know, and with our city attorney looking into the feasibility of this, can I get a first-step report or something on a budget amendment for this fiscal year to include the study session in this fiscal?
So that's off-topic.
Okay.
But there is an agenda item at the end for additional discussion items. But if it's about this year's budget, we should probably have that request for an agenda item later.
Then just food for thought.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, Burbank Historical Society, what was their initial ask?
$10,000.
Okay, great. Let's keep it at 10.
We, we have three options.
Yeah.
That we match it up to 5,000, we give them 5,000, or we give them 10,000.
Oh, matching. All right. I just say we give them the 10,000. They've been doing, all right, we'll, we'll vote it in at the end. We'll, it's late, it's late. I don't see any reason why we need to play games with those guys. They're just, um, so no.
It's just matching to give encouragement to do some fundraising.
I know, but it's like dangling a carrot and
They actually were very open to that idea.
Mr. Mayor, I guess my question for staff is, do you need the direction tonight about which option to pursue?
You know, if, if, if you could come to consensus quick, yeah. And if not, we could
I would, I would prefer just give them the 10. I mean, the matching stuff is great if it's like a drive and they're all day calling, you know, like, like NPR does or something, but I, they need the funds. They're gonna do the whole thing. Is that, what do you guys?
I, I, I actually had a conversation with Don, and I suggested the matching, and he was very much open to it. I, I do wanna give them the money, but part of it is to get the word out about who they are and start having people making contributions to the Historic Society.
Okay.
And he was really open to it. And I'm very happy to, you know, approve, move forward now unless staff know we'll give him five, or up to 10,000, whatever they, they raise, fundraise, and we give him the matching up to the 10,000.
Matching up to 10,000.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they do 10,000 fundraising, we'll give them 10. But if they do five, we'll give them five.
Yeah, I mean, we had just have matching up to 5,000, but, but
Let's, let's do matching up to 10. Let's do matching up to 10. That's fine. If they, they raise it, they raise it. Okay, give them incentive. Yeah? Okay, great.
You, you could think it over and
All right, we'll come back. All right, okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Becker. We're gonna have more of this, obviously, in the next couple of weeks. Anything else? Final thoughts?
Just a quick recap from what I picked up here. So we are going to, I heard consensus to include the senior assistant city attorney and the $7,000 for expanding the legislative advocacy group. We're gonna come back with more data on the homeless outreach for Street Plus and the sister city. And we'll come back with a further discussion on the landlord-tenant and another discussion paper for 500,000 for the pilot program for relocation assistance. And we'll add the $10,000 for the, up to $10,000 for the Burbank Historical Society in one-time funds. So that's what will be in the next budget presentation that we give you at the, at our public hearing.
Okay, great. I love it. Okay.
No more of me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. Sorry for the late hour. All right, let's go through everything else real quick. Report on your committee assignments. I did not have any. Did anyone have any committee assignments in a week? Yeah? Councilmember Takahashi, you wanna start? Go ahead.
Some of us are still working.
I mean, they can't, the people at home can't hear.
Rowdy crowd.
Mr. Mayor, are we ready?
Yeah, go, go ahead.
All right. So I had, and since the last meeting, I had three committee assign, uh, three committee assignments. So Thursday, May 11th, I did the, I went to the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission as their liaison, and they are still in process of figuring out how to continue with their program while also complying with the Brown Act. So keeping a close eye on that, and I encourage folks to listen. We don't, we don't record that one. You know what? I just, if you have interest in it, let me know, and I'll give you kind of a heads up on what's going on there. At that same evening, Parks and Rec Board, and they had some lovely presentations for a couple softball teams who did really well in their competitions. That was kind of cool to see. And then lastly, last night, I was at the sustain, Ms. Perez and I, Councilmember Perez and I were at the Sustainable Burbank Commission, where they continue to do lots of great work and had a successful resource, event resource, what was it called? Resource Festival?
Go Green.
Go Green, yes. It was amazing. And they're doing good work there. So I'll let, I'll let Councilmember Perez add more to that. But those are what were my three assignments. Thank you.
All right, you've been named. You got tagged.
I also went to sustainability. It was great. They have a lot of wonderful discussions going on. They talked a little bit about the upcoming Plastics Ordinance. I'm really grateful to staff. It was great to hear the progress that staff has been making on that. And then I also went to our Board of Library Trustees meeting. They had a great discussion on book bans and what that's looking like for libraries in general, and our library as well.
I went to the Transportation Commission meeting, and they discussed the bicycle and pedestrian mobility across the Interstate 5 freeway. They had a presentation about our bike path and extension, so it's really good discussion.
Okay. I was there last night, and that's accurate. Okay.
Thank you for confirming.
I had no committee assignments this last week. All right. Council comments, reporting on attendance and conferences, regional meetings.
I can go ahead and start. I was at the wonderful Fire and Police Service Day, along with Councilmember Mullins and Vice Mayor Schultz. It was great. Your kids loved the fire trucks. I loved the food. And, yeah, it was a wonderful event. There were a lot of families there. And then, along with, I believe, all of my colleagues, we attended the Burbank Chamber of Commerce Excellence Awards, which were phenomenal as well. Congratulations to Ross Benson.
Okay.
Did the same thing. Thank you for mentioning it, both events. I was there with Vice Mayor and Councilmember Perez and Councilmember Takahashi. We missed you at the chamber event.
I will, yes, next, next. Yep. Okay, I can tell you where I was. That's right. Saturday, I actually attended the Citizens Oversight Committee for LA County on the Sheriff's Department. It was in its not-usual location. It was in Antelope Valley. It's the furthest they've gone in a very long time. And there was a lot of folks who were there for public comment who had never been to that committee before, and had talked a lot about county-wide police enforcement. In addition, last night, I was over in Pasadena. Their city council was having the Office of Independent Review, which is Janaco, our guy, looking at the shooting of Anthony McLean, and that report was there. And it was interesting to see how different cities deal with their police procedures. But it was, it was good to see Janaco out there helping other cities. I, I went in and gave him some support. I know he does good work. So that's where I was.
That sounds awesome. Thanks for going to those. I went to two events this week, in addition to the Chamber of Commerce Excellence Awards, at the ECO Campus, which is, I still feel like we don't publicize enough about the awesome ECO Campus. I went to the VIP reception for the Woodbury Solar Home 3D-printed home. That is done. It is so cool. I could totally see my kids living in that, in that studio in their backyard. So if you're listening, Barry, the president of Woodbury, please build it in my backyard first as a prototype. And then I also, this morning, went to Coffee with the Cop, and there were a number, that was at the Starbucks down here, down the street. And there were a number of community members there, and we talked about all kinds of things. And we had free coffee and pastries, which is always a plus.
I'll be quick. Mr. Mayor, over the last couple of weeks, I've been meeting with a lot of folks, tenants, former community leaders, about rent stabilization and eviction protection. Thursday, May 11th, I also had a meeting with Metro regarding the Burbank, sorry, the Bus Rapid Transit and the future of that. I think that, oh, and then several affordable housing developers, just about how we're gonna meet our arena, and just getting more information gathering and getting a sense of what other communities are doing to be proactive and not reactive, to borrow the phrase of a friend.
Great. Now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Does anybody have anything to introduce? Oh, yes.
So now, I'll go ahead and ask for our step, first-step report on a budget amendment to include the funds set aside in our next fiscal year to this fiscal year for our AB 1482 study session and tenant protections discussion, so that it can happen as soon as possible. Because clearly, this is something we need to address sooner than later.
Yes?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I have two items. The first is, I would like to suggest to the council, and I would like to get your nods on whether to agendize it.
Okay, you can't get their nods.
Whether to agendize it. To agendize it.
You just ask for it.
Okay.
They don't even agree.
I'll give you one, one tip. Anyone who agendizes something can pull it from the agenda.
Okay.
So there's no reason you can't put something on, feel it out.
Okay. Well, I don't wanna steal from Vice Mayor if he was thinking of putting this on, but I would like to consider the, the ordinance that we did today in the, at public hearing, SB 352011, and put in urgency ordinance soon, so that we can get it passed way before July 7th, and, and decrease the amount of space between now and when it's implemented.
You could even ask.
Nobody commented on it.
You could even ask.
That's good. We got it down.
Okay.
Yay.
Brown Act.
Good, good. And then the second thing I would like to put out there is that I would like a consideration of, and, here, let me get my papers to read it out, because I, I wanna make sure I say this right. To consider a special meeting for urgent, fast-acting rent eviction protections, including To consider a special meeting for urgent, fast-acting rent eviction protections, including 90-day waiting period, having to have a permit, and potentially also requiring market rate, no? Getting those?
Just, go ahead, finish your thing.
So to get that done as soon as possible, rather than waiting until it comes back, because I'm worried that between now and the time it comes back, we're going to see a lot more folks who are
Okay, so you can't advocate.
Yeah.
So you're asking for a first step report on a special meeting on those topics, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm going to make the City Attorney's Office and the City Manager happy, I think, it's not a new item, but we do have three new council members, and it just occurred to me tonight. We do have a resolution, I think we revisited it at the end of last year, that governs the conduct of our meetings, I don't, I don't think we need to report on that, can we just get that sent out to all of us as part of our take-home report this Friday? Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, everyone did?
Yeah.
Disregard that, I thought we didn't.
All right, okay. Yeah, okay, great, is that it? We're good? Okay, we now adjourn, we now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, May 23rd, that's next week, for a joint meeting
And it's not budget.
Of the council chamber, all right, thank you all.